The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
And I don't know if Michelle is on.
She is. I'm just moving her over right now as a panelist. She should be here in two seconds.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, I see her. Okay, so let it be noted that she is present.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And once again, everyone, thank you for joining us at our conference agenda today, Tuesday, September 14th. We do have a presentation, and I am going to ask Councilwoman McCartney, who invited and organized this presenter, to introduce the topic and the presenter, please. Councilwoman McCartney?
Just a really quick, I just want to let Lynette know that to not change your, touch your computer, I'm going to move her over to a panelist as well, so she can present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman McCartney, thank you.
Thank you. So, Council President, thank you also. So Lynette Sheard, we may all know, as belting out songs on stages. She also works for the Mental Health Association. And at the time, I saw her at an event, and Smokey Joe's Cafe, actually, when she was really belting out the tunes at Auspect. And she had asked me about doing a presentation to the council on the emotional backpacks. And at the time, it was right, we were listening to the Olympics. And I guess we always think that Olympics are in their best health. And, you know, we heard so much about more athletes reporting mental health issues, and anxiety and depression, and not just athletes, but COVID. I think we all felt that. So, thank you for allowing this presentation. Lynette is here, and as beautiful as ever. And she is going to give us some insight on emotional backpacks. And at the start of school, it just seems so timely to do this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Susan. Thank you to all of you. Thank you all for your service. And I just want to share my screen, so... Start from the beginning here. As Susan mentioned, my name is Lynette Sheard, and I am besides to perform. I'm a director at the Mental Health Association in New Jersey. I'm the state office, which really focuses on advocacy. We work a lot with the other mental health associations in providing resources and support for our community. And during this time, it's almost you can't find the words to explain it, because, you know, it's gone on so long, and there's the anxiety and the stress about, okay, well, when is this going to be over? What does normal look like? Am I well? I'm not sure. But on behalf of the Mental Health Association in New Jersey, I'm here to tell you, there's no such thing as normal. My therapist, that cost me $5,000. I'm telling that to you for free. There's no such thing as normal. It's what's normal for you. And so, we talked about, and Susan and I were talking about, just, I really have a passion for combining the creative arts and mental health as a performer. And also, as I mentioned, I'm director, I'm the Director of the New Jersey Mental Health Players, which is a program within the Mental Health Association that uses improv and skits to depict real-life scenarios related to mental health and emotional well-being. So, we talk about what's in your emotional backpack. You know, our kids are going back, I have two, my children, I have three daughters, who went through the West Orange School System. And now I have two grandchildren, one in the second grade at Washington School. And she's never really experienced, she moved in from Connecticut, never experienced what school is like, like, you know, what we remember, you know, playing on the playground, and sharing snacks, and playing games, and groups, and net time, all that kind of stuff. And it's a bit challenging. So while we prepare our children with snacks, with sanitizer, now with masks, with just books, if they even use books anymore, backpacks, all that kind of stuff. But what, how are we preparing our children and ourselves emotionally? So what is in our emotional backpack? And what is your emotional PPE? As we prepare to stay safe from a virus, it's also very important to stay sane. And what sane looks like, it varies per person. Like I said, there's no such thing as normal. It's what's normal for you. And maybe your context of normal is what it was B.C., before COVID. But now, what does normal look like? And do we even have the language to express our feelings? We just watched the Olympics, and we saw some of the strongest bodies in the world. I mean, they have muscles on their finger and toenails. They have muscles on their eyelashes. And these people, these stellar athletes, no matter how strong they were, if their mind was not normal for them, they couldn't move it. So there is no health without mental health, and we have to consider our emotional well-being when we're doing anything. So for this, maybe 10 seconds, I want you to look at this feelings wheel, and what feelings represent you the most today or tonight. You could just yell it out. And that might even be cathartic. Just yell it out. You could have multiple feelings. Go ahead, go ahead. Unmute yourselves, and just, where are you? Check in.
I'll jump in. Pretty powerful.
Okay.
I'm all of the above.
And go ahead, go ahead. Yell it out. Whatever. You could have three, four, five, six. Now, you all were elected. I know you all can talk. So, but again, for the sake of time, but again, the purpose of this is that there's not just one or two feelings. There are shades of feelings. There are nuances of feelings, and all those feelings matter. And being depressed, there's nothing wrong with being depressed. That's a natural reaction to things. There's nothing wrong with anxiety. There's nothing wrong with sadness, or being scared, or being bored, or being, you know, all these feelings matter. And in the preferred context, it's important to express them. So, you know, in this time we're living in, I mean, there are things that we, can you repeat, I mean, think about going to school, the kids going to school now. This is the new language that we're learning. Can you repeat that? I can't hear you through the mask. Social distance. Do you need a mask? You're too close. Cover your nose. It's not safe. Are you vaccinated? I mean, just some of those things. Oh, oh, I forgot, we can't share. I can't share my pencil with you. Oh, we can't play that game together. Oh, I can't touch you. Oh, I can't hug you. And how children, and even how a lot of us respond and keep ourselves emotionally well, involves touching and closeness, and some form of communication, and some form of connectedness. So we talk about mental health and what emotional wellness is. I want to share with you a SAMG model, which is, this is the standard on how we determine what wellness looks like. And I put this definition, it's an evidence-based program called the Grief Recovery Method. And grief is defined as the conflicting feelings caused by the end of or change in a familiar pattern of behavior. Would you say that we are in the midst of grief? All of us are experiencing some type of change, some type of transition, that we're not sure how we feel about that. We may have some initial feelings about it, but in the long term, how are those feelings affecting our ability to be well? So when we think about wellness, I want you to think about it in the context of eight dimensions. Emotional wellness, coping effectively with life and creating satisfying relationships is a marker for wellness. And your ability to have healthy relationships is a sign of emotional wellness. Unhealthy relationships could be determined for unhealthiness, unwellness. Financial, satisfaction with current and future financial situations. COVID absolutely attacked this area as well. But your financial well-being will absolutely be impacted, and can impact your emotional health. Social, developing a sense of connection, belonging, and a well-developed support system. How do you connect to your support system? What's going on with your support system? Were you the support system for someone, and maybe you're not able to be that for someone else? How do you connect in the middle of a pandemic? Zoom, as an example. Spiritual, expanding our sense of purpose and meaning in life, is one of the eight dimensions of wellness, that how people connect to some higher source. Spirituality's often been termed the destination of the heart, or the mood of the heart. Occupational, personal satisfaction and enrichment derived from your work. Your work will absolutely impact your emotional well-being and vice versa. Physical, recognizing the need for physical activity, diet, sleep, and nutrition. You know that commercial, I think it's Snickers? You're not yourself until you have a Snickers? Have you not eaten all day, and it affected your mood, or you didn't get enough sleep, or anything like that? So consider those things when you're talking about yourself and wellness. These become markers for you. Intellectual, recognizing creative abilities and finding ways to expand knowledge and skill. This directly impacts our students, elementary school students, college students. If you're studying anything online or in person, that your ability to conjugate a verb, or to actually send an email, or to respond, to communicate intellectually, the ability to learn is a sign of emotional wellness. Environmental, good health by occupying pleasant and stimulating environments that support well-being. Your internal and external environment matter. Some of us have been cooped up for like 18 months, we're probably going out, and maybe you had that shelf that you've been trying to build for the last six months. And so now you got all the wood, and it's piled up, and you've got clutter, and you realize, wow, I'm a hoarder. Oh, my goodness. How much stuff can I buy on Amazon? I mean, you know, you got an Amazon box museum in your garage, whatever it is. But your internal environment, maybe clutter, impacts your emotional well-being, but also environmental. And I'm going to talk about this, just briefly add this, because we talk about the eight dimensions of wellness. Add COVID, add pandemic, add vaccinations, add masks, add new presidential election, add racism. Let's talk about it. The environmental, do you feel safe in your environment? Do you feel protected? Is there enough green space around? Whatever it is, your internal and external environment will absolutely impact your wellness. So, and when we talk about what wellness, I'm glad you asked what emotional wellness is. I think I'm going to tell you. Emotional wellness allows you to accept how you are feeling. Feelings matter. Once you accept your feelings, you can begin to understand why you are feeling that way, and decide how you would like to act in response to those feelings. Being emotionally well grants you the power to express feelings without any constraints. In turn, you'll be able to enjoy emotional expression, and be capable of forming supportive and interdependent relationships. This balance, this balance is very important. These eight dimensions do not have to be equally balanced, because normally, we prioritize what's more important at the particular time. But to understand that your emotional well-being is, can be marked by these eight dimensions. If you're feeling unwell for you, if you're not feeling normal for you, consider, okay, where am I emotionally? How much, what's going on with my relationships? Okay, I'm pretty good there. What about my school? Hmm. What about my job? Okay, well, I'm not feeling well. Consider these eight dimensions when we're looking at how we are, we are developing and mapping out a plan for to develop our own sense of personal harmony, whatever that is. So your mental health is very personal, and we need to begin to teach our children, and even ourselves, on, let's talk about how you're feeling. Let's take a moment and be intentional about feelings. And it's kind of, it's not comfortable for many people to talk about their feelings. What am I going to do about it? I don't want to, that's not my wheelhouse. I don't want to, that's not how I do. But we need to now, because this is on the top of everyone's brain, because people are hurting. People are stressed. People are depressed. People are anxious. And it's like, what are we going to do? And we need to teach our children, because our children pay attention to us. We are their markers. If they want to look on how we, how they're going to deal with this stress, anxiety, this pandemic, they're looking and they're modeling our behavior. So I found this wonderful simulation on coping skills out of the mouths of babes. And it's the child's voice actually explaining, this is a simulation of coping.
Visual representation of stress and coping to help us better understand their interaction and impact. This bowl of water represents our mind's well-being. Food coloring represents stressors which cause us to feel stressed. Bleach represents coping mechanisms that help us manage, minimize, or master stress. So as you can see here, we have a relatively calm and clear mind at the moment. But, oh, here comes a stressor in the form of a test you hadn't studied for. Oh, and here's another one representing an argument with a close friend during lunch. Ah, here's another one. That's for the little sleep you had this week from staying up late to manage all of your responsibilities. Now, as you can see, our mind is pretty cloudy and overwhelmed with stress at the moment. Problems will arise if we experience stress too often or for too long, or when the negative feelings overwhelm our ability to cope, as you can see here. Continuous activation of our stress response will cause wear and tear on the body. Taking positive actions to channel this energy effectively will help us learn how to improve our management of negative stress. What could we possibly do to help us through this tough time? Ah, of course, this is the perfect opportunity to introduce a healthy coping mechanism to help us deal with all of this stress. So, let's try listening to music and going for a walk to clear our minds. Ooh, we feel a little better. Let's also try to write a to-do list while breaking actions down into bite-sized chunks, and schedule out the rest of our evening. Yes, that feels more manageable. What about having an effective conversation with the friend you fought with earlier? Much better. As you can see, the mind didn't clear all of that stress on its own without intentional effort. In order to better deal with our stress, we have to implement mechanisms that help us manage more effectively. This is a song and dance that we will experience throughout life. But stress will feel less detrimental if we can learn how to master it. So, let's all learn to manage our stress before it manages us. Also, no bleach was consumed during this demonstration.
Thank you for watching that. I want to ask you all, let me just, I think I want to hide this a bit. So, in the chat, or again, you can unmute yourselves, just think about, what are some of your coping skills? What do you do when you, or when you do it makes you feel better? Makes you feel happy? Makes you feel whole? Makes you feel you're normal? Anybody?
Laugh.
Laugh.
Exercise.
Exercise.
I think.
While adding a donut, though, right?
No. Talk it out.
Talk it out. Anybody else want to just yell out a coping skill?
Deep breathing.
Deep breathing.
Walk the dog.
Walk the dog.
There's so many people out walking their dogs, that everybody's clearing their heads.
Yeah, and you know, and think about it, if you want to do an exercise with kids, or even for yourself, you can just take a piece of paper or a big something, and just think about the alphabet. We all know our alphabet from A to Z. And think of a coping skill that you can associate with the letter. A coping skill that begins with the letter A. A coping skill that begins with the letter B, or an activity, or C, and D, and just go through the list, and just begin thinking about, oh, yeah, I could do that. I can color. Or D, I can, maybe that could be the dog. I want the dog. Or E, eat ice cream. Well, maybe not. I mean, but, you know, everything in moderation. So, but think about putting together a toolbox of coping skills, because, put it together when you're well. Because sometimes when we are unwell, we can't remember what we used to do, or we don't know what our normal looked like, because it's so far from us, we can't remember. And it's important to share your coping skills with your loved ones, because they may be the first person to notice when you're not your normal. And how do you know what normal is? I'm going to tell you what the definition, the clinical definition of mental illness is on a sixth grade level, so that we all can understand. And so while I use the backpack thing, it's also important, as we're going through, we're talking about mental health, we're talking about our feelings, we're talking about living in a pandemic, what normal is, it's important that we understand what we can't control and what we can control. What I can't control is other people's behaviors. Sometimes when we put those things down, we put down what things we really can't, it's a peaceful place to be in the middle, in the center of your core. You can't control other people's actions. You can't control the weather. You can't control other people's feelings. You can't control decisions made by the adults in your life, job change, moving. But what you can control, even what children, we can teach them to learn to control, is your words, my words, my actions, my behaviors, how I respond. It doesn't negate the feelings that you have about something, but how you react to that. And you may have a really strong reaction about something that makes you angry, that makes you sad, that makes you anxious. What you do about it is, is you think about the coping skills. You remember the coping skills that you used, the deep breathing. Okay, let me go, let me go walk the dog. All right, let me, let me exercise for about 10 minutes, because I know I can clear my head, and maybe I will think differently. So take a breath, take an emotional beat, and check in with yourself. And for children, even maybe us, here are some examples that they could put in their emotional backpack, or you could pack with your children, if you have children. Puzzles, sewing, knitting, reading, watching TV. I know kids watch a lot of TV. Do they even watch TV? They watch, like, the iPads. Listening to audiobooks, maybe finding books on feelings, you know, check with their local libraries, and have the libraries, who are awesome in West Orange, to put together a list of books that express feelings, or talk about feelings. Coloring. We have these adult coloring books, these mandalas. Send a card, have the kids write up, remember those days when you got something in the mail, and you were happy to get it? It came in like, yeah, stamp, you had to go to the post office to get the stamp, you know, back in the old days. FaceTime friends, email them, you know, have the kids, show them how to send an email, because they're going to be doing it, believe me. Call. How about this phone? Pick up the phone, and just actually talk to someone, and not text them. Play a game together online. Maybe join one of these online gaming groups. Watch the same TV show and call each other to talk about it. Again, just because we may be socially distancing, does not mean that we can't be creative in finding ways to connect to each other. Because when we do connect to each other, we really do need it. Even though we don't think we do, it really does matter when we connect with other people. Say we're connecting with someone, and they decide to share something very serious with you about their emotional well-being, or you yourself are really struggling. And let me tell you, it's hard to admit that, especially when you're the president of this, the vice president of this, the CEO of this, a parent, a child, a teacher, a doctor, a nurse, a fireman, a police officer, to say, I'm depressed, I'm struggling, I'm anxious, I can't find my footing, I don't want to be here anymore. People feel like that, but are so terrified of saying it out loud. And we need to break the stigma. We need to talk about it. What is mental illness? What is a mental disorder? First of all, it is real. Mental illness is real, but recovery is possible. You know how much? 80% of people recover from mental illness. And what is a mental illness? Something that affects a person's thinking, emotional state, and behavior, and disrupts their ability to work and carry out daily activities. Simply the four Ls. Think of the four Ls. Think of Lynette. No, just kidding. A mental illness is something that impacts your ability to simply live, laugh, love, and learn. If you're not doing that the way you used to, or not the way you want to, over an extended period of time, and extended period of time being two weeks to two months, where you can't, your relationships are falling apart. You can't function on your job. It disrupts your, you love to walk your dog, and you don't even want to walk your dog anymore. You love to exercise, and you don't even want to exercise. It, I love to sing, I don't even want to sing. That should be, hmm, a red flag, something. What happens is, we have so many red flags, we wait till it becomes debilitating. But when we have coping skills, we can kind of fend that off, just like the Clorox, the child demonstration. So, that's what a mental illness is. And this is something that you can explain to a young person, but you ask the questions first, because maintaining your mental health is first of all, being open. And when you talk to someone, is that you're trying to make a connection to someone, rather than a correction of a behavior. So we're making connections rather than corrections. So, when should you seek professional help? Think about FIDO. Hey, like the dog, right? Think about FIDO. What is your dog's name, Bill?
Pepper.
Pepper?
Pepper, yep.
Like salt and pepper? Named after the rapper?
No, she's the color of pepper.
Okay, all right. All right, so FIDO. FIDO is an acronym for how frequently are you feeling your unwellness, or not like you're normal? Again, because there's no such thing as normal. It's what's normal for you. But if you don't know what your normal looks like, and your loved ones don't, it becomes a little challenge. But, you know, interesting, your loved ones will notice it first. Believe them. Intensity. How intense are you feeling unwell? What is the intensity of your unwellness, and what does it look like? What is the evidence? How are you demonstrating it? The duration. How long have you been feeling like this? Don't wait. And what was the onset? Onset, you can think of, what was the trigger? What happened? Did you have COVID? Was someone sick? Did you lose someone? Did you lose your job? You know, what was the major transition? Begin to map your feelings and understand where you are, because it absolutely does matter. And so.
Lynette, I am so sorry to interrupt. I feel like the bad guy here, but we've extended the time that the council has had for the consent agenda, and must enter into public portion of our meeting.
I thought I had more time.
No, I'm sorry. There must have been a miscommunication. You know, typically, when council members ask if they can have a presentation, I ask for it to be kept to 10 minutes, because we have other business to conduct. And unfortunately, at this time, we no longer have time for council liaison announcements, because we have to open the public meeting at 7:00, it is now 7:03. But if you can share your presentation, certainly would like to share that on each one of our social media pages. And, but I hate to interrupt, but I must.
No.
Okay.
We started a little late.
To the information here. So, I can actually put this information in the chat.
And I put this on TV 36 as well.
Right, with the chat, the attendees don't have access to the chat, unfortunately.
I am so sorry. Unfortunately, I do have to run the meeting, and we have.
Thank you very much for your time.
Sorry.
Thank you very much, Lynette, for joining us, and look forward to seeing the PowerPoint on, the rest of it, on our time, and sharing it with the public as well. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to move you over back to an attendee, so we can hold.
And Lauren, you know, I had shared that information also, so that could be on our local access channel.
When did you share it?
Oh, I don't know. It was through the TV 36 form.
Okay, I'll check. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, please. And to my council, sorry, before we move on to my council colleagues, I apologize into the public in advance. Certainly did not anticipate this running into the time for the council liaisons. I hope that we can share our council liaisons through our social media pages, and through the township website, if you would like. But I would like, I think it's important to open the meeting at this time. It's now 7:05.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castelino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown? Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you uh very much, Madam Clerk, um, and thank you for um, to my colleagues for understanding um the need to move to um the public portion of our meeting. We are going to open public comment. I do want to just advise the public who is here on the matter of the downtown redevelopment that I'm going to ask you to hold your comment until we open the uh public hearing during um the second reading of the ordinance. The mayor will be joining us, he will um have a presentation for those who are in the public. Um, if you ask your questions now, I am going to defer to that time later when the mayor is here and can help us answer those questions um as well. So while you are welcome to comment at this time, um, I am going to defer my answers and I'd ask my colleagues to do the same till that time that the mayor makes his presentation at second reading when we open the hearing for the bond ordinance. Madam Moderator, please.
Thank you, I guess this is the time for public comment. If you would like to speak, please use the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. If you're one of our call in patrons, you will be using star nine. Um, you can push the button now, you will be put in a queue. It is better if you push the button now and put yourself in the queue rather than waiting for last call, last call towards the end. You will be asked uh to unmute your, your screen and give us your name and address for the record. So we are going to start with uh Joe Fagan, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening to you, Madam President and your council colleagues and members of the administration. Of course, I'm Joe Fagan, the Public Information Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to address the West Orange public this evening. I have just a few brief reminders and updates. Curbside bulk pickup due to tropical, tropical storm Ida is still an ongoing process. The overall disposal system has been overwhelmed due to the storm, so collections may take some time. I spoke to Joe Pelosi from Department of Public Works this morning and he informed me that the entire town has been covered about twice so far by DPW. This is in addition to regular bulk pickup by the town's garbage contractor. APW will continue picking up curbside until the end of the month before its seasonal retrograde to leaf collection. Bulk pickup relating to the storm will still continue as long as necessary by the town's garbage contractor. Don't panic if your items have not yet been picked up. You will not be forgotten about and all storm debris will be eventually collected. Certainly, everyone is anxious to put Ida in their rearview mirror and residents should know that despite resources being stretched thin, everyone is hard at work. The public's patience, understanding and cooperation are greatly appreciated at this time under these far from normal circumstances. The website will be updated with all the latest pickup schedules as needed. I received word from Nick Alagreeno, our OEM Director, late this afternoon that FEMA will be at the West Orange Public Library tomorrow beginning at one PM. They will be in the meeting room to answer residents' questions and provide literature regarding all the programs available for individual assistance. This is brand new information and the only details we have at the moment. Let me briefly repeat that. FEMA will be at the West Orange Public Library tomorrow beginning at one PM in the meeting room to answer residents' questions and provide literature regarding all the programs available for individual assistance. Nick asked us to get this information out as quickly as possible to our West Orange residents. Updates as they become available will be posted to the website and social media. To celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month in October, there will be a Latin American flag raising ceremony on the steps of West Orange Town Hall at five PM on Friday, October first. This event is sponsored by the West Orange Hispanic Foundation and will showcase the many rich customs and cultures of West Orange's Latin American community. All will be represented in a meaningful way. Food trucks are scheduled to be at this event, so bring your appetite to enrich the overall experience. Having lived in Argentina as an exchange student, I can assure you, no diet is safe as the spectrum of Latin American flavors dance harmoniously upon the taste buds of your tongue. The next date for taking documents to the West Orange Environmental Center for shredding is Sunday, October tenth, between the hours of eleven AM to three PM. The center is located at five ninety Mount Pleasant Avenue. This is a free service for all town residents and ID is required. Further details can be found on our website. As you know, our West Orange Police Department is always at the forefront of community engagement. Tonight, I would like to shine the spotlight on our West Orange Fire Department, who is equally committed to serving West Orange residents. The Fire Department, under the leadership of Chief Akio, will host an open house at Fire Headquarters at four fifteen Valley Road on Saturday, October ninth, from ten AM to two PM. There will be a CPR demonstration, giveaways and a food truck, among other demonstrations and activities. Kids will be able to operate a real fire hose and at one o'clock, there will be a strong man pulling a West Orange Fire Department truck. By the way, the strong man is not me, I gave it up years ago. I think the most important safety reminder at the West Orange Fire Department Open House will be the instructions given on the correct way to operate a fire extinguisher. This is something we all take for granted but can be easily the difference in saving lives and protecting property. Finally, speaking of saving lives, I would like to speak from a personal experience to inform West Orange residents of a very important safety issue that can be easily overlooked. Specifically, I'm speaking to parents of young children and their grandparents. Many of you may be familiar with my four-year-old granddaughter, Emma. This past weekend, she was innocently playing in her pedal car under the supervision of her father, my son. He was momentarily distracted by a dog off-leash and her pedal car began moving down a slight incline. It picked up momentum and in the blink of an eye was out of control, picking up speed as it went over an embankment and plunged into Lake Apakon with her in it. Fortunately, my son was able to rescue her and bring her safely ashore without incident or bodily harm. This story had a happy ending, but in a neighboring town, a similar incident ended in a fatality. A child's pedal car sped out of control down a slightly inclined driveway into oncoming traffic. The helpless mother watched in horror as the young child met an unspeakable fate. I point this out since West Orange has many inclined driveways where young children play with pedal cars or even tricycles. I hope by raising awareness to this, anyone within, within the sound of my voice, uh, that a child's life can be saved from potential hidden dangers they pose and a family tragedy can be inverted. Remember, the worst accident is one that can be avoided and knowledge and situational awareness is always your closest ally in keeping your family safe. Thank you, Madam Moderator, Madam President, and have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was actually just imagining Joe pulling a fire truck, it was quite. Okay, next we have Claire Silvestri. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, thank you. Uh, good evening, Claire Silvestri, twenty Grandview Avenue. At the last two council meetings, I raised questions and concerns about the speed with which legislation involving major changes to phase two of the Edison Redevelopment Project was being moved forward by the council. When the ordinance to bond thirteen million dollars for the highly unusual step of the town acquiring properties in the redevelopment zone was introduced on first reading on July thirteenth, my comments were met by council members and the mayor stating there would be plenty of time and opportunities for residents to get information, have their questions answered and provide input into the process. Then, at the August seventeenth meeting, when an ordinance on a new draft plan for phase two appeared on that agenda for first reading, an amended plan that includes not only a six-story film studio but a very high density of residential units. The council president announced immediately after public comment closed that her colleagues were not to respond to any residents' questions about phase two and there would be no discussion of the matter due to quote pending litigation, unquote. Pending litigation, that was all the information residents were given at the time. I was genuinely hoping that the litigation had to do with the township suing Prism for the probably millions of dollars taxpayers are now on the hook for the defaulted, uh, because the faulted redeveloper did not fulfill its affordable housing obligation in phase one and the town is still obligated to build. But unfortunately, it has become known that Prism was suing the township for fifty million dollars. I'd argue that the lawsuit and the town's response, which are both public records, provided the most transparency residents have gotten yet about what's been going on downtown all these years. It's pretty remarkable, the town administration and Prism were able to come to a settlement agreement in a little more than thirty days. As a result, the two ordinances with huge financial and long-term implications to the township are back on the agenda tonight for second and final reading. After the promises for informational workshops and meeting, if need be, with as many as a hundred individuals to answer all residents' questions and give us opportunities to weigh in on the process, just one month later, the council is being asked to give final approval to a thirteen million dollar bond ordinance and the fourth amendment for the phase two plan. The mayor, in a bizarre Sunday evening announcement that seems to have only appeared on his official Facebook page, said that he is asking the council to approve the ordinances tonight with discussion at the meeting and quote additional public discussions will be planned in the coming months, unquote. I don't need to remind all the council members that is not what you promised residents back in July. And one has to wonder what on earth is so urgent now? Frankly, after reviewing the lawsuit and town's response, I would think council members would feel obligated to slow things down, turn over every rock and allow residents to robustly contribute to the discussion to make sure this time the town residents get a successful project. But I do have a few questions I hope will be answered this evening. The first has to do with the affordable housing obligation from phase one. How will that be addressed in phase two? Who will be obligated to the, absorb the cost of, I believe, forty-four affordable units? Also, the settlement agreement indicates that Prism properties are being sold, quote, as is, unquote. And the township will be assigned an environmental escrow in the amount of approximately three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars held by the DEP, with the township assuming all remaining environmental liabilities. Does the town have a good idea of what's been done in terms of remediation and what still may need to be addressed? And if so, could you please share that information? And finally, I still don't understand why the town is buying the properties from Prism in the first place. If there's a developer who wants to build a film studio, designate them as the new redeveloper and let Prism sell the property directly to them. That's how it usually happens. We are taking a big risk of purchasing property at the top of the market and taking it off our tax rolls. So for these and a whole lot of other reasons, I don't have enough time to discuss. I urge the council to vote down ordinances two six five one and two six five six dash twenty one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Sally Malanga. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. On behalf of our Green West Orange members, I am seconding Claire Silvestri's comments and advocate transparency in the downtown project. My main concern tonight, though, is with Hurricane Ida having flooded many homes and businesses and a landslide that occurred on Northfield Avenue. Our Green West Orange members uh have been discussing this and we believe now climate change is getting too risky for our town to wait to do something about. I urge you now to put your attention to a climate change plan as it is in the interest of all of our residents. We are a town which consists of two mountains and two valleys, but we have been heavily paved over for the last hundred years. During storms, the water runs down the mountains and even as people pump out their basements, they pump the water into the next guy's property. And so those that live downhill anywhere in our town are destined for misery at every major storm. The flooding that occurred from Hurricane Ida indicates that we have reached our capacity for development with our current infrastructure. We cannot add more water infrastructure, we are already built out, there's nowhere to put it. But what we can do is soften all the paving with a simple solution. Trees and green roofs. We must, without delay, acquire the last remaining open space, especially the twelve-acre Mount Pleasant Forest. By my calculation, that forest holds back a million gallons of water from running down Mount Pleasant Avenue to Main Street, all the way to Whoopi Goldberg's proposed film studio. I also urge an annual five thousand tree replanting program and rain gardens installed in every available space. It will look beautiful and it will be a cost savings and will help us ameliorate the flooding. The density that's proposed for the phase two downtown is very intense at sixty units per acre. Landscaping cannot be the afterthought with that project as it is with all the projects that are approved by the planning and zoning boards. Commercial property owners must be required to install and service green roofs. We asked for that at the last zoning board hearing for the Cube Smart and it was denied. Water-absorbing trees must be planted in every spare corner as a mature tree holds ten thousand gallons of water. The so-called economic development is outpacing our capacity to pay for it and to keep the citizens safe. Flood insurance rates are rising. We do have resolutions on the books that call for sensible rules that, for development that will keep the misery away, but they need to be acted on. So I'm urging not only the acquisition of the forest as I have done in the past, I urge a workshop to write the climate change ordinances that will bring us into the twenty-first century for flood control with simple solutions like open space acquisitions, street trees, rain gardens and green roofs. It's a necessity now. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Joe Kerkoviac. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, it's Joe Kerkoviac, uh, good evening, uh, Grandview Avenue. And thank you for not making me follow Ms. Silvestri, I feel quite inadequate when I do that. Tonight, I applaud the proposed purchase of the Crestmont Forest for open space with an excellent use of our open space taxes we pay at the town and county level. I thank the County Open Space Commission for its seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant to help with this purchase. And I also hope this gives additional impetus to consider purchasing the smaller open space forest at Ridge Road and Mount Pleasant Avenue, which the Town Open Space and Recreation Commission has recommended. I asked tonight that the council vote down the mayor's request uh in resolution to provide legal assistance to resident John W. Henry the third. The mayor appointed Mr. Henry earlier this year as chair of the West Orange Economic Development Commission, apparently while he was also representing the two companies looking to build the studio in the downtown redevelopment area uh in discussions and a non, involving a discussions and a nondisclosure agreement with Prism, which at the time was still the designated redeveloper. Prism has alleged wrongdoing by Mr. Henry. We gen, should generally not provide legal help to someone who is not an employee or contractor of the town. Uh, the pending settlement of the litigation is further reason not to provide the financial support. I also applaud the mayor for making the decision to default Prism out of this. As you know, I urged that to happen uh for many years and, and I appreciate that he has done this finally and hopefully this means a, a turnaround uh for the project. I also request additional transparency on the specifics of the insurance brokerage services contract, uh, including the details of the competing bid that were not in the resolution and the township's evaluation of the bids, which I assume is in written form. Uh, this info was not part of the material provided on the agenda, please post these materials on the town website. Uh, also, please provide a detailed explanation for why we need these proposed employment agreements with our fire and police senior leaders. Uh, this is far from typical for our township. Uh, we did this many years ago with a few deputy department. We did this many years ago with a few deputy department heads, but I'm wondering why now. Finally, I request a substantial increase in the transparency around downtown redevelopment and urge the council to take a much more active role in knowing what's going on and letting residents know. You are, after all, our representatives. The recent litigation around the default of Prism as redeveloped of downtown redevelopment opened a virtual Pandora's box of allegations of conspiracy, fraud, dishonesty, and certainly lack of transparency, or to all of which was unknown to the public and probably to the council, as I can attest from just leaving the council at the end of last year. The litigation exposed the township and taxpayers to claims of more than fifty million dollars in damages and still appears to be resulting in a settlement payment of twelve and a half million dollars to Prism. I find that quite surprising, given the massive evidence of many defaults and its inability to do what it says it would do. Hope this fiasco has made it clear that the council members' longtime laid-back, trustful approach to oversight of redevelopment needs to end with detailed and frequent reports and Q and A at council meetings. This should certainly cover events of default, several of which were pending at the time of the litigation was filed, according to the township, including one that was ongoing for roughly one and a half years, according to the litigation, without notice to the council, and some of the other actions alleged in the litigation. I suggest the council consider requesting the mayor to inform the council when an event of default occurs and what he plans to do about it. I also suggest asking the mayor for a detailed list of potential events of default and a timeline so that you can better provide oversight so that we don't have this one and a half-year default, event of default that is contributing and that has contributed to the painfully slow progress for downtown redevelopment. I applaud the mayor for posting terms on the proposed litigation settlement on Saturday, Sunday night on his mayoral Facebook page. I asked several questions in the comments but haven't received a response, so I'll throw them out here. I hope the council will not continue its practice from the last council meeting where the council president said you wouldn't answer resident questions or discuss redevelopment issues in public. I think the settlement, the proposed settlement, has reduced the need for that. I'm out of time, so I'm just going to email my questions and we can just address them later on in the meeting. Thanks very much in advance for your attention. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, next we have Michael David Pages. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. This is Michael Pages and I am resident at Twenty-Nine Ferris Drive.
Okay, you're all set.
Great. Hello. I hope everyone and their families are well. Posts Henri and Ida, it's certainly been a challenging few weeks on that front. I am calling in to express my support for the Crestmont acquisition by West Orange. Given the terms of the contracts and the deep restrictions, it looks like it puts to rest something that really has been a challenge in the Pleasantale community for close to thirty years. So it's certainly an exciting development. Though I did want to share that I wish we almost had arrived here in a slightly different manner. I am a fan of saying that the ends don't always justify the means. I do wish there could have been more transparency here in terms of some of the details in the process. So, you know, have all conflicts been disclosed? Are there club members with potential financial gain directly connected to the current administration? Did we need more debt, given both other situations across the town? And then obviously that each situation must be validated on its own merit. Could the town have been engaged more directly? I do think a number of people in the Pleasantale community would have liked to have been involved. I do think it's important to note that I am not a Monday morning quarterback and I think most people in the town shouldn't be either. I believe in our duly-elected officials, all of you on the council, and I fundamentally believe in your ability to make good decisions on our behalf and with our input. The machine frankly just doesn't work otherwise, but more transparency here would have helped. And I do hope that our council, at the end of the day, will vote to support this measure. It does save trees, it saves the town, helps the environment, and I really just want people to think about what the deluge of water would have been if this development would have been placed coming down into that Pleasantale community. It really would have been disastrous. At the end of the day, this is a win for the Pleasantale community. I want to be really clear on that. I thank the council for listening to our concerns, helping to advance this initiative and really pushing this all the way to the goal line. So I hope they will support it at the end of the day. Thank you again to everybody. I really appreciate the partnership and working with the group and I hope everyone and their families are well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, it's just listed as DT. So if DT, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. My name is Darren Tobia. I live on Columbia Street. I have three questions. The first is regarding the redevelopment zone. Why is the township of West Orange interested in buying the remaining redevelopment property downtown from Prism? Isn't that Prism's obligation as it had exclusive rights to the redevelopment zone? My second question is about open space. I applaud our elected officials' recent push to acquire open space at Crestmont and possibly in the Upper Gregory neighborhood as well. I asked them also to see the importance of acquiring the Mount Pleasant Forest. It's located right on the ridge above a dangerous slope. I can't think of a better legacy to leave behind. And finally, the last council meeting, Councilwoman Castellino mentioned four grants that would be put towards the Tory Corner neighborhood. I think two of them she was, she had written herself and the other two was from the chief financial officer, John Gross. Is it possible that she could give an update on the status of those grants? And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, before we get to Mr. Pagliisi, if this is the final call for public comment using the Raise Your Hand button located at the bottom of your screen, and if you are one of our call-in patrons, that's if you phoned in rather than using your computer, it is star nine and you would just have to press that once and I'll stick you in the queue. Okay, thank you, Todd Dubovy. Pardon if that's not correct. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
That's correct. Todd Dubovy, Burnett Terrace. I just have two questions. I have a lot to say about the Edison redevelopment, but as requested, I'll wait until later in the session to talk about that. The only two questions I've got are related to the Fairview Insurance Contract and whether that was put out to bid and what the results of that bid submission was, you know, what was received for the town to consider. And the second relates to the representation of Mr. Henry by Greg Cannon. I'm confused. I don't know who Mr. Henry is and why are we authorizing his counsel? So if somebody could clarify that for me, that would be great. That's all I've got right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, one last time for final, final call for public comment using the Raise Your Hand button or star nine. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna head over to Mr. Pagliisi if you can follow the prompt on your screen, sir.
Good evening. This is Anthony Pagliisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Just wanted to make you aware of some upcoming events that we have. On October second is the fall version of our Household Harvest Waste Collection. That's gonna be at our Cedar Grove facility at ninety-nine Bradford Avenue in Cedar Grove. Two weeks later, on October sixteenth, also a Saturday, from nine to three is the Computer and Electronics Recycling Event. Also during October, we have three Strut Your Mutt K-9 Parade and Costume Contest Events. October twenty-third in the morning is at Brookdale Park. And in the afternoon, it's at Grover Cleveland. And then on Sunday, October twenty-fourth, our third one is at the Branchford Park Dog Park in Newark. All those events are on our website, which is essexcountyNJ.org. Also, I want to give you an update on COVID testing and vaccinations. Our site in Kmart is still open. We currently are giving those we have available, all three vaccines, Moderna, Pfizer, and J and J. We currently are giving first and second doses of Pfizer and Moderna, along with third doses for those two vaccines for people who are immunocompromised. We are awaiting word from the CDC on whether third doses are gonna be recommended for the general public. When they are, we will be ready to administer those. And as of right now, September twentieth seems to be the date that this may become reality. So we are allowing residents to register for appointments at essexcovid.org. If anything changes where one of those or both of those vaccines would not be available for the general public in a booster dose, our call center will reach out to reschedule any appointments that were made. But we just want to be ready, just like when we were ready in December when the vaccines were first available. We want to be ready this time when the boosters are available. We also are continuing our mobile sites. We have a mobile van that goes out to hard-to-reach areas. And then we have a second unit that sets up in libraries, senior buildings, and other locations like that. If there are any sites in West Orange that you would like us to visit, just reach out to me and we can make that happen. We have been in West Orange a few times. But really, the big push, our big push has been in urban areas like Newark, East Orange, Orange, and Irvington where the vaccination rates are a lot lower than they are in West Orange, which I think is over, I don't want to give a number because I don't have the figures in front of me, but I don't want to guess at that. But I know West Orange is among one of the highest vaccinated municipalities in the county. That's all I have tonight. I hope everyone stays well.
Okay, thank you. And with that, that ends the public comment section. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and to all of those in the public who joined us for public comment. As I stated when I opened the public portion, I am going to withhold any answers to questions that were posed until after I hear the mayor's presentation. So that's when I'll answer questions pertaining to the downtown redevelopment and the potential settlement that we have. Okay, most of our comments were with respect to the downtown redevelopment. I do agree with Ms. Malanga's comment that Ida has certainly given us quite the indication as to the sense of urgency to commit to a greener plan for everyone, not just those who are in the path of floods and hurricanes, which we have now witnessed here in our great state, the Garden State. I am excited to support the Crestmont purchase to preserve as open space and passive use. I will let my council colleague, Councilman Rutherford, discuss that a little bit further as he served as the council liaison to those negotiations. So thank you to all of those who joined us, Mr. Pages. Happy to hear from you again and happy that you were a moving force on organizing in the Pleasantale section. Your voices were absolutely heard and I'm glad that my council colleagues and I were able to support the administration in this process. So looking forward to being able to finalize that acquisition. Mr. Tobia, allow my councilwoman, colleague Castellino, respond with respect to the update on the grant as she is better suited to do so. Mrs. Dubovy, the Fairview contract, there was a request for qualifications and we will discuss that as I'm sure my council colleagues have questions. There was an attachment for exhibits with respect to Fairview and Mr. Gross will be here to provide answers to your question at the time that we discuss the resolution. With respect to Mr. Henry, that is also on our agenda, as you stated, and you wanted to know why we are authorizing or why we would authorize his counsel. Just to clarify, I know that there has been a lot of conjecture. I know that there has been a lot of conspiracy theories. I think that Mr. Kerkoviac mentioned that. Mr. Wayman Henry is a resident in West Orange and, like some of you, is a volunteer to our committee. And as far as we know, he is not the representative of either the Studio House or our other resident who was named in the lawsuit. I don't think it appropriate for any of our volunteers to be subjected to litigation. Otherwise, we're not going to have people who want to volunteer because they will be held personally liable. People volunteer on committees for all of us because we do have appointments and we do ask people to give up their time. I think it's incumbent upon the administration and upon us to ensure that they are protected when there are lawsuits that are brought against them personally. I don't know. Mr. Kerkoviac, you asked for the posting of the insurance analysis. I'm sure that that is something that the administration can do. With respect to the contracts for the chiefs, that is also on the agenda. We can further discuss that at that time of the resolution. And the rest of your comments were pertaining to the representation of Mr. Wayman, which I just addressed, and the downtown redevelopment, which I will discuss further again once I hear the mayor's presentation. At this time, I will ask my council colleague Castellino for her response.
Thank you, Council President, and I look forward to later on the agenda where we can respond to some of the comments or to the questions and the presentation from the mayor. So with that being said, just to touch upon that just a little bit, I know Michael Pages, it's good to hear from you tonight. Hopefully, when Councilman Rutherford could maybe go into that transaction a little bit. But you talked about a little bit with transparency, so I was confused there. So if my colleague could just, you know, just share when it's his turn to speak, the process, I hope, I feel that we've been transparent. We mentioned this transaction quite a few times at the council meetings. So I'm looking forward to be able to preserve many acreages up on Crestmont Country Club. And thank you to all the residents in that neighborhood that came out and all our residents that came out to advocate for that. So look forward to moving that later this evening. Let me start at the top of my list. Mr. Fagan, thank you for coming on with all your great reports. I'm glad you mentioned that FEMA will be present tomorrow. That's important. We've been reaching out to our business owners. Ms. Brill, Mr. Lepore's been diligent with trying to assist all our business owners down on Main Street, trying to get them assistance. And there was many businesses that were affected by Ida. And so a lot of them have reopened and a lot of cleanup and throughout the township. And a big shout out to our fire department. They were busy pumping many, many residents out of their homes and their businesses. So we appreciate all of their efforts, along with our police department and, of course, public works on the cleanup. It was a horrible, horrible storm. Ms. Malanga, thank you for always, you know, caring about our environment. Ms. Malanga, thank you for always, you know, caring about our environment and, you know, some good recommendations there. Just going through some other comments. That's it this evening, because a lot of it we'll discuss later. In regards to the grants, Mr. Tobia, I'm a little anxious. I was hoping to hear something from the neighborhood preservation grant. Unfortunately, one of the reports online said we had received the grants already. Unfortunately, with the Zoom meeting, sometimes all the information is misrepresented a little bit, but we had applied for the grant. It had been submitted, and we're waiting patiently. If we do get that grant, it'd be $125,000 a year for five years. It will be designated to much-needed beautification products, projects, some needed resources in the Tory Corner neighborhood. We will start out with working with a consultant to help identify and complete a five-year strategic plan for the area. So it'll be a well-thought-out plan to improve the quality of life in that neighborhood, your neighborhood. So we look, we hope we get that, and hopefully, we'll have announcement by the next council meeting. The other grant that we had applied for was with New Jersey Division of Tourism for a cooperative marketing grant. We hope to hear back by the end of the year. They're going to make us wait a little bit longer. And so I'll keep you posted. If we receive both grants, we look forward to many needed projects for not only downtown West Orange, but also with the marketing grant, we could assist throughout the township. And with that, I just want to touch base with Mr. Puglisi. I want to thank the county once again, you know, recognizing September 11th, Saturday. County, once again, put on a beautiful ceremony. I saw it online. I couldn't make it there Saturday, but went up to the reservation on Sunday, and it was just, just all the flags out, the, just everything was stunning and peaceful, and so many people from all over came out to see that memorial to remember that day 20 years ago, when the attacks occurred in New York City, and we could see them at the top of our Eagle Rock Reservation. I did want to share, and I was going to say this earlier, but you kept to your schedule, Council President, and I'd be remiss if I didn't share it with the public this evening. But 20 years ago, our West Orange firefighters were there. Engine One, then former Chief Simaldo, and many, a few of our firefighters are still today, Chief Vecchio. They were on hand, Albany Street and South End Avenue. They made their way that morning to downtown Lower Manhattan, and our firefighters were there to assist pumping water to the site. So, you know, we went a little West Orange history there, and just wanted to recognize them and to remind people never forget that day. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Catalina. Councilwoman McCartney.
Hey, thank you. Now it's getting to the point of being repetitious, but I also wanted to thank Joe Fagan for all the information. I'm glad to hear also about his granddaughter had a safe ending to that story. FEMA information, the flag raising, shred day, very timely. And Anthony Puglisi, again, a thank you for all the work that is being done at the county. In one of the comments, I know we're not going to talk about redevelopment at this point. I do look forward to the mayor's presentation. Claire did mention about the, there's Sylvester mentioned about the affordable housing. That is a requirement that is in the plan to be satisfied. I wanted to thank Sally also. Recently, we had the Sustainability Management Plan. It was a conceptual plan that was presented to us by the Stevens Institute, graduate students at Stevens Institute. It was a conceptual plan, and between the upgraded stormwater management regulations and the planning board continues to update the sustainable checklist on all applications, a climate change action plan, sounds like a very good idea, and if it could have more concrete achievable actions in it. I wanted to thank Joe Krakoviac for many of the comments that he made this evening. Mr. Pages for coming back. I wanted to say, right from the very start, myself and my council colleagues were all in favor of Crestmont, preserving Crestmont, and that's what we're going to look at this evening. And Council President, I wanted to thank you for summarizing the resolution for John Henry, as a resident volunteer. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to Mr. Fagan and Mr. Puglisi for their continued updates. I appreciate the information that they've shared. I will honor your request, Council President, to withhold my comments regarding downtown until that point in the agenda, which I am very much looking forward to, and I think we should and will have a very robust conversation tonight that should settle many of the nerves in town with regard to that project. Ms. Malanga spoke about the climate change plan. I think that's a great recommendation, and I do agree with her that, you know, we have to focus on rain gardens and all the other measures we can take as a township to get out ahead or at least try and catch up to the issues we face with regard to climate change. Mr. Kokoviac, thank you for your support of the Crestmont acquisition or preservation as open space. I too, I agree with you, and I was the liaison on there. I think that is a great acquisition for West Orange. We are able to preserve almost 95 acres of forest, as Mr. Pages eloquently stated earlier. If we did not, it would have a significant impact on all of the homes downhill from there. So it is clearly, in my opinion, the right thing to do. I have worked with our, with our town attorney, our mayor, the administration, to negotiate that and to get this outcome. We were able to do it at what I believe is a very fair price, and had we not done it, that land is ripe for development. Something else would have been done there. Now, some folks have complained about the transparency with regard to projects like that. When we are, when we were in those negotiations and conversations, it was not appropriate to speak about it because nothing had been agreed upon. People knew, and we did communicate, that it was a goal to preserve that land. But I think if you speak about projects like that prematurely, you can certainly mess them up. You can also invite other folks to come in and kind of gum up the works, or perhaps even drive up the price. We do know that developers are interested in it, but the Crestmont Country Club was willing to work with us because we are able to preserve the land, which helps their golf course as well. But certainly, they could have sold that property for far more and reaped a greater profit, and then been able to develop that into homes, which we certainly don't want, and they didn't want that either. So I think this was a win-win for us. West Orange comes out ahead. The country club has the land preserved as well. The neighbors in that area also don't have to worry about the runoff from the next major storm that we have. With regard to Mr. Henry and the support that he may receive as a result of the lawsuit that he was named in, I think, you know, my comment on that, and I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse, but I think the issue there is, there is a lack of trust around decisions that are made like this. And I understand that. I think that points to one of the other comments that have been echoed in countless council meetings and also echoed tonight, is that more transparency is needed in these processes. And I do agree with that in general. I think as we increase transparency, we will increase trust, and people will then, a lot of the issues that they have or the mistrust will be alleviated. So we hear you, and we are working in that, in that direction. Some projects, and I'm trying to avoid talking about downtown, but some projects can't be spoken about because there is nothing too concrete to communicate. And so that may be perceived as a lack of transparency, but in reality, it really is not. You can't communicate concretely about something. It's better not to say anything at all. With regard to Mr. Dubovy and his questions on Fairview, I look forward to that part of the agenda. I, it was put out to bid this time, but you will hear a robust debate when we get to that point in the agenda as well. And I think that's it for my, that's it for my commentary with regard to the folks that spoke out tonight. I do want to say one thing about 9/11. Everyone has a 9/11 story. I certainly have one, too. You know, 20 years later, it is still an emotional thing and a traumatic thing. I applaud the county for putting on the program. My family and I, we have our own way of kind of acknowledging that day. My wife was there, and to my knowledge, I'm the only person that actually got into New York City after the lockdown. But not everyone kind of feels comfortable, and I think it's important to say this, given the presentation by Ms. Lynette Sheard earlier. Not everyone feels comfortable sharing those feelings publicly, and not everyone can without being emotional or, you know, perhaps inappropriate in a public space. So for all of those that are going through, you know, we have gotten through 20 years together. We'll get through the next 20 together, and however you acknowledge or grieve or memorialize that moment, I want to encourage you to continue to do so because we are still working through some things. And COVID-19 has really highlighted how these traumatic events really affect us mentally and emotionally. So I just offer my prayer and support for everyone who, you know, is still struggling with their own 9/11 story. That ends my comments, and thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to thank everyone for taking an opportunity out of their evenings to speak before the council this evening. Mr. Fagan, Mr. Puglisi, thank you so much for always keeping us up to date on news for the township of West Orange as well as for the county. Ms. Sylvester, thank you as always for coming and making sure your comments are heard. Ms. Malanga, you know that climate change and environmental protection is very near and dear to my heart. Certainly, I'm in agreement that we do need to pay close attention to how climate change is impacting West Orange. So in total agreement with you there. Again, thank you, Mr. Kokoviac, for your comments as well. And we will defer any additional commentary to the appropriate time. Mr. Pages, again, thank you so much. Mr. Tobia, we will address your comments, and I think most of them have been answered, especially regarding the Tory Corner and Downtown Alliance project. Mr. Dubovy, again, when we address the Fairview contract, we will deal with those concerns at that time. Also, wanted to bring awareness to the memorial held by the county for 9/11. I did attend. It was by far, in my personal opinion, one of the most solemn and special ceremonies that was hosted by the county. And for the past 20 years, our county executor has had a very true commitment to honoring that occasion. If you haven't, if you live right here in West Orange and you have not taken an opportunity to go visit that site, shame on you. It's a beautiful site when it's not 9/11. So please, I encourage everyone to just go out and look. Speaking of mental health, and thank you, Lynette Sheard, for coming and giving us your presentation, albeit not complete. We certainly have had back-to-back presentations on mental health and wellness, and something that is also very near and dear to my heart. And so we appreciate the time that you spent just sharing with us, especially love your emotional wheel and being able to identify where you are at any given moment, and especially the coping mechanisms. Because at a time of crisis, we don't always have an ability to respond in a well-thought-out and prepared manner. I look at crisis prevention in the same way I look at having a escape route if your house ever caught on fire. You don't wait until the house catches on fire to figure out how I'm going to get to exit one, two, or three. So that was very timely and appropriate, that we all should have some type of coping mechanisms for when we do encounter an enormous or exorbitant amount of stress. So thank you there. Also, just wanted to remind my council colleagues, as well as the community, that next week is Green Ribbon Week. We do have posted on our township website a daily activity plan. We are asking that everyone wear green next week, and we have several asks on the website. So please take an opportunity to go to westorange.org and click on upcoming events, and you will see Green Ribbon Week next week. One thing we are doing is encouraging everyone to wear green next weekend. For my council colleagues, I will send you an email requesting a photo with you in green so that we can advertise from the council and support Green Ribbon Week as well. I guess the only and final thought that I would have, and I would be remiss if I did not remind and encourage the community to come out and support the culmination of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is going to be our race held at Rock Spring Golf Club hosted by WOSAC on October 3rd for suicide prevention and awareness. Council President, that completes my comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And to my council colleagues, thank you for, once again, allowing us to move into public comment. I certainly appreciate you taking the time while you were speaking to remind the public of some of your comments. I know it wasn't your full comments, but I certainly appreciate the accommodation. Council colleagues, we do have, and I will take your lead on this, we do have a public hearing for our municipal budget. If you would consider taking that before we open a discussion on resolutions, I think that that would just be some housekeeping that we can get out of the way. And I see Mr. Gross is with us.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council.
Good evening. So I am going to ask the Madam Clerk to open our budget hearing. And for members of the public, typically, this is not the time when we have budget hearings, but with COVID and so many other things that have occurred, this is the time that our township, our municipality, is going to adopt our municipal budget and have the hearing for that in advance of opening the rest of the resolutions up for discussion. So, Madam Clerk.
The meeting will come to order. I'm going to do a roll call of the council. Councilwoman Catalina.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Matu Brown.
Present. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there a statement, I think, that you are reading? I'm sorry, I don't get ahead of us.
No, that's fine. This is the time for the public hearing on the municipal budget, amendment number one for 2021. I just.
I saw that.
Yeah, I don't have the right dates here. Oh, my Lord. Yeah, the statement isn't up to date. I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't know what happened there.
We can approve it as amended.
Well, yeah, the statement isn't that big a deal. It's just, you know, it gives the dates of when it was published and the time of the hearing. It was published in the Chronicle with the time of the hearing for tonight. and the time of the hearing. It it was published in the Chronicle with the time of the hearing for tonight. Um, and uh anyone that had uh asked for a copy was it was made available. And that's basically it.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Clerk. Um, before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will, in this case, um raise your hand with the raise your hand function as you did for the public comments. Um, state your name and address before speaking, and I will recognize the speaker at that time in the order um of which you raised your hand. I'm going to ask that all uh questions are addressed to the chair. Where necessary, I will refer uh individual um questions uh to the governing body, municipal officials, or advisors. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal um budget amendment before us. School or county matters are not proper subjects of this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. And now declare open the meeting on the municipal budget amendment uh number one for twenty twenty-one.
Council President, just one thing before uh we get to the public hearing. There's two resolutions um on the agenda, two fifteen, which is the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-one municipal budget. And then two forty-one dash twenty-one, the resolution authorizing uh the budget amendment number two.
Okay, it is number two, that's right.
Yes, so we have to, those both are pulled off the consent agenda and will be um voted on individually.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. I'm just getting to that. And Mr. Kukorviak, I do see your hand. Just bear with me for a moment. Um, while I pull those from my.
And President, is there a five-minute time limit on this as well? Do we need a timer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, uh, Mr. Kukorviak, um, Madam Moderator, if you can unmute.
One moment, I'm on.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, yes, Mr. Kukoviac, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Thank you, yes. Uh, Joe Kukoviac, Grandview Avenue. Uh, Council President, thank you for uh this opportunity to speak. It's very brief. I would like to know uh in as much detail as possible what the role of the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee was in this year's budget. And I also uh would like to know if the uh one-year appointments to the uh Citizens Budget Advisory Committee are uh actually uh in effect. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorviak.
At this time, if we have anyone else, it is the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. And if you are one of our call-in patrons, it is star nine. And there are no other hands raised.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, Mr. Gross, uh, with respect to the um Citizen Advisory Committee, uh, what was their engagement? And I and and I I want to preface that um by saying I completely understand the um circumstances and timing that that um this pandemic has us all in. Um, as we moved in uh the direction of of creating this budget and and making the amendments that have to be made. But could you please answer that question with respect to the advisory committee? Did they review um the budget?
Um, as you know, the the advisor committee is is put together from uh, I guess, appointments from uh from individual members of the council. Uh, it is not administered through the administration, so we have not had any involvement with them at at uh for this year. Uh, I do not know what may have occurred uh outside of the administration.
Okay, um, to that, I I will say that personally speaking, um, for my um uh advisory committee appointment, I have not had um an engagement um with the committee um appointment thus far with respect to the budget. And that is for no other reason other than the the situation is really different this year than it has been in years past. I know that in years past, all of our um appointments have met, um, have received a copy of the budget and have presented at the council meeting what their recommendations are or were. And at um this budget hearing, unfortunately, that has not happened. And I have to say that it is a collective um position that we find ourselves in. Um, I think possibly because of the timing of the budget and simply because of the the, like I said, the circumstances that surround us. So um with respect to your second question, Mr. Kukorviak, are the one-year um appointments actually in effect? I will have that discussion with my council colleagues if if they'd like to have that discussion after um um during new business, so we can um take a look at the timeline and discuss next steps moving forward and how we want to move in in that direction, if that's okay with my colleagues. And um.
President.
Yes.
Yep. I think just to answer that question too, um, about our appointments, they are our appointments. And I think that uh I agree with you. I know that my appointment did receive a copy of the budget. You know, there was discussion. Um, they did not, I, my understanding is that they did not meet. But that would be up to us to ask our appointments if they want to continue to serve uh another year or next year, and hopefully we they will be able to meet and discuss this. I would think that we're all in agreement on that if um, you know, unless you want to ask someone else. They uh, Mr. Kukoviac is right that, you know, it was a one-year term, but you can always ask them again next year.
Absolutely.
Now, Council President, I did also, I did want to point out that um uh it we we often do not distribute directly to the to to members of 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 the committee review, you know, the review uh council uh committee. Um, it it uh, some some ask for it, sometimes some do not. But all of the documentation has been available on on the website. Uh, and uh we've we've tried to, you know, keep that information up to date so that anybody, including the committee that wanted to take a look at it, could. Uh, you're absolutely right that this year, you know, we're we're has been a challenge. It's been, you know, we've we've taken this long because of COVID. Uh, and and uh that's given everybody a good look at it, and I think probably ready to adopt. Um, uh, and uh, but 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 it is certainly um been a a an issue that we've had to grapple with for this for this year's budget. So we appreciate everyone's consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gross, and and um I couldn't agree with you more. Councilwoman McCartney, I I um certainly understand that. I I was a little confused at looking at, and I didn't take the time to look at, you know, the time of year we're in, because that's just the that's the space that we're in. But absolutely, um, we'll look to um the time of reappointment at that time. And I I think that to Mr. Gross's point, any reasonably um prudent person could understand the lack of meetings for um a lot of committees, um especially, you know, um, since we have not been in person either. But um, I hope that answers your question, uh, Mr. Kukorviak. And you can move on now to the resolution. Um, do any of my council colleagues or, you know, I want to start with Mr. Gross, if you can, um, discuss the amendment.
Okay, um, actually, the now that you've had the um, the amendment or considered your hearing for amendment number one, if if we could, uh, and Karen, this is new, but I I talked to the division today. Uh, they they, if we could just get a voice vote or or to to accept that, or 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 if if, I'm sorry, Karen, if you want to do a a roll call, that's fine as well.
Yeah.
We we probably should adopt that because the next resolution is amendment number two, which amends amendment number one. So um, we we probably should go ahead and adopt it.
Okay, so I need a voice vote.
Yes.
All right, so Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes, sorry.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gross.
Uh, we have a small amendment uh that that is required in order to uh finish out the budget. Uh, this is this this amendment uh does not rise to the level that it requires a hearing. Uh, it is simply a resolution that does need to be read into the record, archaic as that may be. Uh, I'll try to do that quickly. Uh, but it is uh, again, an amendment that's required. Uh, and and again, no hearings necessary, so we can read the amendment and then take, you you can consider it and then vote if if that is the direction that you're going to take. Um, so if it's okay with you, I'll start. I'll I'll read the amendment.
Please, thank you.
Be resolved that the Township Council, the Township of West Orange, on this fourteenth day of September two thousand twenty-one, an amendment number two to the two thousand twenty-one local municipal of the Township of West Orange is hereby introduced on first reading. And the township clerk is directed to read the title thereof in full. According to NJ SA forty-eight one, call on one desk four, since amendment number two does not add a new amount of appropriation in excess of one percent of the total appropriations, increase or decrease any item of appropriation more than ten percent or increased amount to be raised by taxation by more than five percent. Amendment does not require advertisement or a new publication. Copies of amendment number two are available in the office of the Business Administrator at the municipal building at sixty-six Main Street during the hours of eight AM to four thirty PM. Current fund general revenues, surplus anticipated uh from going from four million two hundred and six thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents to four million two hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Total surplus anticipated going from the same number, four million two oh six three ninety-nine forty-nine to four million two seventy-six six seventy-eight fifty-seven. Summary revenues, so surplus anticipated sheet four, sheet four, number one, from four million two oh six three ninety-nine forty-nine to four million two seventy-six six seventy-eight fifty-seven. Number five, subtotal general revenues, I is one, two, three, and four, from thirty-one million eight forty-seven five seventy-eight eighty-six to thirty-one million nine seventeen eight fifty-four ninety-four. Number number seven, total general revenues from ninety-three million seven hundred and eleven thousand five forty-four fifty-eight to ninety-three million seven eighty-one eight thirty-three point sixty-six. General appropriations, municipal debt service excluded from caps, interest on bonds from nine hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-two cents to nine hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents. H two, total general, total general appropriations for municipal purposes excluded from cap from twenty million oh five eight seven forty-two seventy-three to twenty million one two nine oh two one eighty-one. O, total general appropriations excluded from cap from twenty million oh five eight seven forty-two seventy-three to twenty million one two nine oh two one eight one. L, subtotal general appropriations, item H, items H and O from ninety million one eighty-three seven thirty-four ninety-four to ninety million two fifty-four oh one four point oh two. Total general appropriation from ninety-three million seven hundred and eleven five forty-four point five eight to ninety-three million seven eighty-one eight thirty-three point six six. Municipal debt service from eight million oh eighty-three five forty-nine ninety-three to eight million one fifty-three eight twenty-nine oh one. Total general appropriations, ninety-three million seven hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars fifty-eight cents, ninety-three million seven hundred and eighty-one thousand two eight thirty-three sixty-six. And that is the entirety of the amendment. And at this point, you could entertain uh questions from the council and or a motion to adopt.
And just for those who may be following um the amendment um or those who don't um have it before them, can you just um specify? And if you did, I apologize in advance that I hear just the total uh change, the amount?
An increase, it's an increase of seventy thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eight cents. Uh, and that was quite frankly, a miscalculation uh on the uh interest uh that was done in earlier in the year, and so we just had to correct.
That that's an increase for uh overall for all of the um line items that were amended?
That's correct. It's it's an increase overall, but there's no change in the in the amount to be raised by taxes.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Gross. Do any of my council colleagues have questions? I I'm not seeing any questions. No. Um, so we will entertain a motion at this time.
Is there a motion to approve two forty-one dash twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilwoman McCartney.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown.
Yes.
Okay.
And and um if I may, just for those members of the public, Mr. Gross, um, can you just verify that all of this information can be found on the township website, including the debt service statements for however many years we've posted? I know that there has been some um musings. I've heard that uh we don't um with respect to transparency, share that, and that that has been shared for uh a number of years on the township website. Can you just indicate where?
Yeah, our our website, uh, under the finance department, and at the bottom, there's of uh additional, other additional documents. And and we have, and we put up the annual financial statement um uh every year. Uh, we do not always, we do not put up the the supplementals on a regular basis. That's something we could do. Uh, frankly, they they, while they indicate the change from that moment, they do not really indicate your the true position at any given time, because uh we have um paydowns that happen during the year. And so that that does not uh get reflected um i- at the time that they occur. So sometimes we've found that that causes confusion. It really, if 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 the council would like us to, we can. Uh, but but we always put up the annual debt statements, and those are really the the most important because they show your your true relationship after all debt services paid for the year. Uh, and and you have your your new uh assessment figures for the year. So it's um, that's the most important one of 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 those that's that's.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Gross, for entertaining that question for me. Um, okay, council colleagues, um. Right?
One more vote, one more vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, two.
That's right, we did the two.
Resolution two fifteen dash twenty-one, resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-one municipal budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Back second.
Oh, my, we have so so much enthusiasm.
Roll up.
Oof. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your patience this year.
You know that that you, I'm not going to take that directed directly towards me, Mr. Gross, but I know I I've been a stickler every year, but I completely understand the circumstances under which not just, you know, our municipality finds itself, but everyone. So um, absolutely. Um, before we get into the, there are um, no, um, let's start with the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so approval of minutes of previous meeting, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, the public and executive sessions.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Six A, results of planning board review of Township Council Resolution two ten dash twenty-one, area in need of rehabilitation township-wide designation. Sir, consent?
Did any of my council colleagues have any questions, or is this a, do we have consent?
Council President, you know, we did receive a letter from the engineer, which was presented to the planning board. Again, I, now I'm doing my council liaison. Uh, so we did receive, this was unanimously approved based on the housing stock and the information that was provided to. based on the housing stock and the information that was provided to us to designate the township, townwide designation for an area near rehabilitation.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney.
If I, Council President, I might, this section of the agenda is basically to accept the correspondence.
Okay.
Later on in the meeting, we actually have some actions that are related to this, and that would be probably the best opportunity to actually start talking about the content.
Okay. Well received. Thank you, Mr. Gross. So, Madam Clerk, you asked for consent?
And six A, okay, six B, results of planning board review, master plan consistency review and recommendations, proposed fourth amendment to downtown redevelopment plan.
Consent.
Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Okay. Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yes, there are some resolutions and some questions. I am not pulling resolutions, but I believe my council colleague, Councilman Rutherford, you had indicated, and I also see Councilwoman Castelina. Councilman Rutherford, what is, who are you pulling?
Thank you, Council President. I'm pulling two thirty-two dash twenty-one.
Is that all you're pulling?
It's all I'm pulling. I have some questions on others, but I'm not pulling.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Castelina?
Yes, Council President. So one, first I got to ask the township clerk, Madam Clerk, a question because I've been having trouble with my emails the past couple days, not being able to get on my township website. She had forwarded me emails. So one seventy, the community house, did we ever get that financial information? Because I did not receive it.
Not that I am aware of. I did not receive anything. I did reach out to Paul Sito via email last week and explained that I needed it in order to, you know, place it on the agenda and have it approved, and I did not get any response.
Yeah, because I saw the PAL, the mountaintop lead, completed their form, so. Okay, so yeah, I'm going to ask for that to be pulled and to.
We did look today to see whether we had gotten anything because we did have the email issues over the weekend, and no one was able to see it. However, I did speak to the mayor later this afternoon, and he indicated that he was advised that there was, that it was coming or that it had been sent. Not something clear to me about that, but.
Okay. If we could pull it to the next meeting, I appreciate it.
If council wants to hold it, we're fine.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, Council President, I wanted discussion, depending on the discussion, if we're going to pull it, the updated agenda, the resolution with the new committee for the cannabis. I'm not sure what number it is.
Two thirty-nine, do you want to pull to discuss, or do you want?
Yeah, yeah, if we could discuss, because I just want to, just to go over that, just to make sure that I don't have to be voted in and all the other members.
Okay. So that is, so let's just pull it so we can discuss it and look at the consent agenda.
All right, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any of my other council colleagues have any agenda items they want pulled?
Council President, not pulled, but I would like to welcome the new public advocate for submitting an impressive resume, and just welcome to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Council President, I was wondering, since Mr. Tavari is, Sevier is on and available as a panelist, I wonder at an appropriate time if he could introduce himself?
Sure, absolutely. And then, since he will be part of, I would assume, a part of the consent agenda since no one has pulled that, Madam Clerk, is that okay that we? Well, let's do this. Let's do the consent agenda, and then we'll have the introductions.
Okay, that resolution was not pulled?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, so is there a motion to?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I saw Councilwoman Williams' hand up.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I have a question on two twenty-one dash twenty-one. If I could get a clarification and understanding on the application process for a raffle license, that would be greatly appreciated. Timetable, when it should be applied, for how long the process takes for application, et cetera. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Do you want me to do that now?
Councilwoman Castelina also has her hand raised.
Yes. Now, I think we, as the questions come in, we'll just. And so, Madam Clerk? No, if you can just answer that question.
Oh, you want me to answer? Okay, yes. So when we get a, when, a few years ago, the council passed an ordinance which allows me to process the application as soon as it comes in, as opposed to waiting for it to be placed on an agenda for approval by the council. So that saves times for the volunteer organizations, you know, who are sometimes anxious to get their tickets printed and get selling and that type of thing. Once we get the application, we're mandated by the state to wait fourteen days before we can release their license. So what we do is we get the application, we log it in, we put a findings and determination page on it that basically states to the legalized games of chance that this person is, you know, a nonprofit, that they are current with their license, that the member in charge and the officer in charge has completed an affidavit basically of good conduct. And then we send all of that along with any fees that they may have down to the state. We wait fourteen days. Within that fourteen-day period, the state has to get back to us to let us know if there's anything wrong with the application, and then we can get back to the organization, let them know. If we don't hear anything from them within that fourteen-day period, we, you know, provide the license to them, and then they can start selling their tickets as long as, or sometimes they just sell the tickets the night of the event. So every time I get an application in, I put it on the resolution for the council to see, and then they approve those applications. And because we pass that ordinance, sometimes the event has already passed. But, you know, we file, we follow all the guidelines and the regulations strictly because the, if we send down to the state an application where their registration ID, it's a biannual registration, if it's expired, it will automatically get rejected. So we're very strict about that. So, you know, we try to keep very accurate, you know, files for these licenses, and that's basically it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity around that in an effort for us to be more transparent, simply because there was an event that had already passed, and we're voting on it, and I wanted the public to understand that we're not doing anything retroactive, that everything and all procedures have been followed. Thank you.
Right, the ordinance was passed for that specific reason.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Castelina, I see your hands up.
Oh, good, I'm not muted. Okay, just a quick question on the Vision Zero Resolution. Maybe Councilman Rutherford can answer this for me. So I see we're creating a whole nother committee with a lot of staff members on it. I don't, and we already have, I believe, many of those staff members that attend the pedestrian safety committee meeting, so I don't understand, like, why wouldn't this task be done in those meetings and having staff out at another meeting? Just wondering.
So I can't give you a good answer for that. I know that this came about as a result of Ms. Lee making multiple presentations and others making presentations in the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meetings. But I can't tell you why it's being done separately now. Yeah, I mean, perhaps maybe one of my council colleagues may be able to do that, but I am not able to. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, because I was just wondering, just look like a duplication of that committee, like, why? Isn't that work being done in the Pedestrian Safety Commission meetings? Because it sounds like it's all tasks that would be done in those meetings.
Can the administration provide some insight?
So these, just a quick comment on that. I mean, it is coming out of pedestrian safety. It is not the entire pedestrian safety group that is doing this, but it has arisen from the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, and I think it is, I think, you know, I'm satisfied with the resolution as it's currently.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory, Councilwoman Castelina, or did you?
You know, just having staff members at another, you know, function, I mean, administration's okay with it. I just, it just seemed like it was duplicating services.
I think the administration did not want to create a new group to replace an existing group.
Yeah.
There is a difference, somewhat of a difference, in some of the objectives. Some of them overlap, there's no doubt about that. I think over time, you know, I suspect this will evolve, and, you know, we'll review it on a periodic basis just to make sure that we're not being redundant and that there's not a better way. But we wanted, we didn't want to take a lot of time trying to figure out, you know, whether, you know, how to put the two efforts together because we wanted to get started on it. So that's the reason why.
Yeah, but you're having staff out, like, I don't know, it just seems the resources for, and I disagree, I think we should have looked at it, and, so now here's my other question, Mr. Gross. So what comes out of this meeting is Mr., like, it comes through the council? Does it, like, you know, of the same way the other committee works in regards to approvals and whatnot?
These are, all of these are advisory committees, so that, you know, there's no action that can be taken from a committee level.
I mean, I commend the group. I applaud what they're doing. I just think of the resources, you know, with our staff that have to be added another meeting or two a month is just redundant, especially if it overlaps. Why couldn't it be done with?
Okay. Council President, may I chime in? Only to make an analogy to this?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you. So back in May, May first and second, we did the weekend with the bike rodeo on Woodland Avenue over by Redwood. So it was a committee made up, I was involved in that, I was on the committee. I'm not on the pedestrian safety, but I was on this committee. And it occurred at the same time as the pedestrian safety meeting, the committee met at that, during that time. So either we stayed on, whether we came on earlier or stayed on later. So it could be the same analogy, that it's not one more night, but it could be at the same time the meetings are scheduled.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a subcommittee of the committee.
The bike rodeo was as well.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Trank?
Well, I just want to say that, again, the mayor has been focusing on this. The Badalnies have been, as we know, the leaders in this community, and they had direct input with my office. And we did talk to the existing pedestrian, pedestrian safety board. They are fully familiar with this, and the mayor obtained their input. So again, we see this as a positive. It's a little broader group. And obviously, we think, from my understanding, Mr. Gross, that this will open up some grant opportunities, which I think is also part of, oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. And before we move on, I also, I'm just looking through my notes on some of the public comments that we said we would address during this period of the resolution speaking. I know there was question with respect to item R S T U, which are the employment agreement contracts for our chief of police, our fire chief, our deputy chief, and deputy, well, both of our deputy chiefs of police. I will say that, that there was a a decision made by PERC, which is the Public Employment Relations Commission by the state, that did, I don't want to say extricate, but did assign out, if you will, these positions. So from the unit, the bargaining unit, which is the union itself. And that's why there was a need then to provide some sort of contract or employment agreement because they are no longer under the union umbrella. So whereas our police officers or public employees have a contract under those terms and are able to annually have their increases and their step increments, and all of that is spelled out in those contracts, our chief of police, fire, and deputy police chiefs did not benefit from some of those benefits, if you will. So, Mr. Gross, can you do a better job at explaining that than I am?
I think, I don't think I could do a better job. I may add a couple of the details. You're absolutely right. This got started because of the PERC decision. We had historically never, our two chiefs did not have contracts, as well as other department heads. But when the two deputies were no longer members of the PBA contract, it became clear that, that we really didn't have, well, we all understood what the rights and benefits were. We didn't have a document or documents in place that really confirmed that. So we thought it was important to memorialize, basically, you know, a status quo of the terms and conditions of employment for these employees. You know, their salaries have historically and still continue to be, were set by the budgetary process, but all the other terms and conditions really weren't identified very well. And so we thought this was an important part. This is, this is really a high-level housekeeping, but housekeeping nonetheless.
Did any of my council colleagues have any questions on that? And please feel free to let me know as I'm going through the list of the things that we told the public we would come back to. I just want to make sure that we are not missing anything that we will approve on the consent agenda without addressing it. I, Councilman Rutherford and I both spoke to the representation of the resident in town, Mr. Trank. If you can elaborate on that, I'd really appreciate it. This is the matter of requesting the township to approve representation for a resident and volunteer who is appointed chair of the Economic Development Commission.
Totally. And I think, Council President, you really did say it specifically and accurately. This is about a volunteer who served as a volunteer on the Economic Development Commission and who has put in countless hours, and there is not a scintilla of evidence or documentation or whatnot to suggest anything other than what you said, that it's a volunteer. It's hard enough to get volunteers to volunteer, and if they're going to feel like they're going to be subject to litigation. And again, let's not lose sight, as the mayor will discuss in a little while, this is litigation that we, you know, the good news here, and part of why litigation gets resolved is to avoid the tremendous expense. So when I initially provided this to the council of the agenda, I didn't even know that we would hopefully be winding third base towards a resolution. So this will not end up being a substantial expense, thankfully. And most importantly, it's done for the very specific reason that a volunteer who performs in that role and tries to assist the town for those purposes, as you said, should not be subject to litigation, and if he or she is, certainly, this administration believes that it is appropriate to defend them. And one of the reasons it's separate council versus my office that represented Mr. Gross and Mayor Parisi is for the very reason that if we ever learn anything different, then immediately we would reconsider that. So the only way, and this is true often where there's joint defendants, but the bottom line is, you correctly stated the reason and why this is before the council tonight. Thank you. you correctly stated the reason and why this is before the council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trank, for that. Also, I, I don't want to pass the consent agenda without pointing out. And, and this is in gratitude to the SS County Open Space Commission who provided the grant in the amount of $750,000 to go towards the acquisition of the Crestmont Country Club. I think that the discussion of those who were on this negotiation did well in, in seeking to mitigate the, the cost of the bond that we would have to put forth. So thank you to all of those who, who made that happen. Council colleagues, am I missing any questions from the public? I want to make sure that before we pass consent agenda, besides those items that we pulled. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand.
Thank you, Councilwoman President. Just in an effort to respond again to the public and their concerns with us financing the representation for Mr. Wayman. Reading the ordinance, it says that we are paying at $175 an hour for his legal representation. Is there a cap on that amount?
Well, again, in this particular case, the cap is, as a result of, and again, I, I think the mayor will go into this in greater detail, but as the council president is aware, and it's been in the documentation, the judge has now stayed the litigation. So specifically, the great thing about where we hope we are or will go is there'll be very limited further work. I can't tell you exactly how much. And again, I'll get detailed billings and whatnot, but I, again, I would anticipate it would be $10,000 or less. I can't tell you the exact amount, but it'll be pretty narrow.
And so the reason why I ask, because it sounds like, and again, I'm new to this, so I apologize if there may be information that I'm unaware of, that this might be the first time that we've done something like this as a municipality with supporting representation, legal representation for a resident in a volunteer capacity. And so with that, what we're doing now is establishing some type of precedent. And so the reason why I'm asking is there a cap, understanding that there is a settlement anticipated with this particular litigation. But in the event, on another opportunity, there is not a settlement or even a foreseen settlement. And we then go to state that we're going to represent a resident who has served in the legal capacity or not legal capacity, but volunteer capacity for the township. Are we then going to say, hey, well, we're going to pay your legal expenses, but only up to? And I don't want us to have this first opportunity or resolution without a cap and then be reminded or called on the fact that, well, you didn't limit it on the first time you did it. So why now are you going to limit it with me? So just, just, just trying again to establish precedent, where we're headed, where we could possibly go with this path and, and how it could impact us long term.
So again, I appreciate, Councilwoman, your concerns, but I think as long as I'm town attorney, if any one of you or anybody volunteers to help this town, and in the course of doing that, they get sued for what I believe and what, you know, I'm not willing, every case is different. But in this case, there's no doubt in my mind that if this case had not been settled, that a motion is missed would have been appropriate. And I would have wanted the most aggressive attorney involved to represent any volunteer to get that case thrown out as quickly as possible because it's just not fair. People won't volunteer if, if we don't protect them. So I can't say there's a cap because every case will be a differential. Mr. Gross has to certify as the funds availability every single time and he can't, in the end, spend money without your input. But I don't want, we, we have plenty of cases where people who have an axe to grind with us for one reason or another decide to name people. And it's one thing if you do it to Mr. Gross or even the mayor or even a council person because we, that's, you get the big bucks for that and we do it. But when it's a volunteer, I feel even stronger that we need to aggressively fight that on every level. And as long as they don't cross the line and they serve in that pedestrian capacity, and in this case, this individual has put in countless hours trying to make a positive impact, I'll fight it to the end. And if you start funding it, I'll do it pro bono for that individual because they deserve it. So again, I, I can't set a precedent. In the end, you control the money and we'll control the firepower in the appropriate way. In this case, it'll, it'll be a natural cap because the litigation is for well intents and purposes, as long as we can pull this over the finish line is, is over. But I, I respect your position and that's why I, I bring it to your attention. In this case, because it's below the cap, we probably didn't even need to do that, you know, because it's below the 17.5. But I always like to, in abundance of caution, bring it forward so that you're aware of it. So, thank you.
I, I certainly appreciate. Thank you for your perspective, Councilwoman Williams. And I agree with Mr. Trank that every case is different. Obviously, you know, we've all heard of, of volunteers who engage in various acts in those positions. And obviously, the cases will be taken, you know, as they are presented to us for us to decide. So it's, while yes, one can say there's a precedent, but precedent, but it is on a case by case basis. And Mr. Trank, please retract the you get the big bucks from the council. Because, Lord, if every time I hear that they're filling their pockets, every time I put my hands in my pockets, I come out with lint. So.
I find you're absolutely right. I retract that. You're absolutely right. I respect each one of you. And, and, but I'm just saying, we would represent you and it would be, is always our honor. And, and you, you know, it's unfortunate that people on any level are, are use litigation to try to be a tool. And, and in those cases, I think it's important that we defend everybody as vigorously as we would defend, quote, our own. So, thank you.
No, I, I agree. And for residents, the council receives a stipend. And I, I'd be remiss if, if I, I'd be wrong to say that I knew how much it was. I think it's maybe like less than $12,000 a year. So that if those are the big bucks that Mr. Trank is talking about, then I'll own that, but no big bucks here. And again, my council colleagues, anything else that I've missed that the, that has not been pulled that the public wanted to discuss or have answers to? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we will go with the consent agenda and then I would like to introduce Mr. Thapar.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move. Second.
Councilwoman, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Mr. Trank, thank you for asking Mr. Thapar to join us today on our council meeting. We have worked very hard to find someone who is, or an attorney, because it's required by the ordinance, as well as someone who we can say is, is acting in the, in the capacity of, of what we all want to see for West Orange. He was born and raised here, was a former in, in our wrestling coach, substitute teacher at the high school. He, you know, family here. So I would like Mr. Thapar to introduce himself to everyone. This is our newly approved town advocate.
Thank you so much. Thanks for, everyone for having me. My name's Rob Thapar. I'm a partner at law firm Sabat Thapar. I'm a certified civil trial attorney. I've been practicing for, it seems like, it's been like, it seems like a week, but it's been almost 10 years now. That time just flew by. I'm a West Orange graduate. I was, I moved here when I think I was three years old. And, you know, West Orange has been in my blood since, ever since then. So, thank you guys for, for having me.
And I do want to thank Mr. Devar also because again, it is, as we all know, and we're kind of talking about a carryover. And I know Councilwoman Williams met with Mr. Devar. It's not easy to get people with as much on their plate as Mr. Devar to step forward. As you know, talk about not, you know, getting the big bucks. I think this stipend may be $4,000 for the whole year. And the whole purpose of a public advocate is not to fight every application or whatnot, but it is to be available for the land use boards and to help people understand the process. And so we're excited to have a, a, a new public advocate, one who's committed to that, one who knows this town intricately. And, and it's so awesome to see young people step forward and being willing to give back to their community. So I want to thank Mr. Devar and I look forward to his service.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilwoman Catalina?
Thank you, Council President. I'm sorry to me, to, to jump in here, but I'm not because just so excited to see Mr. Thapar here, one of West Orange Finest alumni. Very exciting to see. And I just wish you all the best of luck and thank you for stepping up for our community.
Absolutely. And, and the timing is, is appropriate for you to be joining the council, a, joining the township, but also this particular council meeting because as, as you were on for the public comment and as you will hear the discussion for, that the mayor will make on second reading for the downtown redevelopment. I know you two have ideas for the downtown redevelopment. So I'm glad that this is the, the time that you're joining us because you'll, you'll hear a lot from what the residents' concerns are and you'll be able to, you know, participate in those discussions with them and on, on their behalf. So thank you so much for volunteering. And I, I hope it's not a late night, but I hope that you're able to stay on for the rest of the discussion. Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 232-21, resolution authorizing the township to award a contract for the township's insurance broker for the period January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021 to Fairview Insurance Agency Associates, Inc.
That was pulled by Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. I, I think we should not contract with Fairview at all. I, I understand that this process was different than the processes in the past have been where we have contracted with Fairview. I know that this process was fair and open. I recognize that there were, was at least one other response. And I understand that some of the council colleagues may have some questions with regard to that, but that's not my issue. My issue is that while Fairview was in receipt and had it in for multiple years of a no bid contract, they meddled in local election politics. They supported candidates in the election. I find that offensive. I find that distasteful and appropriate. And I think any vendor that has a no bid contract and then decides to meddle in an election so that they can pick the folks that will decide whether or not they'll get a contract or what that process will be, I think they should be disqualified from doing business with the town. So Fairview has clearly overstepped their bounds, at least did so last year. And I understand that we've done some things to try and clean up the mess that they created. Or some things have been done, I won't say we, some things have been done to clean up the mess that they've created. And I do applaud the township for moving in that direction. However, once you've poisoned the well, the well is poisoned. And so I, I would encourage my colleagues to not vote for Fairview, to vote no. And let's start the process over and find someone else. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. I.
President?
Yes.
If I'm, if, I'm sorry, if I, if I may, I just want to point out, and, and I understand councilman's reasons and, 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 and in order to define previous contracts as a no bid contract. I just want to be clear because I don't want the public to take away from this conversation that the township was handing out no bid contracts because the connotation of that is basically they were handpicked and, and, and there was no process. The truth of the matter is, there was a process. And it is a process that is dictated by statute that we follow. The, the, we, we, this time, we went a step above that because that's what the council asked us to do. But the process that we were using previously was the process that is specified by the legislature. When they did, and when they created the pay to play rules. So I'm, I'm, I'm not going to address the other issues that the councilman addressed, but I do want to, I do, do want to make sure that the public does not leave this discussion believing that the township of West Orange is a place where you go to get a no bid contract because that's just not the case. We follow the statutes and, and, and we go above and beyond the statutes. So I, I, I just wanted to make that point. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. I did have a question with respect to the language in Resolution 232. And, and let me start by, by just saying that first and foremost, I, I thank my colleagues and I thank the administration for listening to the council when we said we wanted this to be more competitive because we felt that it would benefit the township. And I understand, Councilman Rutherford and I had a discussion earlier about this and I completely understand his position. But I, I can't say that I support it. My, my purpose in, in advocating for this and having my council colleagues join me in that support and thankfully the, the administration did listen and go out and, and, and seek something more competitive. Ultimately, I am focused on the fiduciary responsibility that we have to try and make sure that and we have competitive bids so that we can save money in places that, you know, that perhaps we didn't before. And that's not to say that Fairview didn't before, but just to remind everyone, when we had discussions with Fairview with respect to the Benner card, there was a million dollars deduction that was made in, in the last several months. So I, I am, you know, tho- those two things coupled and also looking at the rates that are indicated as percentages. I, I cannot fall back on that, fall back on that and say that I, I agree with Councilman Rutherford with respect to the pay to play. I, I don't like it, but it is what it is with, with the law. And my focus has always been to make sure that we have competitive quotes from different companies. Mr. Gross, my, my, my question goes to the language with respect to the self insured, where it says self insured and it not to exceed 1.5% of max plan costs. And then the other companies is stated as self insured rate of 3.5. Obviously, Fairview came in lower in this percentage space. But I just wanted to better understand if you could tell me what the difference in that language is because this one says not to exceed 1.5% of the max plant, plan clause, plan cost. And that's in the in the, I believe the second whereas clause.
The fourth whereas clause.
The fourth one? One, two, yes, thank you. Three, three and four, yeah, three and four. So Fairview's proposal set forth the following commission rates under the, the item number three, self insured medical, not to exceed 1.5 of max plan costs. And then whereas Alamo's, in the next whereas clause, Alamo's proposal set forth the following item three, self insured medical 3.5%. Is there a difference in that language? Or is that how, how the RFP was written?
Because, because we are self insured, that you nev- you never know what our costs are going to be on a year to year basis. So using the, the terminology, max plan cost is the same as premium. So I, I don't see any difference in those.
Okay, so it's 1, 1.5% of the premium versus Alamo, who was quoted. Okay, so it's 1 1.5% of the premium versus Alamo, who was quoted at, who quoted 3.5% of of their of the premium.
Right. Premium, it's a projected premium. It's not a it's not, we're not dealing with because we're self insured, it's it's not self insured, it's not a someone else is charging us a premium. So we do a calculated premium. So that that this this would be standard in in this situation. So I there's no difference.
Okay. And and there was a question before with respect to the exhibits not being available for the public. Is that something that's posted online? Or we can make available? I see your hand, Mr. Councilman. Oh, my goodness. Councilman Rutherford. Is there is the is the information posted online?
You asked?
No, Mr. Gross.
I I would have thought it was online with the resolutions. If that was not sent to the clerk's office, we can remedy that.
Okay, perfect. So for those who wanted to see the responses, we we will have that up shortly. Councilman Rutherford.
So thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
To to recap. Last year, a flyer, a mailer was sent out which was paid for by PAC. PAC received a substantial donation from Fairview in an amount slightly higher than what the approximate cost of the mailer should have been for town our side. Supporting candidates in the election. That election happened. Some of those candidates won, others didn't. We then start talking about this particular contract. And only at your urging, your request, your question, Council President, was this Benny Card savings uncovered, discovered? This is my understanding. I'm sure someone here tonight will correct me if I'm wrong. But a million dollars was saved at that point. And this was the last time we discussed it a few months ago or several months ago now, perhaps. I find that very interesting that when there is some discussion about this contract and the way in which Fairview will interact with this council that a savings of a million dollars appears. And I wonder, and I know we'll never know the answer to this question, but I like to wonder aloud sometimes. I wonder if that savings would have materialized had there not been pressure or a direct question from you, Council President, with regard to those savings. And so then we don't pass it. Some time goes by and here we are again. And when I look at these numbers, I I mean, you know, I don't even want to deal with the numbers. I think that recap shows bad faith. I think that and someone can correct me. I'm happy to have the debate. But I think those actions alone show that Fairview is not acting in our best interest, that they are charging what they can get away. And that we're paying it unfortunately to our own detriment. If they can materialize a million dollars in savings at at that amount of pressure, you know, why couldn't they have done that initially? And why does it take this kind of pushback in order to get savings? That's to me not dealing in good faith and that's a second example of not dealing in good in good faith, which is why I encourage us to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. And just for to to just elaborate a little bit on on my council colleagues statement on my request and my pressure, I I have been insistent that this be done differently. And as a result, over, I think, the last three years, Mr. Gross arranged a conversation on Zoom with a representative from Fairview. And I did my due diligence and and presented my diligence to the representative with Mr. Gross and did point out that, you know, at least on the pharmaceutical and the the prescription end, that we would have been better off at the state at the state plan and as a result, there should have been a savings. I hear you, Councilman Rutherford. That that's that was that was the practice or the Zoom practice. But I also can look at it from the other perspective that, you know, if we are vigilant, they're they are responsive. I think that moving forward, every one of us is learning more and more about the insurance practices and learn how to ask the the questions, you know, because it's it's challenging to understand all of the different language that is composed in in these contracts, premiums and there's a lot of information that that we don't see unless we're looking for it. We don't understand unless we ask the questions, but you know, I I am grateful that we did have that meeting. It was a long meeting and we did have that discussion. Had nothing come of that, then I would have had a different opinion, but you know, as far as I'm concerned, they did. And I feel it is all of our obligation to continue to be vigilant, not just with Fairview, but all of our contracts, all of our vendors, to make sure that they are delivering what's in the best interest of the public and our municipality. So I I certainly appreciate those comments and and I'm going to call on Councilwoman Castellino and then you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. And to both to all my colleagues. So, um, yeah, this has been frustrating dealing. You know, with with this vendor last year. You know, my my name, my picture, unbeknownst to me, was on a flyer, which I was not happy with. Still, I still don't have proof, Councilman, that which vendor or who was responsible for it. So so it was very frustrating. With all that being said, the council year after year has been maybe not on the airwaves, but has been wanting to get this brought to this process. So I'm glad that we have gotten into this process, but after the last meeting, what always gets me to the point where I go to approve this vendor is because of quality of service that they have given the business department or business administrator and or CFO through the years. When we had the conversation last time, a few resident, I'm sorry, a few staff members had reached out to me because of the assistance and and no one, you know, told them to call me. They called me on their own. They were watching the meeting or following it and panicked that we wouldn't choose this vendor because of how they assist with their claims and the service that they receive from the staff. So now weighing all of those items. You know, just, you know, I'm glad we went to this process because I couldn't be supportive this time without it. But it's because of the staff and really because of Mr. Gross. Year after year, we would have to provide support staff for him if we don't utilize this vendor. Obviously, other vendors could provide support staff, but knowing the industry and knowing you know, how difficult and cumbersome the claims are, especially for our employees. I am willing to support that this this year only because of the process. Otherwise, I I was going to abstain. So I just wanted to share those situations to my colleagues. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. I'm not, I don't want to give the wrong impression. I'm not trying to accuse any of my council colleagues of anything wrong. I'm not even suggesting that you knew ahead of time. That's not part of the argument. My my concern is that they would take that initiative on their own. And I know that there is some difficulty in proving, but the, you know, where there's smoke, there's fire. The PAC has to has to disclose who their donors are and when those donations are made and how much those donations are. And the timing of that, along with the release of the mailer is just too coincidental, you know, for me. So but having said that, once Council President engaged with Fairview around cost, which was after pressure had been put on them both during that campaign and in council meetings with regard to this particular service they provide, a million dollars in savings appeared. It's the same state plan. I know there's some inflation year over year and I know insurance has a a higher rate of inflation than the economy in general, but that's a lot of money. And so if we have to double check and triple check each vendor, that I think that's a, I, you know, in business, you have to have some level of trust. I've got to trust that when you tell me this is the best I can do, that that's the best you can do. And there's no way I could say that about Fairview, given how we got to this, want to this space where there is some significant savings. Last thing I wanted to comment on was the quality of service. I am certain that the folks that have been servicing this account have done a good job. I'm sure they're professionals. I I have no reason to doubt that. I have no reason to doubt the testimonials from those that have received the service on our end and I'm fully willing to accept that. But they are not the only ones that can provide excellent service. The industry, the industry is broad. There are multiple brokers, many in the municipal space. And, you know, I I think, you know, I think once you've proven that you can't be trusted, that trumps any level of service. You, if you speak sweetly to me and treat me kind do all the nice things for me, but you're hurting me at the same time. The pain for me is much more important than whispering sweetly in my ear. And I know that's not a perfect analogy. But that's that's the analogy I want to use. The quality of service may be excellent. But if I can't trust that you're giving us the best price, if I can't trust that when you say this is the best you can do, if I can't trust that that's true, that that requires a level of of work and and mental gymnastics that I don't think should be present in a contract of this size. And if we're talking about $20,000 or $30,000, that's one thing. This is one of, if not the largest expenditures we have when it comes to 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 benefits. I think that may be our largest. It's certainly in the top two or three expenditures we have. So to have to double and triple check that and not be able to trust the information that's coming from the vendor to me trumps the quality of service. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. I won't add anything else. Did any of my council colleagues have additional comments on on this particular?
I I do want to add, you know, again, given the history. You know, in years past, we had had significant savings from this vendor. So to say that, you know, that we haven't. I understand council councilman hasn't been on the council that long, but Mr. Gross, maybe you could share some of those prior situations. When I first came came on the council, there was quite a few savings that the vendor provided without having to have a conversation that he provided on their own accord. I think one was RX a few years back.
Yeah, we over over the years, we have done very, very well and they have done very, very well for us. Frankly, they 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 had no economic incentive in our previous contracts to act in the way that the concern is being expressed. They were paid per by person for the medical insurance. So to to try to spring something on us after the fact because because of of the the meetings that we had and the questions were act just just isn't supported frankly by by the facts. They they were being paid on a per person, per month basis, not on a premium base, a percentage of premium. So that that is the administration absolutely does not accept that categorization and we do trust them. They they've done great job. They they brought us into in into self insurance at a time when others were walking away from it and were able to put together a program that saved us literally millions of dollars. We've done very well with our prescription program. We've done over the years. The fact that we have, the fact that we have a more expensive plan than the state contract than the than the state program has nothing to do with with increased premiums. It has to do with the fact that our plans are richer. And because of our union contracts, it requires us to maintain the level of service that we have over the years while the state contract, the state program has continued to drop its coverages. So what as much as we long for more savings, we can't do, we can't do that at this the expense of of reducing the 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 level of coverages that the majority of our unions support and still want. And and in fact, we believe all of them want it. And so while while there was some discussion previously about, you know, one union or another be willing to compromise on on that. The truth of the matter is the state contract, the state program, the state health benefits program is an all or none program. They will not accept one union from a municipality. It's all the unit and all of your retirees or none. And we are just not in a position to do that. So you're right, I'm sorry, we were putting pressure on everyone somewhere to to find us solutions and they did find a solution. They they found a solution by moving our our retirees to a Medicare Advantage program of that is is that that we're dealing with and to save save us a substantial amount of money. And over the years, frankly, as costs have gone up, they've done a great job at at moderating that for us and we're very, we're we will we will accept whatever decision the council makes, but but we have the utmost confidence that as we move forward into this unknown chartered future of health benefits, we feel some level of security with the the apparent low bidder here.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And I just want to make a comment because I see that Mr., there's someone in the public that has their hand up. The time for public comment has 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 ended and we cannot entertain additional questions. At at this time, your comments with respect to the redevelopment can be heard at a later time, but at this time, the public comment is closed. Councilwoman McCartney.
Well, thank you, Council President. I I what I wanted to say about Fairview was that the council voted unanimously to ask for this bid and that's exactly what the administration went out and did. And I appreciate your advocacy to be on that phone call. I do hear Councilman Rutherford. But this is what is being presented to us tonight. This is exactly what we asked for and it is. And it is the lowest bidder. So I am in support of this resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. If there are no other comments or questions, I'm going to call the vote. Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to approve 232-21?
So it's second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Resolution 239-21, Resolution Appointing Members to the Task Force and Advisory Committee Regarding Cannabis Business for the Township of West Orange.
Councilwoman Castellino wanted to have a discussion on this. So we polled this, members of the public, this is Councilwoman Castellino wanted to have a discussion on this. So we polled this, members of the public. This is a resolution that follows an ordinance establishing a cannabis task force in order to be able to create policies, rules and regulations to include application fees and, and rubrics, if you will, for a weighted system. And that ordinance has passed and this resolution is calling or asking for the council, council to support the task force as named and listed here. We did ask by ordinance to have the police chief and/or his, his designate. I've asked for myself to sit as a chair. And just before we get ahead of ourselves, the reason I, I have asked is because I have been very active in the last two years in this arena to try to bring education and information and continue to do the research to try to make sure that we create policies that are going to benefit all of us in town. I asked Councilwoman Castellino as a township representative from the council, also hoping because she is the council liaison to the Board of Ed, that she also sit on this task force and do double duty in that regard because I believe that she represents a voice that is quite frankly different than mine. And it's important for me to hear, you know, that representation from, from, from the residents who don't necessarily agree with me, but who she speaks for as well. So I, you know, I, I thought she was the appropriate person to, to do so, particularly being the Board of Ed liaison. She can take back discussions and bring back information. I felt that that was someone we needed. We also needed someone from the West Orange Economic Development Committee. And Mr. Wayman has been recommended. I also was very careful in looking at a couple of things when I spoke to the mayor about who should serve on, on this task force. Because all of us have heard, and this is not derogatory or negative towards the mayor, but we've all heard, you know, the comments about how the mayor packs boards and, and, and committees, you know, like the planning board. The planning board, the mayor does appoint everyone, but because it's by statute, we do not have an appointment there. So when in thinking about people that had expertise in areas, I thought about someone who sits on the planning board, but is also a parent and a father of four pre-teens and teenagers in middle school and high school, because I think that that voice is important. And, you know, has the knowledge and information from the zoning board that can help us as we move forward in this process. And I also wanted somebody who would also do double duty from the West Orange Downtown Alliance. Captain Ador Yasin is, he's recently joined the Downtown West Orange Alliance. So I think that that voice is important, as well as his experience in hazardous waste materials. He can help do research and at the end of the day, that's really what's needed in this space. Because we're not just talking about applications and fees, but we're also talking about having to, to research and learn information about water waste. Should we have a, a cannabis cultivation site? And wastes of products, if there is a manufacturing site. If there's a license for a manufacturing site. And I, I specifically look for people who I know are going to, to, to actively do the work and, and who I can, can trust to, to pick up the phone and, you know, push along if, if needed, although I doubt that any of that is the case with anyone that is, that I recommended to the mayor. And then the ordinance also called for a mayoral appointment and that is a Mr. Ador Moore, who the mayor has recommended. So Councilwoman Castellino wanted to have a discussion on, on, on this resolution 239. So Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. And, and because we have opposite views, as you stated, in some cases. So just my way of thinking and my experiences with these type of boards in the past. So I just want to get a clarification. So are these recommendations that you made and the mayor's appointing all these people, if then, then that's before us? In the past, and I appreciate you, you wanting to, to have me serve. I have no issue serving. I have no issue with anybody you mentioned. But if you're taking them from their committee, like if, so for example, the Downtown Alliance, we didn't have a discussion. Not that we would be opposed to your, to your pick, but I, usually when you're taking from any organization, they send the person to the, to the, to serve, not, you know, you pick from them. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay the way we'd be handling this. They'd be okay with me serving. I, I just wanted for us to vet this out just a little bit because this is done a little bit different that we've done in the past. And I just want to make sure that my colleagues were all on board with the process. That's all.
Certainly appreciate that. Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I thought when we passed the cannabis ordinance, I thought it was utmost important to create this task force. And I do, I feel like our conversation got as far as having you, Council President, you serve and Councilwoman Castellino, that's as far as our discussion went. I was following your logic on, on choosing the other people to serve on this board, but I didn't know where they came from. I do follow your logic, but I guess I was making an analogy, analogy, just like the ordinance on the civilian complaint review board, that each council person can still follow your logic, but that we would have someone to, that we would choose someone to serve on the board. I, it seemed that this was not all mayoral appointments, that I didn't know where the names came from.
And, and I, looking at the ordinance itself, there was, when, when I, when there was reference to it as moving, to move forward in that, there was no, it wasn't spelled out in the ordinance that we passed. So I didn't want to just give all of these names to the council. I wanted to have the discussions with the mayor. And, and the reason I had the discussions with the mayor is because let's be very, you know, we, we want to be transparent in our conversations. There are a couple of people that I recommended and I, I knew in making those recommendations that, you know, they have been vocal about the things that, or the decisions that the mayor has made in the past and is not someone that, perhaps the mayor would call a supporter, because I, and that was, that was intentional. And I wanted to make sure that the mayor understood the reason why I felt that that was necessary. You know, so the, these were not mayoral appointments. These were names that I, people that I thought of that I have to work with. And obviously we will all work with them, but I, I, and, and we all have experience on committees, even our own appointments, sometimes that we have the nudge to actually take an active role in the appointments that we've given them because showing up to committees is not enough and we all have those appointments. So for this, because of the level of importance, the sense of urgency, because now the civilian, I'm sorry, the civilian, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission has now updated their regulations, which means that we have to get to work and get to work quickly to make sure that now we are in compliance with those changes and in the ordinance and, and start doing, you know, the work of the, the research, which is literally rolling up our sleeves and, and getting to work. That was, that was the sense of urgency with which I worked. And, and our legal department was probably had a, had a more urgent sense of urgency because Mr. Mark Moon reached out to me with a list of things that we needed to do in advance of us even, you know, having this, this task force put together. So while I do agree that in other circumstances, that has been the case, when I looked at the ordinance, it is not spelled out that way. And because of the sense of urgency and the nature of the work, I felt that I could make the recommendation, hoping that the, my council colleagues could support that. And moving forward in the work, obviously, you know, keep everyone appraised as to its progress.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're very welcome. Any other comments, questions?
Well, let me just go back to what Councilwoman Castellino said about the Downtown Alliance. Ador, I do know he serves. I again, follow your logic, what happens? And should that be a consideration for the Downtown Alliance, considering that he is so new to the board? Is that something that the Alliance themselves should choose someone from their, from the Downtown West Orange Alliance? Just, I'm posing it as a question. And again, I follow your logic. I understand why you would select him. But that's like an unresolved question yet. Should that choice come from the Downtown Alliance?
Because I didn't approach the Downtown Alliance or the, the zoning board, then that would mean, or the Economic Development Commission, that would mean that we'd have to put this off and I'd have to ask for their recommendations. And again, I don't know everyone on the Downtown Alliance. I do know the individuals who I've asked to work with. And because of the sense of urgency, I am hesitant to go back to, and, and put this on hold any further. Councilman Rutherford?
I'm sorry, this question, they will serve for how long?
The ordinance has to, for a year. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it's a year term.
It expires December of 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. Some of you have heard me say this in regards to other situations that we've had to deal with. I believe it is important for leaders to pick their own team. Our council president has spearheaded this from the beginning. This is certainly uncharted territory for the entire township, entire state. And so, you know, I, I think it's important to, especially when people acting in good faith, to allow leaders to choose their team. So I don't have any pushback at all with regard to the structure of the task force. And unless and until something is done to change my opinion that you're acting in good faith, I don't think I will because, you know, you've got to lead a group of people quickly to address, you know, changing circumstances, balance multiple constituents and, and needs in the community. And so, you know, I'm, I'm satisfied with that and I, and I would be supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. So for clarification purposes, since the commission or committee will serve through December 31st of 2022, then how will the chair be selected moving forward? And then how will the appointments be made? Will the council president continue to make those appointments? What's the process going to be moving forward?
I think when, when the, when the ordinance was written and, and the thought process was really uncertain as to the need for a task force thereafter. After establishing regulations, rules, policies, procedures, whether or not then that was going to be left to the council then to follow after that was all established. Because ultimately, whatever the, the task force recommends will be approved by the council as a whole. That's in the ordinance. So I, to answer your question, I don't know if there will be a need for a task force moving forward. This is a process that we're just beginning and that's why that, that was part of the discussion with the legal department and, and the administration in creating it. It may, there may not be a need for it. We're not certain.
And so following up, you know, I, clearly you've identified who you wanted to be on the commission or the committee. But if you have an interest, as I do, of participation, is this a closed commission? Is it open to, you know, how, how is this going to function?
I'm sure that there will be public meetings, well, for now by Zoom. And participation is welcome, but those who are tasked with, with, you know, the responsibility of creating these things, obviously are going to listen and reach out for input from the public and from colleagues, right? Because I think it's important that we don't work in a silo or a siphon. It'll, it'll have to be constructed with comments and considerations from, from the public. We have received emails that from the general public with recommendations from the time we passed the ordinance to opt in. And understanding that there are changes to be made, all of those considerations that the residents have given will also be considered, but certainly in a collaborative process, but these people will be charged with the heavy lift of, of making sure that these things get done in a timely fashion and that are considered of all of the residents' voices. And if there is a need to continue to have a task force, then, you know, I think it's incumbent upon us to revisit the ordinance and make changes as, as we see where there is need to change. Councilwoman Castellino.
So, so my recommendation at this point is I'd like to add two more members to the committee. I think our recreation director where, that oversees our parks should sit on this. And I either someone else from the school district or council of PTAs. Just trying to, you know, just filter through the phone calls that I've received through the, through the past couple of months of people, like you, you know, again, your, your circles are all with people that have been supportive of this. I think it needs to be a, a balanced, little bit more balanced with the membership on here, making these decisions.
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't say that everyone on this list is supportive of, of the cannabis. I, I, it, it's not something that I've heard publicly from two of the individuals that I asked would be willing to serve. So I don't think it's fair to say that they're all of my.
You're right. I'll take, I'll take, I'll take that, I'll take that back, but I, I think we need our recreation department, you know, because we are having issues in the parks with people, you know, just light, lighting up or I, I just think we need for better placement. And I would like to see someone from the parent, from the council PTAs serve on here.
So that, that would require changing the ordinance.
We can't amend it?
The ordinance? We, we'd have to, we have to revisit the ordinance to change it.
Okay, so what's the problem with that?
Because time is of the essence in bringing our ordinance into compliance.
No disrespect, Council President, but the last meeting, you know, I've been trying to be a team player with all this and as we sat, Livingston sat there and passed a, an ordinance not to accept, you know, this in their community right now. So I think we do have a little bit more time to play with. I understand because there's people knocking on our door, looking to open up some businesses. So I get that, but this has to be, I think we have to expand the committee just a little bit more, just to make it a little more balanced.
So just to be very clear, it's not about people knocking on our door. It's about us bringing ourselves and our ordinance that is currently existing into compliance and having the time to get the work done. There is a lot of research that still has to be done. There's a lot of things that we don't yet know to require, for instance, odor controlling systems. That, that's something that someone on the, on the committee, and I'm hopeful that, you know, someone who has experience with hazardous waste materials could volunteer to, to, to carry that load. So that's the sense of urgency. We have to get to work on this and we don't have time because we are currently out of compliance. So I would say, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams, I'm still speaking. If, if it is the council's desire to amend the ordinance, then I don't see why we can't add two additional members, if that's what the council decides is what they want. You know, I don't see why we can't do that, but simultaneously construct this task force.
And, and, and another question, because you, you're mentioning the hazardous waste. So my question is, should somebody, so should, does that mean we should have somebody from, that handles that through the township side? I, 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 no, I, I have, you know, I'm not saying not are represented from the Downtown Alliance, can't be on it, but. do we need to add someone from the township side?
So I, so I do see him as the township side, as a captain of the fire department who does the training in all of these areas. Uh like I said, I was looking for somebody who who could do double, double duty. Um Councilwoman McCartney. I think you're muted, Councilwoman.
Everything's very good in my papers here. Yeah, my question is, you said that we were out of compliance. The only deadline I knew was the one in mid-August that said we had to either opt in or opt out at that time. So if we're saying we, it would be easier to amend this resolution to add a title, even if it's not a person to add a title, and then revisit the ordinance. I don't, I don't know what that deadline is. You're saying that we're out of compliance, but the last deadline I knew was August.
The ordinance, so the the Cannabis Regulatory Commission for the state has has passed into legislation, their regulation. So that that ordinance that we have presently is not in compliance because there are some things that are contrary to and excluded in our ordinance. And that's nobody's fault, other than the fact that we didn't know what the regulations is gonna be. And we knew and anticipated that this was going to happen. Um so that is what I'm speaking about. With respect to the the ordinance that created the task force, that's the other ordinance that we'll have to revisit to amend. And if the council as a whole decides that um seven members um um and we wanna add two additional members, then we have to amend that um cannabis task force ordinance. So that's where I am. I I see uh Mr. Case, your hand is up.
I just, I mean, I've been listening patiently and um I just think maybe it's time for me to chime in a little bit. Obviously, you can change ordinances, but you can't do it immediately. It takes, you have to go through the process. Um and I I don't see any reason why this task force can't begin to do its work pursuant to the existing ordinance. And then you can make changes going forward and and the membership may change and their focus may change and so forth. So all I'm gonna, all I'm trying to get across is that you can, you can amend just about anything. It sounds like, and I'm not familiar with the with the new state regulations, but it sounds like you may have to make some changes in the ordinance anyway, so it's gonna come up for changes sometime soon. But this, this I think can be done independently. And if you, if you change the ordinance later to add more members to the task force, you can then redo a resolution with adding more people.
So that that, to your point, Mr. Case, that's what I was, uh I maybe I didn't, I wasn't clear on that, but that was my recommendation once um Councilwoman Castellino mentioned um changing, adding two people. So that's what I'm saying. Um we can move forward with this resolution and list on our next agenda um in um an amended ordinance to include two additional positions, whatever it is that we as a council decide should be represented on this task force and, you know, take that time to do that. But but to Mr. Case's point, it's the process of the two weeks and two weeks. It's a month. And we do have to to get started on the work. So I I I'm asking um for you to consider passing this resolution. And we will add two additional um positions amending the existing ordinance for the task force during the next agenda. Um I see both of your hands up, uh Councilwoman Williams and then uh Councilman Rutherford.
I I have no further comments.
Okay, uh Councilman Rutherford.
Yeah, thank you. I I um I I think it's important that, I know we're under some time constraints, but we do wanna get this one right. So if I, you know, Mr. Case eloquently stated, there's a way to split the baby, for lack of a better term. We can move forward as is with the expectation that at our next meeting, we will begin to amend the ordinance so that we can add additional folks. Um and we can do it in a way that makes sense for um uh for the town, but also for you as the leader.
I I I completely agree with that. Um I'm uh it's it's a conversation that um we can have to, you know, either individually or separately that um you know, who we think that, what what other positions um to Council, Castellino's point um would benefit the task force. So um in order to do that, um I'm I'm happy, not in order, but I'm happy to um pass this resolution and then let's have, let's start discussions about um who, oh who, not who, but what other positions um we want to add.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Council President. Uh I I am willing to move forward as long as we have amendments for the next meeting. So we've, so we would, if we figure out what they are, we could do that via email, I assume before. Or or we can, obviously not violating, not violating any.
No, we will not, we will not have a quorum, you know, but just as we do have conversations individually and then we all circle back um with one another. Um but yeah, absolutely. I I I am very supportive of that. Um you know, again, my sense of urgency is because we've got, we've got a lot of work to do. So is there, yes.
Oh, and when do you anticipate the, when to have this first meeting?
Um I will have to send you all out a doodle poll to see what your earliest available date for a meeting is and then we'll we'll, you know, put a public notice out. Yeah. If there are no more questions or comments, I'm gonna ask um Madam Clerk.
There are motion to approve two thirty-nine dash twenty-one.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
And that I would ask that on our September twenty-eighth meeting, that we revisit this ordinance.
That is fair. Um Hold on one second as I organize myself too much here and lost my agenda. Um Mr. Trank, are you on? I just want to make sure that we um give the mayor some notice to uh as we are getting near our um public hearing.
I will inform them.
Thank you.
So the mayor will join us and then the question is, is um after introduction, do you uh wanna hear the mayor's presentation?
Yes. Or what were you gonna suggest?
No, that's perfect. And um then I guess at that point, you could hear public comment and then I don't know if you'll need an executive session or not. That's up to you, Council President.
Um I I I want to just remind um us all um that this, while it is a proposed um settlement, it 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 has not ended the litigation. And and I feel a need to say that because uh um wanna manage expectations of what we can speak about and what we cannot speak about. Um you know, we've, we've made a lot of progress in this space, um both negotiate, negotiating and um through the settlement conference. And I just don't want to risk the progress that we've made so far. So I just, I think it um best that we just be reminded that this is still a matter in litigation until the time where um the settlement agreement is is finalized. If there's anything else that you'd like to add, Mr. Trank, um outside of that, I don't think that there's a reason for um executive session.
I I totally concur uh with your comments and I I guess I would suggest that um the mayor make his presentation. Uh if uh if the members of council at that point feel that there may be issues that tread into specifically the area you referenced, then if a council person feels it's valuable to go into executive session, uh there's a resolution available that we could then enact and go in executive session, then come back in public and let the public provide their comments and then the council can deliberate and vote.
Uh I I'm I'm good with that. I think that that works well. Um Mayor, good to see you. Thanks for joining us.
Hey, everyone. Hope everyone can hear me. Hope uh everyone's having a good evening. It's a long, a long agenda. First meeting after a long summer is sometimes long, so appreciate everyone's commitment to uh all the stuff that's going on.
Absolutely. Uh Mayor, I think we have to open, um uh Madam Clerk, do we have to open the uh?
Yeah, if I can uh open.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-six fifty-one dash twenty-one bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various properties pursuant to the downtown redevelopment plan. Buying in the township of West Orange, appropriating thirteen million dollars therefor and authorizing the issuance of thirteen million dollar bonds or notes of the township to finance the cost thereof. Is there a motion to uh open the bond ordinance on on second reading, sorry. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Thank you to my council colleagues. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um Mr. Parisi, Mayor Parisi.
Thank you, Council President. I would like, uh, before I start, just to ask Lauren to give me the ability to share my screen, just so I can put a chart up there.
Yes, you already have the that uh ability.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
So can everyone see the uh the chart, the map? So that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. Um you know, it's a couple of times over the years, I I I've talked about how sometimes the word redevelopment feels like a feels like a curse word. Um a- and I guess in some cases, over the last couple of months, it's, you know, kind of felt that way a little bit. Um redevelopment of Main Street in this particular zone goes back to two thousand two or two thousand three, creating the zone, two thousand six, uh naming Prism as a developer and and approving plans. And and here we are already in two thousand twenty-one and and having some of the same issues and and some of the same struggles. But um but but just a quick recap. Phase one, you can see on the screen what's marked as phase one, the battery building i- i- is a huge success. And I know sometimes people in the public have been concerned about this or that or the the empty retail, but you you sometimes you gotta take a step back and a- and and look at the big picture. And and the fact is that this is a project that no developer wanted. The town spent years trying to get someone to wanna do this project and a bunch of very smart, successful people told us it it wasn't possible. And Prism, to their credit, they bought this property, they uh they hung through the worst recession in in all of our lifetimes. Hopefully, the worst recession we ever had. Years of litigation that actually brought this project to the New Jersey Supreme Court. Uh and and Prism waded through that and they funded the project, they started building, started having success and then suffered through a pandemic. And yet, through all that, all these years later, uh this property is now ninety-five percent occupied, generating huge rents. They're they're about to uh open two of the retail spaces in the eighteen thousand square foot uh of of retail space. Uh for those who haven't seen it i- inside, it it's absolutely a beautiful project with with huge amenities and uh and you know, it sometimes sends me to to see some of the frustration that residents express about this project because it's, it it's something I think the town should really, should really be proud of. And in two thousand twenty-two, now that we've reached the levels we're at, it's it's gonna generate a little over one point two million dollars in pilot revenue uh for the township, this project. So phase one, despite the sometimes frequent criticism, uh you know, is a huge success. And and we have a lot to thank Prism for. Um you know, they hung in there through unprecedented challenges. Uh when looking at the building itself as a major challenge, um they they made a huge commitment to this township. Uh and we should be proud of that. And I'm certainly thankful for the relationship we've had with Prism because of that. The problem is, and why we're here tonight, is is phase two. And if I ask everyone to look at the map, we're talking about the Prism-owned properties in phase two, which are those that are outlined in green. This is right here is a small property on Babcock that Prism owns. The large green square here is what is often referred to as the Barton Press property because it's uh housed Barton Press for many years. And they own these individual lots on Ashland. So that's really what we're talking about tonight and what we're looking uh to buy and ask the council's consideration in moving forward to buy them. It does not encompass all of phase two. Uh this large property here, as all of you know, is is Public Works and the Animal Shelter. So a large part of the phase two properties are owned uh by the township uh and other property owners, which we'll get to in a little bit. But tonight, we're talking about the properties owned by Prism as part of phase two. But the challenge has been in getting phase two built. So so clearly, phase one was approved and funded and all those things were the early on in this process, but but there was always plans to be a phase two. Uh the plan as it um currently sits, the redevelopment plan, had a had approvals to build additional housing on this site. Um and for a variety of reasons, it it hasn't got built. A lot of it has to do with the economics, whether or not it could be financed, whether or not candidly Prism uh wanted to build it. Um in fact, just before the pandemic, they came to the town to and said they wanted to talk about maybe switching from for sale a project to rentals. And we said we'd be happy to talk about that. And then the pandemic changed that and they came back, I guess, early in this uh in this year, early two thousand twenty-one and had ideas for a logistics center. Obviously, the pandemic um made the whole logistics world kind of boom. So they thought that was an opportunity and council, we talked with council, wasn't something that uh any of us were terribly excited about, although we were interested to see some creativity and what could be done there. But but the fact is, it nothing seems to have happened. And and the fact is that you know, Prism, for all their success in in building phase one and their success all over the state, you don't have to look far to see them in various publications doing great things. They're residential and office developers more than anything and and clearly maybe residential wasn't gonna work here economically and and who is building office space right now. So um it just wasn't something that seemed to be clicking. And I know it's been a frustration from members of this council and and certainly members of the community, and I respect that. And and look, we're here talking about redevelopment phase two fifteen years after originally approved. So I I get and I understand the frustration. It's certainly frustrating to me. And and if if there's people in the public that wanna point blame and place blame, then then that's fine. Blame me, I'm okay with that. But blaming me or blaming government or whoever anyone wants to blame doesn't change the fact that we have a large section of a redevelopment plan with nothing happening. Barton Press was abandoned probably over a decade ago and some of these other properties have been vacated and 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 everyone's been waiting for redevelopment and nothing's been happening. So um blaming people doesn't really get us. It doesn't get us anywhere. So uh we've all, over the last several months, been trying to look and and talk, you know, amongst ourselves with residents in the community. People will come forward and say, well, what what can we do here? So um look, it's the worst kept secret in town. It's been in various publications. But yes, the township is interested in in pursuing a film studio. And it wasn't something we came up with. You don't have to, again, look into too many publications to see. There's huge interest from the Hollywood industry to create studio space in New Jersey. There's not, um if any, uh there's none I know of, but there's certainly nothing significant in Jersey. Um and all the companies have been looking in Jersey and and to New Jersey's credit, they created a very aggressive tax incentive program for the film industry. We've been speaking with uh the governor's office for a couple of months now and uh to understand the program and and try to see how we we can make something like that work. So so yeah, we are interested in pursuing that, but it's all been only conversations. Um but I think more than necessarily specifically talking about studios, it's been the idea that you have to think a little differently. So in two thousand six, would anyone have come up with the idea of film studios? No, of course not. The idea seemed to make sense in two thousand six that you needed residential to drive business success. So things change, times change, and unfortunately, sometimes times goes fast and uh fifteen years later, we're we're still talking about phase two. But the fact that Prism wasn't prepared to move forward with phase two has opened up a huge opportunity for this township. So even if, even if something like a studio, which could be successful and could really be a major, major investment in this community that would probably outlive all of us, um it it also gives the opportunity for us to say, okay, the studio doesn't work. What are our options? So um we are preparing to take this next step. And I know this is a big step to ask the council, but also on the agenda tonight is, is the And I know this is a big step to ask the council, but also on the agenda tonight is, is the amended redevelopment plan. So again, 15 years ago, we could have never envisioned even contemplating studio space in the downtown. So the plan doesn't allow for that. But, but more importantly, this amended plan that's been through the planning board process and approved by the planning board unanimously, opens up to a lot more creative uses than the current, the current plan does. So although we do want to pursue the idea of a studio, we think all the stars are possibly aligning to make that happen, to create what could be about 17 acres in our downtown, only a few short miles from Manhattan, with huge support from the state. We know that if that's not going to happen, we need a more versatile plan to look at other options. And that's, that's what we're doing here. And, and look, having been part of those conversations 15, 16, 17 years ago, when a lot of people came to town, a lot of very successful, well-funded companies to, to look at this project, they didn't have the advantage that we have now. We have a successful phase one. At that time, phase one was a warehouse that people looked at and says, oh my God, the number, the amount of money that's going to cost to turn into something useful is, is not interesting to me. So we, we now, in phase two, we're going to have roughly 17 acres of land right next to a hugely successful luxury apartment building, right next to the Edison Historic Site, and, and you know, a track record of drawing investment into there. So if we are unable to put something together in a studio space, we think we will have a much more appealing property and project to start talking with developers and get ideas of, of where we can go with that. So we know this is a big step. And obviously, before we get to that planning stage, all this stuff comes back to the council. But this is an important step. And I do just want to remind the council, although council knows that, but maybe more for the public. If the council is to approve this bond ordinance tonight, the bonds don't get issued right away. So you know, I understand it's a big issue and it's the big commitment needed to move forward. But, but if something is to happen over these next couple of months and we're unable to close, the bonds won't get sold. So we're not really, the clock isn't ticking on paying them back right away. We still have to go through some additional steps. We have to get the environmental testing done. Although there's been plenty of phase one environmental studies done up till now, we do have to do that. And we have to go through some other steps before we actually get there. But this is, we think, an investment in this community, and it's an important investment. So I understand that there's probably people watching this meeting and a lot of people that'll be talking over the next couple of weeks about how foolish we are and, and how many mistakes we made and all the things we did wrong. And that's, that's fine. We're, you know, I'm game with that. But it doesn't change the fact that we have 17 acres of an approved redevelopment zone with nothing happening. So the administration is asking the council to consider this because this makes an investment in our community and, and puts the ball in our court where we now control what these next steps are going to be. So as I mentioned earlier, I think though they don't get the credit they deserve, what Prism did with phase two, having been there in the beginning, when a lot of people told them they were crazy, to me is something we'll, you know, forever be indebted to. They've built a beautiful project, but we have to, we have to get the rest of it across the finish line. So I know 12.5 is, is a lot of money. And I stood before the council not too long ago and, you know, asked you to, to buy a golf course, which with its time was the largest single bond issue I'd ever asked the council to do. And now, a short time later, I'm asking you for, for a lot of, a lot money, money again. But this is important, I think, to the community. And if we're ever going to get past some of the criticisms that Main Street redevelopment has gotten, then this is a step that we think needs to be taken. But you know, let's think about a second for the value, though it sounds like a lot of money. And it is, and candidly, it's, it's more than the draft appraisals the township had done. We have this property at a praise that only a little over 8 million, these properties added together. Prism had them at 30. So you can see where different people are going to have different perspectives on what the land is worth. But just for, just for a basis, and not that it's necessarily an important basis, but for conversation's sake, these properties outlined in green here on the map that we're asking the council to bond and as part of the agreement, will buy from Prism for 12.5 million dollars in 2021. These properties purchased beginning in 2006 from Prism was, they paid 12.5. So we're basically buying them back at the value they paid for them. And that doesn't account for the years of paying property taxes and all the environmental work they did on them and, and all the escrow funding they did to, to carry these costs. So I don't think, as much as it's a big number, and it is, it's not necessarily accurate that the public thinks they're walking away with a steal because they're not. But we think it's a good deal. It's a fair deal. And it was done quickly. And just for, for guidance, and maybe just repeating some of what might have already been said. But this follows an eight-hour mediation session with, with a judge. The judge called all the parties in and, and God bless the judge. He, he spent eight hours with us going back and forth. All the parties were there. Everyone had an opportunity to be heard. He was patient in hearing everyone's opinions and thoughts and, and proposing and trying to figure out different ways to make this work. And in the end, on the record, the judge on the record stated that this was a good deal, that he is, in his more than two decades on the bench, he has seen cases like this drag on for years and cost millions and millions in legal fees alone. So I think this is a good deal despite what some people might say is, is too much money. I don't think it is. And I think having a judge and having a mediation session brought us to the understanding that maybe where we were thinking is in the right direction. So I'm thrilled it was settled as quickly as it was. We still have a couple of things to get through in the next couple of weeks, couple of months to do that. But I, I think it's important. So as a community, as residents, as elected officials, as everyone collectively, we can be frustrated with still being here. But that frustration and, and complaint doesn't change the fact that we have to deal with it. And unfortunately, whether it's my fault or anyone else's fault, as elected officials, it's our obligation to take the next step forward and keep moving forward, whether it's in our private lives or in government. When things go bad, you gotta keep moving forward. And we're going to keep moving forward. And I think we made a major, major step forward in settling what potentially could have been litigation that would have dragged this project on even longer and cost us a lot of money, maybe to get where we are today anyway. So I'm grateful for the judge's commitment. I'm happy that Prism and their partners worked cooperatively with the judge. I thank the council president for being part of that mediation session. And I, I asked the council to consider, to consider this bond ordinance. But we know, and I'm sure some members of the public are going to echo some of these questions. It's certainly not the last step. Yeah, I know, there's no plan yet. We, we know that. We're going to have to work on one and figure out what our options are and whether or not that's talking to people who can bring a studio here, whether or not it's talking to other developers who've had success in, in similar type projects, talking to residents in the community. Yeah, we know we have more important things to do to get to these next steps. But this is an important first step. It's to, it's to control this property and to control ultimately the vision for what happens there. And we don't know that there's other properties involved. Look, you can see the map I'm showing here. Clearly, it's not all the properties in phase two. So we know that there's other properties that are going to have to be assembled, whether they're purchased additionally, additional purchases by the township or if we contract with a developer for him to buy them. So we know there's other parcels that have to be put together, but clearly, it's the town-owned land here and it's the Prism-owned properties that are, that are big considerations in this. And it's important first step to, to turn the page and to have control over these properties. We do know there's still an affordable housing obligation we got to deal with, and that'll be part ultimately of, of a new plan. And again, we, we know there's more things to do. We don't need anyone from the public to remind us of that. We know that. But this is, this is an important first step. And again, with, with thanks for their patience and persistence and hanging in there. Grateful for Prism for building us phase one, but the administration believes that at this time, it's, it's time to move in a new direction. And we think this is the right thing to do. And kicking our feet isn't going to change anything. It's, got to pick yourselves up and move forward. And this, we think, is the important first step in moving forward. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I'm going to, I'm going to catch you on that. If we have to have another redeveloper, we will talk to him. You meant him or her, correct? I gotta call you on that because there are redevelopers that are of a different gender. And the other thing, Mayor, just, just to be clear, and I don't know if Mr. Trank wants to pop up here as well. During the settlement conference, the judge did give us a date with which all parties had to come back and, and have approvals. And so to those members of the public, you weren't on earlier, but there were some members of the public who made a comment as to the fact that I promised. And, and just because I say something does not equate to a promise. My family will tell you, I do not make promises because I don't like to break promises. I did, however, state that we would have plenty of time for information because that's where we were. That was the plan. We had not anticipated, expected, but were very excited when we were called in for a settlement conference because it was so early on in the process. We were quite frankly surprised but excited for the opportunity. But the reason why we have to move on this now is because we have a timeline with the court system now. So the matter is not, and, and Mr. Trank can correct me if I'm wrong, the matter is not settled. It is pending. It, we've reached an agreement pending approvals from both parties due back to the court with respect to the deed restriction. Correct?
Correct. October 8th is the date by which we have to have final word that the deed restriction will be consistent with what was placed on the record and that the existing deed restriction, which would have limited the green properties, as the mayor referred to them, to only for sale residential. So that's a critical component. We're, we're confident. And again, the mayor, we committed, both sides committed to move forward expeditiously to basically finalize the sale and the transaction. And that may well be a critical component to attempting to put the next phase in place as a result of the current pending settlement.
Okay, I just, you know, and I'm stressing that because I, you know, there is, and if, you know, as, as the lawyer that you are and as any other lawyer that is listening would agree, the fact that we don't, or it, there's a perception of lack of transparency, but we're in litigation. And because we're in litigation, there are some things that are not public that we cannot discuss and have not been able to discuss. It's not an unwillingness to do so. But just the fact that it is in litigation and, and we've had to wait. We want to discuss, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to. I'm, I'm just looking through my notes to see if there are any other questions that I saw. I do want to, did you suggest that we open up to the public or to my colleagues first?
I, it's totally up to you and your colleagues. Whatever you, I, you might, it's, it's up to you. I don't think it matters.
Yeah, I don't. I'd like to open it up to my council colleagues. Can we, can the mayor stop sharing his screen for now? And then if need be, we'll share it again. Thank you. I just, I want to see all of my council colleagues. And I already see hands. Councilwoman McCartney.
It's not unmuted.
You're, you're unmuted. We hear you.
You're good.
Okay. Now I lost everyone.
For here.
I'm not.
If you go down on the bottom, you'll see the little, oh, you muted yourself. Hold on. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, it was showing muted here. Sorry about that. Oh, what was my question? Well, first I wanted to say thank you to the mayor for your hope and optimism. I, I so appreciate this. And since we didn't get to our planning board liaison announcements before, the letter that we did receive talks about, you know, so I, I guess my question goes back to what Mr. Trank was just saying about the deed restriction. My understanding is that the deed restriction right now is that it's residential, but that our overlay zone includes the residential district, it includes a mixed use, it includes home services, mixed residential. Our letter talks about community facilities, public improvements. So can you just explain about the deed restriction that has to be lifted or changed October 8th? Please explain that.
So obviously, as you know, there's a difference between a deed restriction and redevelopment or overlay, as you refer to it. And the, the negotiations that culminated at about 6:30 last Wednesday night were basically the deed restriction that was recorded by, I'll call it, phase one against the other properties would have mandated that they could only be developed for residential. Now, that wasn't an issue under the existing plan because the existing plan has calls for another 250 residential units, which as the mayor said, are apparently not market, is not in the market at this time. So that deed restriction, that was a key part of all the negotiations going back for several months. And that deed restriction will be vacated, voided at the closing, which again, is another reason we'd like to get to a closing as soon as possible. In lieu of that, the only restriction that will exist, which was basically negotiated and is totally consistent with your current redevelopment plan, is as to those four properties the mayor showed on Ashland. I'll call them the Ashland properties. Those are individual lots that are directly contiguous to phase one. And basically, all we're agreeing, and, and I don't have the verbiage, but I know the mayor posted it, we're not going to allow there to be a junkyard there. There's not going to be a gas station there. Uses that cer- certainly we can go through all this redevelopment area with all due respect to all of those great historical uses. Those are not uses that we contemplated, certainly not on Ashland, certainly not in contiguous to a 333-unit apartment house. So, so again, in the end, that will be part of the purchase and sale agreement that will be presented to this council in October and will be the, we'll call it, remaining limited deed restriction as to only the Ashland properties. Everything else will be open game. And so going to your point, which is the diff, the, the other, the redevelopment plan, in all honesty, as a result of Mr. Gragel's work and, and input from various people, it'll be a much more expansive opportunity, which allows the vision, whether it be movie studios or be a combination or whatnot, that can be developed as we get past this litigation and hopefully get into very fruitful discussions and negotiations with a new redeveloper, none of which is yet finalized for, for any review.
Right. Thank you. Yeah. Because that's what the whole point was, to have that foot track, foot traffic right there. Because we do have the Thomas Edison National Sturridge Park right there and the Black Mariah. So it just makes so much sense to have this historic structure for the film industry to be located there. I had a question on the environmental studies. I know that during phase one, there was a letter of no further action there. Were there any, any other action taken on phase two? Not that I recall, but has anything been done on phase two? And do we have any studies from DPW?
Mr. Lepore, I see, Mr. Lepore, I have to address DPW. So keep in mind, that's not, that issue. Okay, so I'll yield to Mr. Lepore because he's the more appropriate person. Maybe we should go to the next question.
All right, so on phase two, so they're just, I'm, I guess I'm saying has, nothing has happened on phase two.
Phase two, there's.
Previous phase two. I mean, what we knew of as a phase two.
So just understanding on, on the, we'll call it, the Prism properties we're acquiring. What we're aware of is Barton Press, as the mayor said, is the big property. We're aware that lots of environmental work has occurred. We're aware this is a $300,000-plus escrow held with the DEP. And we're going to immediately get Matrix to do updated new phase ones. And again, I mean, phase get Matrix to do updated new Phase 1s. And again, I mean Phase 1 in not in the Phase 1.
Okay.
In that, but Phase 1 environmental, to make sure that we're not stepping into any unknown liability. But Mr. Laporte, they want you to come back on the DPW site.
My question was about, will have any environmental studies ever been done on the DPW side itself?
Yes, there have, and, and that's all been associated with one leaking underground storage tank, which was removed.
Has that been remediated? Has that been remediated?
In the process of, of being remediated, we're trying with the path of least resistance to, to remediate that without necessarily a, a lot of excavation of soil.
And keep in mind, since we own that property, you know, we're in the chain of title, we're, we, we have responsibility anyway. So that's, again, not very much impacted by Prism.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, Councilwoman Catalino.
Thank you, Council President. So just, again, I don't know what I can say, not say with, with what has transpired, but maybe Mr. Gross could address to the public. So once we take title to the properties, obviously, they come off the tax rolls. Obviously, our CID tax also doesn't get paid by Prism any longer or that portion. Obviously, they'll still be in there for Phase 1. So Mr. Gross, if you could just address the public to what you can say about how we will make, you know, recover that loss at this time before, I know we don't have a plan moving forward, but
Well, I, I, you're, you're looking at laying the groundwork to create the zoning plan in, in order to promote the site for future redevelopment in accordance with that plan. And that's how you would regain that back. I mean, you're not really losing any CID right now.
We will, we will.
Very little right now. And, you know, it, it will be more than gained back by whatever redevelopment that goes on there.
But in the interim, you'll cover that for the downtown alliance. Like, we have to make our budget whole.
And I apologize if I wasn't, maybe I wasn't clear. In fact, I don't know that I was. We, our clear objective is to create a plan and bring in another developer and sell this land, so, or lease the land. So, yeah, we think it might be, you know, maybe a 2022 budget issue where, you know, we have to do some thinking. But the administration is committed to keeping the CID whole. So we'll figure that out. Not all these properties are CID payers. In fact, I think it's probably only the Barton Press property that is a CID contributor. But we'll deal with that. And ultimately, the council deals with those issues as it'll be presented to the council as part, part of the budget. But the goal is not to own these properties forever and develop it ourselves. Our goal is to get control of the site, control the process, and do a deal with a new developer to, for them to take the land. So we, we, we're planning that this be a a short interim process of which we have the land. So it probably, to your point, is, is gonna be a 22 budget issue. But we'll deal with it with the cooperation of the council to make sure the CID is whole and ultimately, we can still balance our budget.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Catalino. Any of my other council colleagues have questions before I open it up to the public? Or if you'd like to defer till after public comment, that's fine as well. I'm seeing Councilmember for Ted Nott, so. Madam Moderator, I am going to open this up to public comment from the public if you can, same timeframe for those who are in the audience who want to speak on the downtown redevelopment. This is the time to do it.
Sure. So as the council president stated, this is the time to raise your hand using the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. And if you are one of our call-in patrons, it is star nine. You do not have to wait for anyone to finish speaking. Once you raise your hand, you are put in a queue. And we suggest raising your hand sooner than later, so we know how many are in the queue. And first up, we have Mr. Dubovy. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, give me your name and address for the record.
Great, Todd Dubovy, Burnett Terrace. I thank you for allowing the opportunity to talk. I appreciate the mayor's presentation, especially producing the map that showed the layout of the different parcels and where things are. That helped greatly in terms of understanding perspective. I had a lot more other types of more specific things to say, but I'm rolling back to a much, much more general perspective here. And, and it is that, that what I don't hear in this is a plan. I don't hear about a plan that's transparent and that's a process that is to be followed to make this, to execute your vision for what you want to see happen here. You know, I've talked at length before about what I've done in a 35-year real estate career and how I've approached it on behalf of my clients. And, you know, to start with, you're talking about recommending we purchase a property, a bunch of properties for 13, 12 and a half million dollars. It's pretty obvious, looking at the layout, that there will be more properties needed to be purchased. So we're not ending at 12 and a half million. That's just the beginning. You're talking about losing $600,000 or $500,000 a year in time, or $300,000, $370,000 in tax money that those properties throw off a year. And the whole approach is, is lacking any real process. How you're planning to go out to the market, you know, and identify the experts. I mean, you're, you're telling us that 12 and a half million dollars is a fair deal, but we have no, no appraisals to back that up. You have draft appraisals that were probably used for the assessed values of the properties. That's not the market value. And if you do have appraisals, well then, let's see them. I'd love to see them. I know what I'm looking at if I, if I were to look at it. And there's lots of different ways of appraising these assets. You appraise them as, as, as a a group, or you appraise them separately. And, you know, there's different values based on how you approach it. But I, you know, if, if we're supposed to go based on prior experience of, of what this town has done with previous purchases, let's talk about, you know, Rock Spring. I know we're not doing anything on it, but you know, there, the process has been lacking as well. You know, to suggest that, you know, well, there, there's no process there either. So here, it's two years, two and a half years later, and we're still holding title to the golf course without any understanding of where the developable properties are supposed to be located, so we can raise half of the the, the purchase price and pay down that debt. And all of that's holding up the Green Acres funding. So execution on that hasn't been great. How, how are we gonna expect you to execute on a much more difficult concept? Where you've got separate parcels spread around an area of the downtown, and it's a much more complicated transaction, frankly. And Rock Spring is easy, and we're still not getting it done. But downtown, the redevelopment zone, that's complicated. And none of us present, me included, despite a 35-year real estate career, is capable of saying what should go there. Where are the experts that you're supposedly hiring and talking to in an open and transparent way? You know, to advise us where, what, what's feasible here, numerous scenarios. And so that we have something to chew on, something to think about at a high level. And then that's when the dialogue with, with town, with the taxpayers should be, actually, I was extremely pleased when I heard President Matu Brown talk about fiduciary responsibility. The first time I've heard that word being used by anybody on the council or, you know, or in the town. It, that's exactly the issue here. And I, I think that summarizes pretty much my thoughts. I'd like to see a plan.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Kevin Malanga. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Lauren. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road, Council President, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Trank, good evening. Let's take a moment to think about why this resolution is being considered. Before Prism was chosen as the main street redeveloped, at a public hearing in the council chambers, the principal prison, Eugene Diaz bragged that Prism had $675 million of funding available to it. Members of the public were skeptical and asked to see Prism's financial statements. But the administration ignored those requests. And no sooner was Prism selected as redeveloped, that Prism sought more than $50 million in redevelopment area bonds. Again, the public asked to see Prism's financials. Again, the administration failed to demand them. Many years passed and Prism failed to pay its property taxes. It failed to pay its lenders and consequently lost properties to foreclosure. It failed to build the project. And the delay was in no sense attributed to the litigation that the mayor mentioned. That litigation was about a bond issuance. Had nothing to do with the project itself. After many years, Prism found a financial angel. Phase 1, the battery building was completed and rented and is a success and congratulations. But while Phase 1 construction has been completed for three years, Phase 2 was never even started by Prism. Although Prism continued to work on other projects and other municipalities. As the mayor said, the conclusion is that Prism lost interest in Phase 2 years ago. And that the council and the administration is a little bit late to the party in seeking to resolve this matter in, in a different way. That same lack of transparency that was evident in the first phase of this project is evident in the second phase settlement. A list of properties is annexed to the resolution, but no explanation has been provided as to the methodology for coming to the settlement amount. No value has been attributed to any of the properties. And strangely, the township properties are on that, that list too. And I urge the council to take no action on this resolution. So the public has been engaged in this decision. And looking to the future, I also urge the council to not seek a redeveloped, despite the allure of a celebrity being involved, unless the financial wherewithal that redeveloped is carefully scrutinized by independent professionals. And could someone please explain to me the, the timeline here? Because it seems that the administration has been seeking this $13 million in bonds from sometime in July, if I'm not mistaken. And the settlement just took place last week. And magically, the numbers dovetail. So I'd like to get an explanation for that. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And, pardon, next we have I apologize, it's under DT. Again, I did not write down the name. So DT, if you can follow the prompt on the screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Darren Tobia. I live on Columbia Street. My first question is buying the property back from Prism seems like an easy out for Prism. And I'm wondering why the township is interested in buying the property back when it seems like it should have been Prism's obligation to do so because it had exclusive rights to the redevelopment zone. My second question is, what are the plans for the properties on Columbia Street that are within, that are circled in green? As well as the one home on Babcock? I know that the, 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 the green area on Ashland Avenue, I think those are empty lots. So I, I, I understand the development that, that might take place there, but the three houses on Columbia Street and the one on Babcock, Babcock, those are already, there are already homes there. I believe there might even be two family homes. And I just wanted to remind the council that, you know, the greenest structure is one that's already standing. Thank you so much. Bye.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Joe Krokowiac. If you can follow the prompt coming up on your screen now, give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Joe Krokowiac, Grandview Avenue. Thanks for this opportunity. I just want to remind the council members that I emailed some questions about this project that I'd like to be answered. I'm not gonna go over them again now, but I, I did want those questions to be asked and hopefully answered. The bond ordinance is on for second and final reading tonight. I urge council members to vote no. As this is not in the best interest of our community. It is financially expensive and unwise, exposes the township and its taxpayers to substantial risk of loss, and is not even allowed under the downtown redevelopment plan. The original downtown redevelopment plan from March 2003, Section 8, titled Acquisition Plan, page 18, says, quote, "At this time, it is anticipated that any property to be acquired within the redevelopment area will be purchased and assembled by private development interests. However, if acquisition in this manner proves to be unsuccessful, municipal acquisition by eminent domain will be pursued in order to create properly planned, developable parcels of land. The redevelopment plan that is by law to determine what is and is not allowed within the redevelopment area does not allow for the town to purchase any land unilaterally. Instead, it leaves it up to the redeveloped. And if this process is unsuccessful, we then move to eminent domain. The plans for amendments do not change this directive. It seems to me that the mayor's plan to purchase property in the downtown redevelopment area is not allowed by the redevelopment plan. In addition, the mayor's plan to purchase these parcels is unwise on financial grounds. We would have to incur the expense of borrowing funds for these purchases, including underwriting costs and interest. We would incur the expense of maintaining the properties. We would lose the property tax revenue these properties would otherwise generate. Using the Schedule A list of properties to be acquired by the bond ordinance and publicly available tax assessment records shows the assessed value, which is supposed to reflect market value of Prism's properties proposed for purchase at slightly less than $8 million. That, of course, begs the question of why we would pay 12 and a half million dollars for them. Presidents have asked for weeks about the appraisals that were supposed to be done in support of the purchase price. Alas, we have no transparency on this issue. Based on third quarter property tax payments, these properties generate nearly $357,000 in annual tax revenue. And it's other taxpayers that are gonna have to make up that revenue. We don't know how long we will have to hold on to these parcels until we can sell. You can see that over eight, the last 18 years, we haven't even gotten to Phase 2 of the project. We run the risk of the supply and demand nature of real estate may reduce the market value and the property value of the property and cause us a loss that most likely will be made up by taxpayers. And don't expect the successor redeveloped to pay over market value for these properties. There is no legal requirement that exists forcing us to buy these properties. Here's, the mayor has agreed to pay Prism 12 and a half million dollars by buying these properties as part of settlement. I see no reason to pay Prism a penny. As the township points out repeatedly in its lawsuit filings, Prism has incurred events of default again and again, over and over, as it has done for years, if not for a decade or more. And I would hope we are fully capable of proving that in court. If anything, we should offer to settle the litigation by not pursuing our well-supported defenses and counterclaims and call it a draw. Let Prism keep their property. Under the state redevelopment law, they can't develop it. They can only continue to pay taxes and the interest costs and maintenance, but they can sell the property to the successor redeveloped. Let's see how long they want to lose money like this and waste their capital. My bet is, it won't be long. Let's see how long they want to lose money like this and waste their capital. My bet is it won't be long. We simply cannot afford to add to our out exploding debt for anything less than vital unavoidable expenditures. I don't know what our issued and authorized debt will be if these two bond ordinances are approved tonight. I've asked for transparency on the supplemental debt statements specifying total debt that the township is required to file with the state each time it wants to borrow. But you've provided no transparency. If any council member has seen that supplemental debt statements for tonight's borrowings, please provide the outstanding debt total if these two borrowings are approved. My calculations show that we've borrowed nearly $55 million raising in less than three years. Raising our outstanding debt by nearly 70% of $135 million. The proposal is wrong. The mayor says this is part of his control of the site. You already have control of the site completely through the redevelopment law. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, next, it's just listed as Jonathan. So Jonathan, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, that's me. It's Jonathan Redwine and I live at 10 Cobain Terrace.
Thanks.
I'm hearing a lot of concerns from both, you know, in both the, the questions that are being expressed by the, some of the council members. I'm hearing the mayor address some concerns in his presentation and I'm hearing some concerns from the public and I'm, and I'm, I'm understanding some of these concerns to conflate what I think the issue that we were talking about tonight is. I think that we're in a position where we have Prism who has utterly failed in their, in honoring their commitments under phase two. I think that we have a decision as to how to address that failure. And we can do it several ways. We can pursue litigation with unknown costs and uncapped attorney's fees to borrow a question that I heard posed earlier about a representation for one of our neighbors who's volunteered his time in, uh, to work alongside the township and is now caught up in the current litigation. I think that that is a huge risk. I think that those costs not, not just for his representation, but in a litigation with Prism would run beyond $12 million very quickly. And I, and I have that opinion as a result of my work, having worked for a large law firm in New York City, routinely working on litigations that were billing in excess of a million and a half dollars a month. So I think that those concerns are real whenever people are talking about settling litigation and they put out, uh, figures in a $12 million range. I think that that is a reasonable settlement for something where questions have been raised by both plaintiff and by the township. I agree that we have excellent defenses. I believe that we could win in litigation just based on my knowledge of the project and Prism's utter failure. However, I think that it is a prudent decision to, uh, come to a full settlement of all the issues involved and to move forward with, um, the potential of these sites. You know, possibly in the way the mayor described, possibly in some other way. I understand the concern that I'm hearing from some of my neighbors about a plan and the desire to want to plan. I think that's a natural desire, particularly given the experience of, of this decade plus with Prism. I think they've done a horrendous job and agree that they deserve not one cent. However, my, you know, the realist in me understands that we need to close this chapter and move on. I think that, I therefore think that concerns with the $12 million figure are completely misplaced. I think that they are ignoring the real risks of much, much higher costs and more dramatic costs that would result from a protracted litigation. I think that Prism in their dealings with the town have probably shown themselves to be unreliable, to not be trustworthy. I hear stories of their demands, you know, in the, in the sort of gossip mail around town. And I think that they are an unreasonable, unreliable actor and we would be wise to close this chapter as soon as we can. I expect that the township has procured a reliable legal opinion that, um, the correct course of action or that the current course of action, in other words, you know, settlement of this matter and purchase characterization of the transaction as a purchase of the property is correct, is the correct course of action and is proper under the law. I expect that we have received legal counsel on that, on that, on that topic. If we have not, then I would urge the council to, to obtain that legal opinion before, but going forward. But I expect that that has been examined. We're looking at a pretty narrow issue here, in my opinion. We're looking at whether to close the chapter on Prism. We're not, we're not, this vote is not about what the grand plan is for the site. I agree that the, the public needs to be engaged. But I also know that we elect our, our local officials to represent us and we rely on them to represent us. If we don't act the way they're representing us, we should run against them or that's a, that's an elections issue. That's not necessarily a project by project issue. Um, I think that we often get too mired in the muck as, uh, as, as we don't trust the officials that we elect. I think that if, um, I think that if we have them, we have elected them, we have to work with them productively. And if we disagree with the way that they're running things, then we can run against them in the next election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And next we have Michaela Bennett. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, it's Michaela Bennett. I live on Old Indian Road. So council, I think that, uh, we should all vote in favor of this. Every last one of you should vote in favor of this. Just disregard your obligations under the Faulkner Act. Disregard your obligations to the taxpayers of this town. And vote in favor of yet again another bait and switch. I'll remind you that this property was included way back when Mayor Parisi was President Parisi of the council. Way back when Mr. Trank was gunning to buy that property on Mount Pleasant. Way back then, Larry Panteer, currently of B and E, but then of Millennium Homes, thought this would be very attractive, that downtown revitalization plan. Only it was connected to Oregon on somehow, and I still can't figure that out. So all of this, and then what did Mayor Parisi say tonight? President Matu Brown heard him. She heard him loud and clear. Him. They already know. They already know who's going to develop this property. They already know they need the deed restrictions lifted. Because in order for it to become rental property, the deed restrictions for, for purchased property, right, for sale need to be lifted. Forget about all those single family homes that were in that brilliant plan in the beginning. I think it's a great idea to have Whoopi Goldberg in her studios downtown. I do. I think it's a great idea. But how you go about things? Who you align with? Our council president is now attending settlement conferences with the administration and involving herself that way. Vote in favor of it. Disregard your obligations to all of us. We're all watching. We all see what's happening. It's all spelled out many, many moons ago. All you need to do is read the Stein report and see exactly what the Stein report says about the properties you're talking about now. And you'll see this was all by design.
Ms. Bennett, are you still there?
Who owns phase one? Who owns phase one? Who profit? Prism or doomed? Because Prism couldn't come up with that one. And who's going to profit off of what you're planning to accomplish and how you're going about it? You're either a township council as the Faulkner Act expects you to be. Or you're just complicit with a runaway administration who is desperate to maintain the plans of these rich developers who pad their pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Joyce Rudin. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Joyce Rudin, Woodland Avenue in West Orange. Good evening, council. I just have a, a quick question for you. I would really like an answer from each of you in the response whether you would purchase a property without an appraisal. And if you would purchase a very large property and a very potentially expensive property without maybe two appraisals. If Prism has lost interest in this project and wants to sell it, why not just sell it? Why is West Orange playing an interloper? If studios are banging down our doors, let the buyers in. Let them have a bidding war. Isn't that what's going on all over West Orange? There's no rush to close this chapter. The Prism is suing West Orange because West Orange wants to breach the contract. And the mayor is trying to tie this up in a neat package by saying, we'll only own this property for a very short while. And then our goal is really just to turn this around and sell it. Really? Is that what's going to happen? Why is it necessary that West Orange get involved at all? And during that time that we're involved, we'll be losing the tax base. Why do we need to own this property at all? I ask you each to put on the brakes and do your fiduciary duty. This is not a project that should be approved tonight. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Claire Silvestri. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. There've been a lot of speakers who have, have spoken before me or very articulate and have covered most of the important points. So I just want to, you know, echo what most of them have said to Mr. Dubovy saying that there is no plan. It's, it's distressing to hear the mayor asking up, asking the council to approve a $13 million bond ordinance without, and then readily admitting there really is no plan. The idea that, um, we came to this $13 million, $12.5 million without any appraisals. Uh, and this whole idea of why we have to buy the property in the first place. All we have to do, you default the developer and then as, um, Mr. Krokowiac said, let the, um, let Prism sell it to the next redeveloper. Um, I just wanted to point out one thing that hasn't been brought up. Going back in my, um, research about Prism, I did review the lawsuit and the town's response. And, you know, clearly Prism was in default numerous times as, as Mr. Malangas said there. If you go back and you look at all of, um, the information in the lawsuit and the response and the legal documents, Prism did not appear to at many times have the wherewithal financially to, um, bring to fruition phase two. And in fact, the mayor said something in his, his presentation that I, I think was a little bit, it didn't provide all of the information about Prism's ownership of the Barton Press property. I was watching a video from, uh, January 2013 council meeting when our legal counsel and financial counsel was advising the town council about the fact that Prism had, it was, it was the resolution of Prism's foreclosure on the Barton Press property initially. I know that they paid a high price for it, uh, back in the early 2000s, but in 2011, not only were they not paying the town their property taxes, they were not paying their mortgage to Wells Fargo. They went into foreclosure and when, uh, the, um, Wells Fargo put it up for auction, Prism bought it for a song. I'm not quite sure how much money they, they purchased it back for, but it was, I think a fraction of what they had originally paid. So Prism, uh, has, has not invested as much money as they, um, make themselves out to be. And so it appears to me, as a number of the other residents have said tonight, that the reason why the bond need to be issued now, even though we don't have a plan is so that, uh, we can settle the lawsuit with Prism. And I would disagree with Mr. Redwine in that, you know, the cost, uh, it looks pretty clear that, that the township could win, uh, a settle, uh, could win a lawsuit with Prism. And it's not going to cost us in legal fees $12.5 million. So I would strongly recommend that the council vote this, uh, the bond ordinance down, um, this evening and, um, and please do your due diligence and I agree that we should develop this property and, and I don't have a problem with a film studio. I don't have a problem with a developer, a redeveloper who has the wherewithal to develop this property. But this seems rushed and, and, um, without, uh, the gravitas that the amount of money that we are, we, the taxpayers are being asked to put up here deserves. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Now at this time, uh, this will be the final call for anyone who would like to make public comment on this subject matter using the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Okay, I do not see anymore. And I'm also going to be bringing over, uh, Mr. Beckelman over as a panelist. And there are no other hands raised on this matter.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. This closes the public comment section of, um, our bond ordinance hearing. And when Mr. Beckelman is on, I would like him to address some of the questions with respect to allegations made by some of the commenters on, uh, our legal inability to purchase these properties, among other things that he was able to take note of. Mr. Beckelman, are you here?
Evening.
Good evening. Uh, Mr. Trank, would you introduce Mr. Beckelman? Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, Mr. Beckelman has, uh, been involved with redevelopment for probably well over 25 years. He is very familiar, uh, with the West Orange site, the downtown redevelopment site. He is a partner with the Lance Goldman, uh, firm. And, uh, it's certainly, uh, certainly over the last, uh, four or five months. Uh, been reviewing all the agreements, uh, and, uh, guiding us with regard to, uh, the appropriate steps to take to advise the council and to try to move forward and to position it, uh, where we are today. So I'll yield to, uh, I think you have a specific question, council president, that we'd like you, Mr. Beckelman, to address along with any other feedback you might have in the public comment. But I think, uh, specifically one member of the public tried, uh, tried to make a statement that, uh, under the 2003, 2004 agreements, that we're not able to consensually acquire property in the zone. Uh, and that that was somehow forbidden and therefore there was some claim being made that this council may not be acting consistent with, uh, the redevelopment plan or the law. So I'll, I'll yield to you to respond to that.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Um, yeah, the, the, clearly the redevelopment agreement with Prism would not have contemplated condemning their properties. So perhaps that's something the person may have been thinking of. Uh, but they did reference to redevelopment. But they did reference the redevelopment plan. The original redevelopment plan as adopted was very specific, that very general broad power of eminent domain that was reserved by the township to acquire any type of interest, including a deed restriction or any of the properties and fee title or whatever interests may have been necessary. There were amendments to the plan that do talk about what was contemplated and the language of the plan actually says it is anticipated that these properties will be acquired privately. However, the township reserves the right to pursue condemnation if they cannot be acquired properly or otherwise. So that right was never waived in a redevelopment plan and the redevelopment plan and the statutes generally, the redevelopment statutes do authorize the acquisition of properties. Let me add to that, actually. In addition to that, in addition to condemnation, they're not being condemned. So it's also authorized under statute to flat out purchase the properties by agreement. And adding to that, that the other factor that's being considered here is there is the value being attributed to some extent to settling litigation, which is another way that it is authorized to acquire these properties through the settlement of litigation in connection with the exercise of the redevelopment powers.
I do want to just respond to a couple of points that were made that, again, while the public obviously has the right to their own opinions, they don't have rights, they're all, you know, facts that are not correct. So first and foremost, as the mayor suggested, the fact that the council president gave up a day, the fact that the council president was intricately involved in interacting with all the parties in the court is her fiduciary responsibility and that is something that is appreciated, just like Councilman Rutherford was instrumental in helping us get the Crestmont deal over over the goal line after a lot of effort by a lot of people. This is a team effort and there is maximum transparency that has occurred with all the twists and turns. So again, the concept that ever a member of council is involved in these aspects, especially in this case, the council president is just far beyond the pale of an accurate statement or certainly suggesting anything other than this the council president and every member of the council makes their own independent choices. The council president did not find herself or any member of this council as to how to vote and it was very clear that all we could do was act in good faith and bring it back for a presentation as is occurring tonight by the mayor. So that is not a fair aspersion ever. Secondly, again, the concept, and that's why, you know, we want to be careful. Yes, does the township believe that it acted in good faith in declaring a default? And in terminating the existing redevelopment rights? That Prism had for a number of years that occurred on May 25th and effective June 25th? It is the township's firm position and our legal position that Prism's rights were terminated. Prism, as was stated, less than a month later filed a lawsuit. And that lawsuit, again, I'm not going to characterize how much it would have cost, obviously as the mayor said, the presiding judge, after presiding over this case since it was filed and having that lengthy settlement conference said, clearly at least a million dollars in legal fees would have been spent on both sides to try to come to a resolution. And most importantly, the timeframe, we would have been in litigation conservatively. Post-COVID, this case is not getting tried. This is a right to a jury trial. This case would have gone on for three to five years minimum. And so during that entire period of time, all of the other aspects of this are a jump wall. And Prism had competent counsel involved, a large New York firm as well as a well-respected New Jersey firm. You had two firms involved and so, and there would have been countless amount of paper discovery, depositions and whatnot, and we would have ended up right where we are today with the fact that they own those parcels, they have fee simple title of these parcels and that as part of any future pathway forward, acquiring those properties is critical. So to just say that we'll let the market conditions figure it out while all the lawyers just ring up the bills? That certainly is something this council has every right to think about and to consider as part of making a decision whether or not to settle litigation. So I think those points are important. And again, when you look at it from the point of view, as the mayor said, they spent $12.5 million to acquire these properties. They spent millions more beyond that in legal fees. One member of the public referred to that litigation that went all the way to the Supreme Court. The litigation that was commenced by that person, that cost a million dollars in legal fees, that claim on that bond issue, and yes, that did tie up this property. So nobody developed, even put the deck on your property if there's pending litigation. So the concept that that litigation that was bankrolled for the town by Prism under the escrow agreements did not have an impact timeline. And again, the one thing, and there's a lot of real estate experts, especially Councilwoman Williams on this, you know, real estate deals with, has ups and downs. And so when you miss the cycle and you miss the opportunity and when we're talking about getting potentially getting into the movie studio business, there's not going to be a movie studio in every town and every town is going to vie for it. So we have a unique opportunity with a unique site with historical precedent. And if we're going to have any chance to try to move forward, it would not be, we know for sure, because the mayor and the council president and every one of us was told, nobody's going forward with that process with the litigation pending. Not even going to take our phone calls anymore because their concept is we drove through your town, we looked at a site, we were asked to do it by a well-respected person. And now we come to town for one day and we are now ensconced in $50 million in litigation? Thank you. Goodbye. We'll wait for every other town to vet us. And that's the reality. So again, certainly there's nothing about acquiring property, investing in these properties that is counter to any other aspect. And certainly, there's nothing about the proposed transaction tonight that changes the reality of where we're at and where we've come from and most importantly, where we want to go and in the timeframe. You know, the mayor says, we've been doing this for 15 years and we got a beautiful Phase One and now we want to do Phase Two, just to let it all die in the vine and hope one day the reason redevelopment laws exist, as Mr. Beckelman will tell you, is to allow government, as has been said before, to have a primary seat at the table. And that's why the redevelopment plan, which is also on tonight, will expand the uses and allow us as part of getting to this litigation to have that expanded use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. I'm going to, I just want to address a couple of the points that were made here and I appreciate your clarification as to my role. As I'm listening to the comments that were made with respect to how council president is all of a sudden engaged in negotiations. And then I hear that there is, I think the comment was made by former councilman Krikorbiak that the the approach that the council has as some sort, and this is not quoting you, but some sort of lackadaisical acceptance of what the administration wants has to change. And perhaps it has changed now that you're not on the council, Mr. Krikorbiak, because we are doing things a little differently and that could be because there are different voices on the council. It's a lot of different things that have changed. And yes, I think that having Councilman Rutherford sit as a part of the negotiation team for Crestmont was valuable to all of my council colleagues and myself because that does bring back a voice of representation for us, those you elected to represent you. Same is my position with respect to Prism. We've all talked about the need to have something, a different vision. Everyone complains that downtown is non-existent. We all leave our town to patronize other communities. I've always said, if we want something different, we have really difficult decisions to make. If we want what we're all asking for, you're asking for something that, and we are asking for something that's transformational. That's not going to happen sitting around waiting for Prism or another developer to decide that that's what they're going to do. We want to control our own destiny and this is the first step in that direction as far as I'm concerned. I am very excited that the administration is taking this position. I'm excited to have been part of those conversations. I'm excited for what next steps will bring. And I, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know, are we able to have any sort of plan if we don't have control of the actual premises? How do we create a plan? If we are not in control of those premises and saying that we have control because it's in the redevelopment agreement is not allowing us the full control that we need to create and actually put in effect a plan. And the plan that we have that's on the agenda for this evening as well with respect to updating, amending the redevelopment plan, the overlay zone, is also another step in that right direction. And as the mayor said previously, there is a lot of interest in municipalities because of the film industry. And should that not be the direction that we head into? We still have the opportunity to reimagine what downtown is. And we can't do that if we are not in control of them. I think Mr. Krikorbiak quoted that, and this is something that I asked Mr. Gross to provide for us as well, that if we take control of these properties, if we acquire these properties, there is some revenue that's lost. $357,000 is what Mr. Krikorbiak said. I'm going to go back to when we were faced with making the decision to buy Rock Spring because at that time, we stood to lose indefinitely $600,000. And then Councilman Krikorbiak insisted and urged that I vote no. And lose $600,000 indefinitely. But here he is today asking us to vote no and throw away the opportunity that we have to reimagine downtown on what he quoted to be $357,000 in lost tax revenue. Which, by the way, is not indefinite, but he was okay losing $600,000 for Rock Spring, for which he wrote it no, which is doing quite well and successful. Also to the comment of, you're rushing, it's going too fast, slow down. This is happening very quickly. Again, we did not anticipate that we would have a settlement conference so quickly. Very grateful that we did, very grateful to all the parties that committed almost eight hours without lunch and had a lot of in-depth discussions to get to the point where we were. And to Mr. Malanga, you made a comment with respect to the fact that we are a little late to the party. I don't care how late we are, but we're here. And it gives us the opportunity to do what Mr. Krikorbiak has tried to do and failed as he was a sitting councilman to make sure that we defaulted them. They are now defaulted and we are moving forward. And the fact that you also mentioned the magical numbers that dovetailed, the numbers that we initially discussed were discussed as part of negotiations prior to the litigation being filed. And the fact that the numbers are the same is not magical. It's the fact that we spent eight hours in a courtroom with a judge working very hard to make sure that there was nothing else that came from us. There's nothing magical about it. It was hard work. It was a commitment to make sure that we bought this opportunity home. And we did. So let's just be very clear and, you know, there is no allure of a celebrity. The allure is the opportunity to reimagine downtown and to actually create that for ourselves. Yes. Is it? Is it come with some unknowns? Absolutely. But if we're in control of that property, I am very comfortable with that unknown because we get to decide what that unknown is. And I think that the council, as it is currently constituted, has the ability, has the gumption and the courage to go ahead and reimagine it for all of us. And, you know, I certainly understand getting my back kicked in. That's what I ran for. It does not dissuade me. You know, I'm here to represent you. And Ms. Rudin, you asked if we would purchase anything without an appraisal. I'm not sure if you were on when the mayor made his presentation, but he specified that there were draft forms of the appraisals. So I don't know where that question came from. And the fact that there were 8.5 or about $8 million that was appraised and this is a 12.5 settlement. We, the plaintiff started at 30 million. We're at, we started somewhere down here. As negotiations go, we met somewhere in the middle and not everyone is happy because that's just the way negotiations work. That's the way settlements work. I imagine, Mr. Malanga, you're very familiar with that. Mr. Tobin, Darren Tobin did ask if, what were the plans for the properties on Babcock? Again, Mr. Darren, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name, but there is no plan that's concrete yet. And obviously I'll allow my colleagues and the mayor to also respond, but, you know, I'm not going to respond to the other comments that were made. That's it for me. So I see Councilwoman Castellino's hand is up. And I saw everybody else's up come too.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you and the administration for spending all your time down in court when I know it probably was a vacation day that, or time yet to take away from your full-time job. I'm glad you addressed my, I wanted to make mention of the appraisals, number one. Number two, you know, we sit here, I'm very cautious of how I comment this evening because there has been litigation. So I'm not going to be too long in my comments. But, you know, for some of the folks, you advocate, you know, for Ridge Road for the past so many years I've been on the council. And we had a proposal that everyone wanted us to vote for. That was a couple million dollars to, you know, to invest money in a historic carriage house, a road. There was a wall we were inheriting and whatnot and property and it was a big loss of tax revenue as well. So, you know, we weigh each situation, each project with benefit. And this is a great potential benefit for our downtown. This is a game changer. So, you know, these opportunities come along, maybe COVID brought this opportunity that people don't want to be in the city. Maybe the film industry is shifting gears to, a lot of people adapt. And maybe this is an opportunity we could capitalize on. But we do our due diligence. We may not say a lot tonight, but we do ask questions and get our due diligence done. I'm sure as soon as, and there's thankful negotiations. I said this before, there's, you know, Councilman Rutherford, he had sat in on negotiations for Castmont. You know, that's confidential information that can't be shared with the public and when it can be shared, it will. My former colleague that was on this evening, he sat in on Wes Essex Highlands. And he had he had a confidential information that he couldn't share with the public at the time. So it gets a little disheartening, you know, when I hear certain comments from my prior former colleague, knowing full well that we could only share so much information, but we will share information when we can. But tonight it is a little harder than the two Todd's comments earlier. Rock Spring was a lot easier to move forward with because there was a concrete plan right there. Rock Spring was a lot easier to move forward with because there was a concrete plan right there. Although if that has shifted, and you're right, we're still not there with that plan. But we have to take the information as we have it. We have to have a vision. And we have to move forward with the best way we can. And hopefully in a couple of months from now, we'll be having better conversations with the public. And you'll be a little bit more understanding. But just wanted to remind folks how certain projects, like I said, Ridge Road, everyone has their own projects that they, they find favor to. And you know, there was costs associated with those as well that people were advocating for. So I'll turn the floor over to my colleagues. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney.
You know, we started speaking before, I thanked the mayor for his hope and optimism. But if you, Council President, sitting in a courtroom for eight hours during these negotiations sparks that kind of enthusiasm, I appreciate all of the remarks that you just said. And then Councilwoman Castellino also talking about, I forgot about West Essex Highlands. We sat through that for three and a half years, so.
Oh, you too, Councilwoman.
That was a, right. Darren Tobia did mention Columbia Street. I just wanted to say that in our redevelopment plan, Columbia Street is mentioned two times, but it's not Columbia Street. It is, it says east of Ashland. Where am I reading? North, I'm sorry, north of Lakeside, west of Watchung, south of Columbia Street. And another time it mentions minimum setbacks from public streets 10 feet from Columbia Street and Watching Avenue. Just wanted to clarify for him because I know that that's, that's where he lives. Wanted to thank Mr. Trank and Mr. Beckman also for the work that you've done on this redevelopment plan and negotiations. No comment. Ready to move forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Trank and all those that have participated in the discussion tonight. I, I think it's important for us to take a step back. I think most, if not all of us, want the same thing. We want a thriving downtown. We want it safe. We want it walkable. We want an economic driver that's going to attract people from other towns to come and spend some time and money in our town. We want our businesses to do well. Most of us agree that we need more commercial ratables in town. This is the largest property that, you know, isn't full of trees in town. So this is like, this is the best space for commercial ratables. We certainly want to be included in the vision and I mean, residents want to be included in the vision. And we're trying to do that. The criticism that, you know, the trend, the word transparency keeps coming up. Or I, I think that's an unfair criticism, particularly in this case. So Council President participated in the mediation. I'm grateful that she did. And I'm grateful that, at least as far as I'm concerned, it came out in, in a fair manner. I've also participated in some of those conversations. And other council people have had their influence on what they want to see. And what I really want to impress upon us tonight is when we made these requests or shared our ideas with the administration, they've listened. One of the criticisms we had tonight was that there's some execution risk. We weren't able to execute on Rock Spring. I think the reason, the greatest reason why we've not done something with Rock Spring is because residents have said that they didn't want housing there. So we're listening. We should not be criticized for listening. If, if residents say they, they want their voices heard and then we listen and that slows the process down. Should we be criticized for that? I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair criticism. And it's certainly not fair with regard to downtown. When this, when the dust settles with this project, and I'm trying to be careful too. And I'm being careful because we can actually blow this. Like we have to get out of our own way. I, I don't want to offend anybody. I'm not trying to anger anyone. But it is possible to blow this. And the way that gets done is by a lot of the infighting and the mudslinging and the uncertainty around our ability to execute. So I, I'm not trying to, to, to anger anyone and I certainly don't want to be accused of being less than transparent. But there, there is an approach to doing business that I think has to be respected. Mr. Redwine made a comment earlier about how we look at these kinds of things and it shouldn't be done on a project by project basis. We hold our elected officials accountable in elections. We also have personal conversations, phone calls, emails and all of that stuff as well. You have to have some trust in those that are seated at the table advocating for what's best for West Orange. And, and I, and I, you know, I don't know how we got to this place where there is so much distrust verbalized in these meetings. But I know that right now, based on my interactions with regard to every single project that I've been involved with so far, some of which you guys know about, some of which you don't. Every single one of those, I, I believe I have been dealt with fairly. And I'm advocating for West Orange and West Orange residents. I'm not advocating for Bill Rutherford. I'm not advocating for anyone in particular. I'm trying to help make sure that West Orange realizes her greatest potential. So we need that space. We are trying to provide the information that, that we can. We certainly have a, a tight rope to walk because as Council President has said, yes, there is a proposed settlement, but it is not done. No, we have not solidified a plan. But the approach that the mayor and administration are taking with regard to this project in particular gives us the greatest flexibility. So even if Plan A doesn't work, we have the ability to then execute on Plan B or C. And I applaud that. I think that's how you've got to approach business. Someone said earlier, there was a comment made by one of my colleagues, I don't remember which one, I apologize, about the movie studio or perhaps looking to do something in another town. That's, that's, that's quite possible. It, it could happen. We don't want it to happen, but God forbid if it did, we now have the flexibility to execute on a vision that is consistent with what, with what we need here. Safe, walkable, thriving business district, creating a downtown area heavily dependent upon commercial ratables, meeting our affordable housing mandate or requirements in a way that makes sense for a suburb 15 miles away from New York City nestled in these hills. We still have that opportunity. What we need is some, some trust, some goodwill, some faith from the public to move forward in a way that makes sense for all of us. And, and what I'm trying to help convey to, to, to each of you that are still on in there, 45 as far as I can tell, still here, thank you for sticking it out this late. What I want you to understand is that what, when I'm in these meetings and when I have these conversations, we are being responsive and receptive to the needs of the community, taking into consideration of the criticism and the compliments and trying to execute on a vision that's going to help West Orange realize the potential we have here. So without getting into any of the other details, which again, I'm being very cautious. I don't know what I can and cannot say, and I don't want to say something inappropriately. I think the approach we're taking is measured. Even though some may think it's quick, I think it's considerate of what the needs of the community are as well as that particular corridor. And I think it will help prepare us for the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years. But we do need your help and the space to kind of do this kind of work. So, so that's what I wanted to do. Just zoom out for a second. Let's lower the temperature. We all want the same thing. We want a, we want a new look for our main street corridor. This, the, the redevelopment plan and the items that are on our agenda tonight dealing directly with that, I believe firmly puts us in a great position to execute on that. And that, that's really all I wanted to say. So thank you, Council President.
Councilman Rutherford, thank you very much for your, for your words, at, at your clear unifying words. And if I was passionate is because I, I gotta be honest, it really is upsetting to me to listen to, to residents become upset over conjecture, over things that are not factual. And, and I, I will take a personal privilege here to say over someone's political positioning. I, I think that's wrong and my passion comes from that space. Thank you for your words, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. So I just, obviously we all have the same interests. Obviously we have the same sentiment. I think you've heard that from each and every one of us and so I have the opportunity to share as well. And I just want to share and remind everyone that running for an elected position is a strong responsibility. It is an opportunity that we all appreciate, that we don't take for granted. And we understand that we represent the residents of this great community. When I ran for elected office, I ran for several reasons. Important to me was that our leadership reflected the diversity of our town. Also because I had lived here for many years and raised my children here and my family here, I understood that there was a tremendous opportunity for economic development in our town. I have been doing real estate for the past 20 years. And I understand economic development and we have a tremendous opportunity here in West Orange. I also ran because I wanted to protect our community. But again, more importantly, to improve our main street and our downtown development district. And then of course, we can continue talking about transparency, but that's what we all are here to represent. But we also have obligations to make sure we do things at the right time and in the right way. And so with those comments being said, I just want everyone to understand that we are here for the criticism just as much as we are here for the glory. The beauty in what we are discussing here tonight will not only be transformative for us as elected officials, for our community as residents, but even for our children's children. What we need to understand is sometimes the angels align, the stars align, and there are opportunities that just come out of nowhere. But you have to be able to seize the opportunity and take advantage of the moment. My colleague, Councilman Rutherford, ran talking about how we can redevelop and reimagine downtown. We didn't know how. We didn't know where, when, what. But right before our eyes, this is happening. This is real. This is concrete. It may not manifest exactly as we would like it to and as we're discussing this evening, but what we need to understand is that something is going to happen. And what we are trying to do for this community far exceeds somebody trying to line their pockets. It's not about our own glory. It's about us making sure our community moves forward in the best way it can. One thing COVID has shown each and every one of us listening here tonight and even in the future is that you have to do things differently. You have to see things differently. And so under the leadership of this administration that has been in office for many, many years, what we can see and look back on history is that there is a commitment, there is a passion, and there is a desire to make the community of West Orange the best community that it can be. So for all of those who want to criticize and complain and say we're not being transparent and we're not doing our due diligence, all we can say is when the dust settles and when we see the vision is checkmate. We are here for this. We are making the tough decisions. We are listening to your criticisms, your complaints and your accolades. But just be patient with us and know that we have the best interests of this community at heart and we always will. And when we can't do that, then I think as human beings, we know when it's time to walk away. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I, I just have one last clarification to make. Ms. Bennett, because you stated it here and I'm sure you will, you did not just state it here, but you misrepresented it here. Council President Matute Brown did not pick up on anything that the mayor said outside of my feminist position. When I hear anyone say him, her, they, them, I have been in those conversations. He or we do not know who the redeevelper will be. I just want to be very clear on that because what Council Matute Brown pointed out was just a simple note for our mayor to just make sure that he recognizes that a woman can also be a redeevelper. That's it. There's nothing more to it than that. Mayor, if you would like to address the public, please, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Council President. I don't know that there's anything more I, I need to say, nor do I think anything that I say will change any of the minds of the people who spoke. So let's, let's recognize it as a quarter 12 at night and let's, let's move on, Council President.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for your time and for all my council colleagues' comments, thoughts and expressions. And Mr. Trank, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can we call the votes?
Is there a motion to approve 2651-21 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Council President. What about the amendment? The amendment? We have to amend the ordinance. This is the.
The planning board's recommendation. I'd like to make an amendment.
This is not an ordinance.
Oh, wait.
The bond ordinance.
This is the bond ordinance. 2651 is the bond.
Oh, I'm sorry. Again. Getting tired, sorry.
That's okay.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. 2652-21, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange, Handicap Parking Spot at 14 Glenon Place. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Public hearing?
I'm so sorry. If there, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this ordinance on second and final reading? Please raise your hand.
There are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you.
Council, do they have any comments?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, just wanted to state for the record, last meeting, I questioned whether or not the sign had already been placed at this residence for handicap parking. And I want to thank Mr. Lepore as well as Chief Abbott for their quick responsiveness and informing me that that was for the neighbor next door who lived there as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Is there a motion to approve 2652-21 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. 2653-21, An Ordinance of the Township of West Orange Approving an Application for a Long-Term Tax Exemption and Authorizing the Execution of a Financial Agreement with Tompkins Street Apartment Urban Renewal LLC. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Are there any members of the public that would like to, um, make a comment on, uh, ordinance 2653? Please raise your hand.
Yes, we have William Sullivan. Um, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, William Sullivan. Squirtzy Holbeck on behalf of the applicant. Uh, and Mr. Opert is also available. Uh, I, we're here to answer any questions. As you know, this project has been discussed at some length, uh, at prior, um, meetings of the council, and we discussed it on first reading, but certainly we're here if you have any, uh, additional questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. Um, let's see if any members of the public have any questions. Please raise your hand.
And there are no other hands raised.
Do any of my council colleagues have questions on this, um, on this, uh, ordinance?
Nope. We discussed it on first reading.
Yes, we did. Very excited for the project. Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan.
Right, thank you all.
Sorry, it's a quarter 12.
Is there a motion to approve 2653-21 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
2654-21, An Ordinance Supplementing Chapter 4 and Establishing Chapter 4, Section 40 of the General Ordinances of Township of West Orange, um, entitled West Orange Township Civilian Complaint Review Board. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this ordinance 2654? Please raise your hand.
And there are no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you. I, I wanted to share something with my council colleagues. Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, I did have a, I just wanted to say that I do have a resume that I would like to submit to the council, um, a resident here in West Orange that would like to serve. I, I really didn't know what the procedure was. I was waiting for us to adopt this on second reading, uh, before I mentioned that, if we're going to share as a consensus or, um, separate appointments. Uh, I was just waiting to have that, that question answered.
It's consensus under the, uh, ordinance, uh.
Okay. Then I will share.
Right, I think it's three consensus, I believe, from the council.
Okay, then I'm going to share the resume.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To my council colleagues and to the chief of police, I'm, I'm not sure if you're still on. I just wanted to share with you a text message I received from, uh, Joe Nailiff, who was, um, from the West Orange Youth Caucus, uh, who organized the West Orange, one of the founders of the West Orange Youth Caucus, um, who is studying in Boston right now. I shared with him that this, uh, ordinance, um, was on our agenda, and he said, "Thank you so much for sharing. I miss West Orange so much right now, but I can't help but be grateful for my education here in Boston. Send my best to the council at the next meeting, please." So you have his regards. I'm very proud of our youth, um, and just wanted to share that with my council colleagues. Yes, very nice. Um, so any other comments from my council colleagues at this time? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2654-21 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes, and I want to, um, thank the chief also for his initiative in making sure that, um, he got this going and saw it through. Very, um, grateful for all of your efforts, chief.
2655-21, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 2, Section 15.3 of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange Department of Fire Composition. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Are there any members of the public who would like to, um, speak on this ordinance? Please raise your hands.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Uh, any of my council colleagues have any questions or discussion? No? Madam Clerk?
Um, is there a motion to approve 2655-21 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. 2656, An Ordinance Adopting, uh, Fourth Amendment Downtown Redevelopment Plan. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this ordinance?
Yes, we have. First, we have, uh, Claire Silvestri. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. For a third time tonight, Claire Silvestri, Grandview Avenue. Many residents have, uh, spoken very eloquently tonight about a very important issue that has long-term implications for all township residents. We have not spoken about politics, but it's unfortunate that several council members here brought that up. Council President Matute Brown, in, at the July meeting, the statements that were made by you and other council members could very easily be interpreted as promises for information workshops and, um, meeting with residents before moving forward on this important legislation. We had to wait until 10:00 PM this evening to hear from the mayor. And then we hear that he wants to spend $13 million to settle a lawsuit and says, "There's not a plan. There's not a plan yet." But then, on the agenda for this evening, there's an item to approve a new Phase 2 plan. What is the rush for this ordinance? Why cannot the council wait until there is more information? And at a time when more residents have an opportunity to ask questions and weigh in? If there are 45 residents still on this Zoom call close to midnight, that shows that there's very much interest in, in this project. And the council should, I will urge the council again to slow down. I, I would like to have some explanation from the administration on why it is so urgent to approve this plan tonight. And just finally, two comments made by, uh, Councilmember Rutherford a few minutes ago about that we should trust, um, our elected officials. I've been involved in this, following this project for more than 10 years. And just a review of the legal documents involving Prism's lawsuit against the town uh, raises issues, questions about whether this administration, without more transparency, can bring about a successful project. It's not about politics. It's about the future of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Joe Krokoviek. Uh, once again, you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. It's Joe Krokoviek, Grandview Avenue. I have, uh, five comments I want to make about the redevelopment, and essentially just asking questions or asking for answers to these situations that I see. The first one is that, uh, there's virtually no specificity on the studio facilities and campus that are supposed to be, uh, part of this project now. There's not a number of buildings. There's not a square footage. There's not, uh, any indication of what other purposes would be, where they would be placed. There's not even, uh, a dedicated, dedicated area, a dedicated zone in the redevelopment area. In fact, the word "studio" is actually only used once in the plan. Uh, I also want to point out that there, that the part of the zoning calls for 60 dwelling units per acre, which is an incredibly high, uh, density. And, uh, I just want to ask you to think about 60 unit, 60 dwelling units per acre, uh, given the, the traffic and parking, uh, situations we already have down in that area. Uh, there's hardly any focus on where people will park. Uh, not to mention, there are provisions for, to eliminate one or more streets, uh, provisions, meaning allowing, uh, to vacate one or more streets in the redevelopment area. There's no address of the potential conflict between the needs of what a studio tenant would need in terms of 24-hour activity and the need for quiet in the midst of what looks like high-density residential, uh, housing, uh, and small businesses. Or, in fact, this, uh, just to point this out, the home services, uh, zone requires one space for every 400 square feet of, of, of space, business space, retail space. In the uh, studio zone in the campus, it's one parking space for every 2,000 square feet. Uh, seems like a potential recipe for, uh, problems going forward. So I just ask that, uh, perhaps, uh, we, uh, the council spend a little bit more time, uh, on this. Um, I also just want to try to address, if I can, uh, some of the ugliness from tonight. And I just ask you to consider what I'm going to say, and to please consider this suggestion in the sincere spirit in which it is given. I try, and I, I think I'm pretty successful, I don't attack or insult anybody when I speak, uh, council meetings. I feel like I didn't do that when I was on the council, and I don't feel like I do that now. But I do often disagree with all of you, or some of you, as I did on the council. One of the potential problems I see is that frequently, when residents disagree with you and try to persuade you to change your perspective and provide input to our elected officials, you seem to take it as, uh, unwarranted criticism, and in your response, you frequently, I won't say insult us.
Mr. Krokoviek, I have to interrupt. Um, this is only to address the ordinance. I, I welcome your, your comments and your thoughts in an email, but if your comments are done with respect to the ordinance, I have to ask you to stop speaking. Um, if you'd like to finish your time, um, please direct your comments towards the ordinance only.
That's fine. You, you may, uh, may remember that earlier in the evening, I emailed each one of the council members with questions having to do with the redevelopment area. And I've also subsequently asked for one of you, at least one of you, to ask them. I would greatly appreciate being responsive to a constituent's request, because it, I, I can read them again if you'd like, but it seems a lot easier if just one of you looked in your email and reads the three or four questions that I asked, which was part of my point, uh, tonight. So I, I do take your directive, Council President, and, uh, again, ask, uh, for responsiveness, not only to those questions, but I also asked about the supplemental debt statements, uh, which have to do with the bond ordinance. I asked, I asked if any of the council people had read the supplemental debt statements, and if they did, and if they had them, if they could just tell the community how much debt is going to be issued and authorized in West Orange after, uh, what looks like you're going to approve the two bond, uh, ordinances tonight. Just, again, we're, we're asking for things that are public information, and we're not getting the information. I just want to point that out to you, that perhaps the frustration is on both ends. Uh, thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have anyone else in the public? There are no other hands raised.
Thank you, uh, very much. Uh, do my, um, council colleagues, I, I actually, I saw- Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, was, uh, Councilwoman, um, McCartney, I saw your hand up.
Oh, two things. One, I wanted to say to, um, Joe Krokoviek, that I had no idea that he meant that we were supposed to read his questions during a council meeting. I have never done that before, um, so I had no intention of doing that. Uh, we can respond to emails, but I did not expect to read that during the council meeting or answer those questions at that time. And I'm sorry if that miscommunication. The other part on this particular now is the time on this ordinance that, uh, in the letter of recommendation from Planning Board, the second paragraph says, "In addition to finding that the plan amendment is consistent with the most recent master plan documents, the board recommends that cannabis businesses be removed from the list of permitted uses within the Main Street sub-district, because the board has concerns about expanding the area where cannabis sales were permitted beyond the area." Because, uh, and I made this point during the Planning Board meeting, because when the cannabis ordinance was presented to us, it was in the business zone and the industrial zones. And I was uncomfortable adding an additional zone that, uh, we hadn't discussed. So that has been taken out. So I want to be sure that the ordinance reflects that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. I just, and I see you, Councilwoman Castellino. I just want to, uh, provide time, um, to first address the, uh, comments that were made, uh, during the public comments. And, uh, Mr. Beckelman, if you can, or Mr. Trank, um-
Sure, Council President. Um, yeah, as, as was discussed earlier, the plan is walking a balance between being flexible and setting forth standards that can attract the type of, um, vision and development that, that is planned for here. Um, there are specifics that, that relate to the Film Service District, um, but they're flexible standards. Um, there, there's building height sizes, there's, um, there's bulk standards, they, they are included. Um, but again, they were expressly designed to, to provide some flexibility. It's also an overlay zone, so that's, that's creating more flexibility. The Film Service District is an option, um, but we're maintaining some other potential development. Underneath that, as, as has been discussed earlier tonight, we have other options. If that's not going to work out, if it's not going to, wanting to be able to attract somebody to, to do that development, uh, we'd have to amend the plan to pursue other possibilities.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Beckelman. I think that, that was, um, where I was headed, too. This is an overlay, um, plan and not specific to any one or the other. It is flexibility in how we move forward, and I know that, um, you know, uh, Mrs. Krokoviek also, um, stated, "We still don't have a plan." Um, and we don't. We are moving forward in this, in, in this direction, as we've discussed, um, at length, when the mayor made his presentation. Um, so I am going to now ask, uh, Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, uh, just, I want to just thank the Planning Board, uh, at the, uh, request of our council colleague, uh, McCartney, uh, for reviewing that document and for removing that language. The community house was in that, uh, subdivision, so that, thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing that to their attention and taking care of that. Um, but, uh, Mr. Gross. So, um, there was, one of the questions was, "Our debt ratio." I know we're well underneath what is allowed by, uh, the state. Will you tomorrow, now that this, um, we passed the bond order- uh, the state. Will you tomorrow, now that this um, we passed the bond ordinance, would that be updated sooner than later? So the public can't, well, we didn't, we wouldn't we didn't go out for a bond, the bonds yet, but where where are we at? Where are we at with the the numbers? You know that offhand?
Yeah, we're, um, hold on just a second.
Yeah, I had it, it's in my basement office. I don't have it here.
Your total debt um, with 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 these bond ordinance this evening, assuming that they're, they're all passed um, is going to be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-eight million. Twenty thousand, uh, that's a one point nine seven uh, percent. Uh, we're allowed up to three and a half percent, so we're well below that.
Yeah.
Um, it's also important to keep in mind, and 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 while there there may be those that that uh, um skeptical about this. This is, it's a good portion of this is 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 temporary. Um, you know, some some, it it is not, not not going to see the the full reach uh, of of debt service because, you know, we are going to be making changes. We are going to be doing things at at Rock Spring. This this property in particular, uh, we're, there will be something done with this property. This is not a property that we intend to buy and hold. So a a good amount of this debt uh, is going to be freed up over time. Uh, and and at least for the moment, um most of this is all firm debt and and we're enjoying very low rates and the argument, so of course can we make that rates are going to go up, but we've been saying that for twelve years. And so I don't know what the future brings, but I know right now, uh, we're we're at an affordable level. And so, and we're moving forward to 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 make the necessary, take the necessary steps to deal with this. And they, and and I'll dispute some of the 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 things we've heard during, there is a plan. Uh, and and you know, we we've articulated the plan and it and I think that that it's sound, the plan is sound.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gross. Um, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to point that out to answer that question that was asked, um, because I think it's important too. And we also, you know, pay pay down our debt on our other bonds as well, so.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gross, before you go, not that you're going very far. Um, I did ask Mr. Gross um, to um, give us a dollar figure in layman's terms as to if and when we actually go out for a bond, what does that mean to individual households with respect to the impact on taxes?
So uh, assuming that um, the township uh, particularly, we're talking about the these redevelopment site, the thirteen million. It assuming that the township goes out and 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 buys the property and assuming that it does nothing with it for ten years or more. Um, what would the cost be to the taxpayers if that occurred? Now, I'm hesitant to to make such calculations because number one, you know, this, the interest rates fluctuate. Uh, and it's not, you know, we we don't anticipate that that that's, we're going to be holding this property. But having said that, since you asked the question, um based on not the lowest rates recently, but the average rates recently, um the the cost of financing this over the next ten years for the average property owner is about a dollar per month. So, um, that's, you know, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is, but it, you know, a dollar a month is is twelve dollars on your tax bill as opposed, not to mention what other changes there might be. So it's not insignificant. But it is certainly not astronomical.
Thank you. I I I just wanted to to share that as a matter of perspective because there is a lot of um, you know, alarms that are being raised. And I think it's unfair um, for the average person who doesn't really understand this and doesn't have the benefit to sit where we sit to have these internal conversations or know to ask those questions. I I didn't know to ask those questions until I became an elected official and had to learn um, the questions to ask. So I it it's really just not not to hold you to that, Mr. Gross, but just to give some perspective as to what um, the um bonding um, of another thirteen million dollars would mean and, you know, versus the the tremendous opportunity for benefit that that um, certainly that outweighs. Thank you. Um, Councilwoman McCartney, I see your hand up.
Uh, thanks again.
You're welcome.
During the Planning Board review of this redevelopment amended plan, I just wanted to say that some of the questions that were just asked were asked during the review. And again, Mr. Beckelman just mentioned, this is an overload, overlay zone. We do not have an application before us. And when that happens, uh, then we will be able to be very specific about community improvements or parking and all of the issues that will be uh, raised during that application process.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Uh, Councilwoman, um, Castellino.
I I just want to uh, just actually piggyback on what Councilwoman just stated. Um, you know, park uh, traffic is a major concern. And Ms. Brillan and myself have been, uh, you know, we've been of concerned about that with bringing a new plan in. Um, the plan that was there were a lot of residential units a- as well. Um, so again, we'll be mindful of that and we're, you know, I, you know, we mentioned it to the, to the mayor and everyone's on notice. So no one wants to inundate the area and we'll, we'll have to be thoughtful on how any, with any investor that comes in that uh, the traffic flow is is a major part of this because we can't just deadlot that area of of the township. We have to be very mindful of of how that uh, plays out. So just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Council President, the sentence reads, in addition to the plan amendment sets forth clear objectives as to appropriate land uses, density of population, and improved traffic and public transportation, public utilities, recreational, community facilities, and other public improvements. So we will be very mindful.
Yeah.
Of that.
Thank you. I think we all experience the same frustration when we're driving on on Main Street. This actually opens up um other possibilities for creations of additional main streets, if you will. Um, I think um, Councilwoman Castellino, you um uh, have a language to amend this ordinance you wanted to propose?
Uh, yes, Council President, I'd like to move an amendment to remove the language on page seven. Uh, the regulations for the Main Street Sub District shall remain unchanged, except the following uses shall be added to the list of permitted principal uses. And uh, where that language ends on the top of page eight, after item number six.
See, you want this, that that just removed? There's no amendment to the language, just remove it?
No, yeah, that should all be removed.
And that was the letter of recommendations, state.
Yes, did see that. Did any of my colleagues have any um, comments or um, I s- I see, I I'm reading your your body language, uh, Councilman Rutherford.
Yes, um, so when we discussed this initially, the issue was having one of these businesses located closely to the Community House. We're looking at a, uh, I thought it was fifteen acres, but I heard seventeen acres tonight. We're looking at quite a large site. And it is possible to locate some of these businesses in other, uh, uh, at, you know, diagonally opposite of uh, the Community House, I mean, in other places as well that would not be close to an after-school program.
Washington School.
Things. Well, even, I mean, if you're going toward Park Avenue, you're getting even further away from um, Washington School. So, you know, I, I I don't know that I I want to support not having it anywhere in the zone. But uh, certainly I don't want it near schools and churches.
Just let me clarify. May I?
Yes.
So uh, Councilmen, if you look at your redevelopment, if you have it in front of you, I happen to have it because of the Planning Board liaison announcements. The cannabis use was in the Main Street Sub District. It was a section created that uh, runs along Main Street, across the street, it would be across the street from um, the CVS, right where the Community House is, and the Boys and Girls Club. So it would be only a few blocks there, but right where the Boys and Girls Club I'm, and I don't know the name of that street, I'm sorry, it's not on this map, but that's where the line, that's the boundary. And the B one zone starts right there. So we felt that it was still potent, there's potential use there, but it didn't need to come right next door to the Boys and Girls Club and the Community House within this, within this redevelopment plan. I hope that helps. And B one. Right, do, does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't think. So if you look at the bottom.
That was the only place that it was approved, in the Main Street Sub District. And that sub district is right there across the street from CVS.
Yeah.
On the historic district.
Actually, the Community House is in that zone, which doesn't make sense at all.
So what I was saying is that we've got, if you look at B one, if you look at the bottom of the, of that same map, there's an area that's B one. That is diagonally opposite of the MSS. Unless I'm misreading the map. There's a small section that is, and that is just below Standish, that is on our side of the border. It's where the the line at the bottom of that map, I do believe uh, shows the border between Orange and West Orange. And in that, you know, weird little shape there, that's, that's still B one.
Oh, oh, in the back, in the back, yeah, behind the bus station, yeah.
So I'm just saying, I don't, I I disagreeing that it shouldn't be in MSS. I'm, I I I agree there. Can we not just keep it out of the entire zone is the question? And and if so, we're, you know, can we put it diagonally opposite of the MSS, which in this case right now, without making any changes, is in B one?
I don't think that B one councilman is in, is in the
Not in the.
Then the redevelopment zone there, is it, or?
It's actually outside of the redevelopment area, so you couldn't address that.
The planning board was considering that it is close enough. It's in close enough proximity.
You think that's too close, uh, Councilwoman McCartney?
I did, I thought that it was, it did not need to be in the Main Street Sub District. Because that was in the zone that we were discussing. It's already approved for B one.
Yeah, I I think.
Left or right of that, anyway.
So I'm clearly not being clear. If it's allowed in B one, and there's a space that is directly diagonally opposite the MSS, why can't it be, uh, I mean, this space is uh, Home Services District or whatever that, HSD. Or i- is it, is it, is it impossible to put it there? Is that too close to schools or churches? Is there some other reason why we couldn't?
School bus company is there in that spot.
Not dropping kids off or picking them up at the lot.
Yeah. No, 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 I know.
I I, if I, if I can, um, perhaps interject. Um, and I hear you, Councilman Rutherford, and you know my position. I think my council colleagues know my position. My position has been that um, removing it completely from the redevelopment zone um, doesn't help us when we're out looking for redevelopers. I think that that is something that makes it more attractive for a redeveloper to have um, in the zone somewhere. Um, I I will, um, you know, um agree with with both my council colleagues, with Shrek two, well, all three of you, with respect to not having it, you know, right next to the Community House or churches. But um, to completely remove it, I think would do a disservice for when we are marketing to redevelopers. Um, that's just my opinion. And also, um, you know, ultimately, this council is who will approve any recommendations for applications um, as to where they're going to be. So you you still have, we still have um, the final say as to where it is. I don't think simply because it, you know, in this redevelopment plan, right, because we are only addressing this redevelopment plan, that it's not going to go somewhere else. You know, I I, I would like to see, you know, like a dispensary in in one of our office buildings, if they're medical buildings, things like that. We haven't addressed that yet, um, because that's not what we're dealing with, with. But dealing with the redevelopment plan, this amendment, um, even even if we were to say, um, okay, not on Main Street, we we, the council can ultimately say, well, no, we don't want it anywhere near there, or we want it closer to here. Uh, I'm just giving you options to consider um, with respect to that, because I hear, I hear everyone. Um, just putting that out there.
But excuse me, Council President, if I read this, and maybe Mr. Trank could re-explain, um I think the language is only for that MSS strip in this map. So I think other places in the map it would be allowed. This is only taking it off Main Street. That language, if um.
That's not how it reads, because the ordinance was in B one and in the industrial zones. And they are, that whole redevelopment zone is surrounded by.
We're correct. The intent was to expand cannabis uses into the MSS zone in the original draft of the plan. And that's what the Planning Board does recommend taking out.
Yeah, but is, but that MSS is across the street from the HD Zone.
That's the, that's the Tom, Seton National.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, it should be there. But of course, well, well, that that Emma, that's why I can understand, because even this M, see, no be helpful next time administration is if we got the map and we had labeling of what the building, the the buildings are, it's easier to read. Because in this MSS to the left is the parking lot for the museum. Um, right across the street from there. So that's what this whole zone, I just didn't make sense that, you know, there's really only the bank and there was one other vacant building and then the Community House is in this. So I I don't even I couldn't even understand why this portion was even in this plan, but because there's Wilman's uh, all the way to the left of the MSS zone. That's what Willem, Williams uh, water body and to the right of that is the parking lot to the Edison Museum. So I you know, it just shouldn't be in there.
Well, that's consistent with the Planning Board's comment.
Yeah. So to your point, Councilman, I I don't think if if somebody else want to come in the back of the zone, that language is preventing that. Is that?
Yeah, I think it does.
Saying it to be within the zone.
It says the regulations for Main Street Sub, Street Sub District, which is that strip shall remain unchanged, except the following uses shall be added to the list of permitted principal uses. And that's the cannabis use.
Michelle, what he's saying is that it it could be in one of those other zones. The home services or.
And and yeah, I hear that, but I think that what what uh, Councilwoman Castellino is saying, that it's just talking specifically about the Main Street. Yes. Mr. Trank, you, can you help us um, decipher this, please?
When I talked to Mr. Greigle, I think I was correct, like that strip right there, that is just across from that MSS is right under that section where it says R dash T.
Beckelman will clarify. Uh, Mr. Beckelman?
Yeah, that that's, that's what I'm saying. My reading is that the original draft of the plan contemplated expanding cannabis uses only into the MSS zone. That's what the Planning Board is recommending come out. So the the result will be, it won't be permitted anywhere in the redevelopment area.
See, and so then that, that's, so it's not, it's like what Councilman Rutherford is saying, that it won't be permitted anywhere in the redevelopment area?
Correct.
So you have, you have a right to accept or modify the recommendation. That this is for you to now call. You you, as you said before, Council President, the the request was by Councilwoman McCartney for the Planning Board to review it. They've made a recommendation, but you're free to act as you so choose.
Do you want to put in the HSD section, Councilman? Is that what you're recommending?
I would support that, yes.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Then that would be, that would effectively be a a rejection of that recommendation from the board, which is, Mr. Trank pointed out, you, you're free to do so. Then that would be, that would effectively be a, a rejection of that recommendation from the board, which is, Mr. Trank pointed out, you, you're free to do so.
And so then when we reject it, we can make the amendment on our ordinance to reflect that, that language, correct?
Actually, that language is already in there, so we would just be rejecting the, the recommendation and not amending the ordinance.
Yeah. This will be identical.
We still don't want it at the MSS zone. We're saying.
That's up to you guys to decide by a vote.
So then we can amend it to say not in the MSS zone specifically, right? That's, we don't want it in that zone.
And to put it in the S-HSD, the Home Services.
Only the HSD zone.
Then that would be an amendment, yes.
Council President.
Councilwoman Williams.
My question is, if we're ultimately going to approve or disapprove locations anyway, why do we have to amend the language? Why can't we not just approve the request when it comes before us?
Wouldn't be a permitted use.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I would like, I appreciate it getting amended tonight.
So let's, let's amend it to say that it is permissible only in, what zone did you say?
HSD.
Instead of MSS.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can we make that indication? So we're, we're rejecting the planning board's recommendation and amending that it's only in the HSD. Correct? Is that how?
No, because we're still keep, we're keep eliminating it from the Main Street sub-district, the MSS. We are that stage, but we are adding now the permitted use in the HSD.
Okay, is that how you understood it, Councilman Rutherford?
Yes. So, yeah, just so I say it in regular, everyday, non-political, legal speak, we're not having it over by the community center. We're allowing it in the district that's designated on this map as HSD, which is as far away from the community center as you can be and still be in the zone.
I'm, I'm good with that. I'm, I'm absolutely good with that. And it's 1228, so I'm sure that we're all.
I, I'm starting. I'm getting brain fog.
All right.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Not yet. I, I was just asking for clarification as to what it was that Madam Clerk was going to amend the language to.
I believe the legal department's going to.
Mr. Beckman will coordinate on that, so just.
Yeah, essentially, essentially, the actual change is just instead of saying the regulation for Main Street sub-district, et cetera, et cetera, it'll just be the, the other district. It's really just changing which district this applies to.
So we, we can adopt as amended?
Correct.
Yes.
Is that, are we good, Councilwoman Catalina?
Yeah, because it's only going to be in the back there by Stan and Shannon, you and the HSD. Okay, I'm good there.
Okay, great. And Councilwoman McCartney, thank you for, for your, your work on this as well with the planning board.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, is there a motion to approve 2656 dash 21 as amended on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 2657 dash 21, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide, and establishing the employee status as a township employee, and under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading? Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this ordinance? Please raise your hand.
And we have no hands raised.
Thank you, council colleagues. Do we have any discussion? Now, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2657 dash 21 on second and final reading?
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 2659 dash 21, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection Seven dash nineteen through Street, and subsection seven dash twenty-one point two, multiway stops near schools, playgrounds, and youth recreational facilities of the revised ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Is there any, oh, no, we're not having.
No. No. Twenty-six sixty dash twenty-one, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property, commonly known, known as Block One Seventy-four, Lot One, from the Crestmont Country Club in the town of West Orange, appropriating four point seven million dollars from Open Space Trust Fund, therefore, authorizing issuance of four million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars bond or notes of the township to finance the part of the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some of. Second.
Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown? Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
I, I am, I am going to say, we've discussed our councils out this evening, unless anyone has anything that they want to discuss.
Not at this late hour. I did, but not.
Just a, just a reminder that it's Small Business Week this week, so please, residents, support our local businesses in West Orange. We are a township of many small businesses.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Council President, are you going to ask the chief to discuss the?
I don't, I don't think he's on anymore. Yes, yes, absolutely, yes. Right. Yeah, I would definitely ask him to discuss that when we reconvene, and also, Madam Clerk, just a note in case I forget, for the next agenda, to review and update the ordinance for the task force.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome. I didn't want to forget, I had a note for myself, but it might get lost in all these stickies.
Yeah, I have a note as well.
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn?
Some of. Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Hey, thanks, this to inform you that when I end the meeting, it'll end for both those on and off screen, and no other business will be conducted. Have a great morning, everybody.